We've got a fun one lined up for you here today, plenty to tend to, some business to take care of. And so before we do that, we need to go ahead and call ourselves to order. I'm going to ask Lance Harrington to come and lead our invocation. And then after that, we're going to go ahead. So if you would all please rise and stay standing for the pledges.
Let's pray together. Father, we come together acknowledging that you are God, that you are the Creator, the Sustainer of this world, of our lives. Father, I thank you for this committee, this council that serves this community so well. Lord, we pray that your blessing on each of them, their families. Lord, we pray that this time together and the business as it's conducted will be done in a manner that would be honoring and pleasing to you. Lord, we do lift up our community. We thank you for a wonderful place to live, a place where we can raise our families and know that you are very much a part of this community. Lord, we thank you for the moisture, the weather. Those things often are taken for granted. And we acknowledge that you are the giver of the moisture, the sun that is shining today. We thank you for that. And we pray your blessing on each one here today, Lord, that you would guide each one with your loving, compassionate, forgiving kindness. And we give you all the praise and the glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. If you guys will join me in pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll do the Texas flag as well.
Honor the Texas flag. A pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Ms. City Secretary, I do believe we have a few announcements. If I could hand that over to you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The one thing that we did want to announce for everybody here today and everyone listening, we are in the process of moving to our new city hall. And so if you'll mark your calendars, beginning on February 25th, we are going to have our first council meeting across the street at 623 South Johnson. And if you'll look out in the media and on our social medias, our teams are sharing information on a grand opening and tours available that day. Thank you, Mayor.
Really good. Thank you. Do we have any further announcements? Yes, sir, please come forward.
And I apologize, we didn't have time to get this thing on the agenda for obvious reasons, but I think it's very important that we take a moment here to thank our first responders for this last weekend. And so I have a few words to say here. So governing body, early Sunday morning, a terrible act of violence occurred where an individual shot and harmed numerous other individuals. I'll defer details of this event to our APD. Instead, I would like to take a moment to express my gratitude and thanks to the many first responders, public safety employees, medical professionals, and citizens who stepped forward to address this evil action. I would like to commend our APD officers who arrived quickly, secured the scene, and began to treat the wounded, our AFD firefighters and our EMS partners who quickly arrived to likewise treat the wounded, our AECC dispatch and their contemporaries with the Randall County Dispatch who took a flood of calls but still kept vital information going out into the field, our partners with the Randall County Sheriff Office and Texas Department of Public Safety who quickly captured the assailants to guarantee that no further acts of violence will be done that night by these individuals, the doctors and nurses of our two hospitals who worked hard to save the lives of eight individuals who had been shot, our partners with the 47th District Attorney's Office who arrived at the APD immediately to work alongside us to issue the warrants against these assailants, our APD detectives who worked quickly to gather the needed evidence and information to support the DA's office in their work, our APD public information officers who gathered the facts and prepared excellent statements to inform the public, the citizens who stepped forward to assist our efforts in capturing the assailants, and the family and friends of the victims who rushed in to provide mentally emotional comfort and healing to the victims when they needed it the most. My apologies for missing anyone else, but I would like to likewise express my gratitude and thanks to everyone else who played a helping role to address this terrible situation. Our thoughts and prayers continue to be with the victims and their families, as well as the many individuals who rushed in to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, do I have anyone that would like to offer remarks on that topic? Very well said, Mr. Path. We appreciate your leadership and the recognition of not only how tragic this is for so many people that are hurt, you know, wounded and the loss of life, but then also the resiliency of our community, the solidarity and people that'll pull together around those local heroes for those actions and bravery to continue to run into a scene like that. And then not to mention the individuals that put themselves potentially in harm's way to make that 911 phone call and the additional information. So with that, I thank you for your leadership on bringing that up here today. I think it's very fitting to continue to acknowledge those gentlemen and ladies. Anything further on announcements from staff? Okay, we will go ahead and move ourselves into public comment. I'll hand it back over to the City Secretary and ask her to read us into that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for participating in today's city council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us, and we're glad you're here to share them today. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address city council regarding posted agenda items or any topics related to city policy. Every speaker today will have three minutes. At the end of two and a half minutes, a warning beep will sound to alert you that you have 30 seconds left to wrap up your thoughts. Speakers are asked to limit your comments on public hearings to either the public hearing or the public comment section of our meeting today in order to help us keep better minutes. And it's your choice at which time you would like to speak on that. When you come to the microphone today, please state your name and whether or not you live in Amarillo City Limits, and then you may begin addressing city council. Again, thank you for being here today. We're going to start with John Priest. And after Mr. Priest, we will have Julie Holsey and Sandy Prophet.
Afternoon, sir.
How are you guys doing?
Good, thank you.
I just am getting over laryngitis, so excuse me for the gruffness. I don't know. Thank you for that, Mr. Path, bringing that up today. What I came to comment on wasn't, I guess, a part of the agenda. I don't know if it'd be appropriate for me to make these statements. It's regarding just law enforcement in general. With this coming up this weekend, I myself, I prepared a statement. It's a little easier for me to stay on topic that way. I would just like to start by saying good afternoon, counsel, for allowing me to express and my gratitude for the opportunity to address you. Mayor Stanley, we've had a few conversations about policy concerns I've had, as well as had meetings with the city managers, city attorneys. You ran on doing the right thing, and I really do believe that you are trying your best to fulfill that promise. As the mayor, and by extension, the city council, being elected to represent the people of Amarillo, I have to ask, what is going on with law enforcement in Amarillo and the Texas Panhandle? This isn't a shot at APD or any sheriff's offices in particular. It's just about law enforcement as a whole. This past weekend, as I'm sure you all have heard about, there are details that have infuriated the public. We must commend all law enforcement involved in the apprehension of these public safety threats. But why wasn't accessory to murder allowed to postpone by the Potter County District Attorney's Office? What evidence was presented that allowed years and years of legal precedent to be thrown out of the window when it comes to murder? In Randall County, we have the Brittany Alexandria case that has gotten national attention. Intoxicated manslaughter for a defendant who had made threats to kill the victim. The public is still awaiting answers to why he was not charged with that crime. And what about the city church assault? Kip has been protesting downstairs for over 70 days, asking for answers to another question drawing national attention. Can the homeless be victims of crime? Twenty-two homeless people were treated for injuries resulting from bear mace used against them, admittedly by Jeremy Rusk. That's aggravated assault, 22 times, no charges brought. And I brought to your attention, there are smaller charges that could actually help, you know, calm all the tension from that. Then there's Madison Anzeli Silva, my ex-girlfriend, who recently pled guilty to assault causing bodily injury. She assaulted me, had her friends make terroristic threats against my life and my friends, break into my house and steal my dog. With that previous record, you would figure the Randall County DA would take a layup conviction. No charges brought. I understand that these issues aren't exactly part of your duties, but this is your administration, and I think it's high time you guys addressed these public concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you for having me.
Next, Julie Holsey and Sandy Prophet, and on deck will be Robert Smith.
Good afternoon, I'm Julie Holsey. This is Sandy Prophet. We're here to represent Upward for Kids. We have, my business is in Randall County on Bell Street, across from Memorial High. We live in River Falls, both of us. We have taken on the challenge of helping at-risk kids in the CISD school district. As you know, there's many Amarillo schools in CISD. We are taking all 10 of the schools, the elementary, three intermediate. We have already paid for thousands of school lunches that were not able to be paid. We're having them vetted through the counselors. We've provided snacks for kids. We've also been buying lots of school supplies. Our goal and what we are raising money now for and what we're asking for is money to help buy the school supplies for this next school system. The preschool kindergarten, it's going to go all the way up through sixth grade. We are trying to help all of those children. We envision them coming to get off-site so that they keep their humility and their dignity. They'll come off-site, they will get to shop for their school supplies, from backpacks to spiral binders to everything that's on that list. What else do you want to?
So we would just like to request $50,000 from the Buc-E's grant to help go towards this. I emailed each of you a budget. We have a budget of around $310,000 to help these kids. And we're just asking for a portion of that to go help the underprivileged kids.
Yes, and these are at-risk kids. These are the ones that if we can feed them, nourish them, and help them with their education, they're the ones who are going to lead our cities. And we feel that call that as we have been given, we want to give back to those. And so we're asking the city to help us to give back to these children.
There are several nonprofits that already help the children after school hours, like Fill with Hope and Backpack for Kids. They send food home with them on the weekends and after school. What we're doing is to help them during school hours. The children that now qualify for a free or reduced lunch, we have paid off that back debt for them. So we just started our nonprofit the middle of October, and we've already paid for around 2,000 lunches. And we're now having those kids with school supplies. So that's what the money will be used for. And 100% of the money goes to help the children, all admin fees. And we donate our time and money for that. So 100% goes to the kids. And we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. We appreciate what you do for the community.
Robert Smith. And after Mr. Smith will be Kim Benson.
I want to speak to the item on the agenda, 8K, having to do with unmanned vehicles, flying vehicles, or as we know them commonly as drones. And I would like an opportunity later in this meeting or some other future meeting to ask some questions and make it public so the public knows what, and I know, we all know what you're going to do. So if you could bring that to a discussion or the questions that I have later in the program, I would be happy that I'll be here and to do that. Or perhaps then we could settle the schedule for another time. But I think people would really be interested to know the usage, the cost, and the plans for... I know it's for the firemen and the policemen, but it may be used for other kinds of use. So we just want to find out what's going on and go along and make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, thank you for speaking on that. We don't have any problem with pulling that. I'd ask staff to be prepared to maybe speak to that a little bit further before we vote on it. Glad to do it. Thank you.
Kim Benson. And after Kim will be Cassandra Green.
Good afternoon, council. Kim Benson, City Limits. I just want to talk to you today before you vote on the bylaws for 9D for the AEDC. I did speak to the board a few weeks ago about this issue. I would like to see that the AEDC is televised, just like these meetings. I think as for the citizens that work and can't be at this meeting, I think it's very important as citizens, we've dropped the ball with the AEDC. And I think some of that's due to the fact that we don't get to see their meetings. I mean, you can go, but if you're at work, you can't go. I have attended a few of those meetings, and it is very informative. You know, this council's worked very hard on the trust and transparency. And Councilman Simpson, I heard you just this past weekend on Politics Today and said transparency, transparency, transparency. So I think this is a missing puzzle for the AEDC. And I know with the articles of incorporation of their certificates of formation, that I've read that, that's in there, you're allowed to do it. I know they don't have the facility to televise that. We've got a great new city hall that's about to open. Move them over there and let them televise their meetings, and then citizens can stay more involved. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Benson.
Cassandra Green.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. My name is Cassie Green. I'm an Amarillo resident. I also agree with Ms. Benson, so I second that. But I would actually like to talk to you today about item 8K. And that is the purchase of two unmanned aerial vehicles. And so as I believe Robert said, and thank you guys for pulling the item, but here are my questions concerning that. If you could please address them when you do pull the item. Does it have cameras? And if so, what kind of cameras? Are they just license plate scanners or are they the Fusion kind, which I believe has real-time footage of the citizens? And then next, what does it take to upgrade it if it's not got a camera? Are they for use in the regional crime center? I'm assuming they are, but that's my question. How many do we plan to buy before it's all over? What I mean by it's all over, like, what is the establishment of the regional crime center? And how many drones do you have down the pipeline of purchasing? At, is it going to be at $68,000 a pop? And how does that calculate? And how does it save, if it's going to save us at all? So how many do we plan to buy before it's all over? How many do we have currently? I believe we already have three, and so we're buying two more today, potentially. And my second question is, can you please roll this item until the ordinance is in place that we've agreed to create? And if this ordinance would have teeth, penalties for violations of our 14th and Fourth Amendment rights? And are these cameras and drones in violation of Texas House Bill 1631? I feel like they are. I've read over the bill. It's three pages. I provided it for all of you guys a few council meetings ago. So I just think this is in violation to that Texas bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cassie.
Mayor, that concludes everyone that signed up today.
Should not be any problem. If Mr. Path wants to tee up who we want to have speak on, item 8K, we'll go into the details as to the need for those UAVs at that time. Do I have anyone else here who would like to offer public comment? Mr. Fisher, I'll see your hand first if you come forward.
All right, you started my time. I've got about 10 seconds taken off.
Oh, I'll give you the 10 back.
Thank you. I should get about 30, I think. I'm an Army veteran also, I'm just letting you know.
We'll go ahead and give you 20 since we...
Six years, Army veteran.
We appreciate your service.
That's where I get all this fearlessness here.
We love your bravery there, Mike.
Yeah, thank you.
Jump into it.
All right. I don't know if you guys are aware, but it's pretty loud in the news. All federal funding of grants have been halted today. I'd like for item 8H8I to be taken off the consensus. We discussed regarding the $300,000 for three signs to be rehabbed on Route 66. My questions are, is where, I spelled that W-A-R-E, where are these businesses that are receiving these grants? Because that's a lot of money. And are we restoring them to be neon signs? I mean, that's pretty, they're just going to be done. Give it a year, our hailstorms and our weather. I'm sure that Ms. Kohler will come up here and say, nobody applied for these grants, but that's what happens. People just quit because they don't get them, and it's just the who's who that gets these grants. The next thing is regarding the Buc-E's deal. And these young ladies came up here and talked about this. And I'll donate to your cause, just to let you know, because I'm talking against this deal. I'm talking against the Buc-E's grant, but I'll donate. I'll put my money where my mouth is. Is that fair? We're going to give $275,000 donation, I put that in quotes, because it's not a donation. It's part of a contract. Buc-E's is required to give this donation as part of an economic development deal. So now it's forced. That's not a donation. It doesn't meet the requirements the IRS called a donation, but that doesn't have anything to do with this. But it transitions to Mr., your attorney?
McWilliams.
McWilliams, yeah. How did I forget that name? He signed this agreement. You'll see it, I gave you a copy of it, of the agreement, the first, I think, and last page and the middle page. And it shows, basically, this is money laundering. This is the same thing that we talked about with the AEDC, where we weren't supposed to give money to a nonprofit. This is, it's called direct nexus. So if there's a requirement of the economic development agreement to give something back, and in this case, they give back jobs, right? So that's part of it, jobs, tax base, it grows it, it's economically friendly. Your, this deal says you're going to give it away to a nonprofit. That's not the design of this. It has to, the direct nexus for Tom Sherling, that word's probably not in your vocabulary either. It's not in mine. It means it must have a direct correlation. It must parallel, it must, it must be related to the core of that contract. It must be for economic development. It must create jobs, increase our tax base. It must do that. So whatever that donation that we're calling it, it has to be that. It can't be to a nonprofit. Otherwise, we're talking about the same thing with the range, this exact same scenario. And I've sent you an email, it's got all the details in there. And I still recommend looking at ChatGPT Super Legal Writer instead of listening to this guy. Because this same guy, we still got the same guy. He's going to tell you it's okay. You guys are going to end the agreement today, I guess, for the external counsel. I recommend keeping it, because this guy's going to say it's okay.
Let me give one statement of fact, and I appreciate your words here today. We'll take it under advisement. What you highlighted for me says, "Community outreach donation," item 2.4 of the contract. You highlighted developer shall donate $275,000 to benefit community-oriented projects, civic events, or benevolent purposes within the city as determined by the city council.
Sure. And that...
I don't understand the issue. It's a donation.
It's not a donation, though.
How's that not a donation?
It doesn't meet the requirement, it's required, you have to do it. As part of this contract, to get this deal out here, in return, they have to give a donation. That's not a donation. It has to be at their free will.
Would you, I would say as a statement of fact, it's a term of the agreement. So, but thank you for bringing that forward, and we can pull those two out.
Yeah, I didn't think you were this way, Cole, man.
No, I'll work with you. Anyone else that'd like to offer public comment here today, please raise your hand. James, please come forward, sir.
James Gank, City Limits. I'm thankful to be living in the revolution of common sense. This situation that he just spoke about is sort of tag teams with something I want to speak about, and that's like 9F, where Mr. Simpson's put forward a resolution to repeal the outside counsel. And I think this is a classic case of why you shouldn't repeal it. You guys need help with legal advice all across the board. You need different opinions on things. You have to work within that. And from what I've seen, he's already saved us a lot more money than the money we've spent. I mean, it's just a given. And when you have that kind of situation go on, you need multiple legal opinions. And every time I've listened to him and heard him speak and actually talked to him, he's solid. So please consider a no vote on that.
Thank you, sir. Do I have anyone else that'd like to offer public comment here today? Okay, thank you all for speaking and everybody for bringing additional concern and advisement that we'll take seriously. So moving forward, we have discussion items. Do I have anyone on council that needs to bring anything up on item 7A? Review of any regular item? No? Okay. Item 7B, we have Ms. Gallup here today. Are you ready, Skylar? If you please come forward, we're going to talk about a... If you please come forward, we're going to talk about a potential tax exemption for childcare facilities.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Skylar Gallup. I'm really excited to be able to be here. Our friend Carol Lee Clay unexpectedly was unable to join us to talk about this and tapped me to discuss something that's incredibly impactful for our community, our workforce, our employers, and the youngest citizens of Amarillo and the Panhandle are children, and that's childcare. I'm here today talking on behalf of a coalition of a bunch of folks that have been doing work around affordable and quality childcare in the Texas Panhandle. We've got workforce people, similarly, non and for-profit childcare providers, a bunch of people that have recognized early and critically how important it is in the Texas Panhandle that our families have access to affordable and quality childcare. And that coalition is Early Matters Texas Panhandle. We often talk about the importance of roads and public safety, critical investments for any thriving community, but highlighting today another essential infrastructure that supports economic growth and workforce stability, quality childcare. Childcare is more than just a service. It's a crucial economic driver that allows parents to work, businesses to hire, and our community to grow. But despite its importance, quality childcare is one of the most challenging business models to sustain, and I'll explain why. First, the costs of running a childcare business are exceptionally high. After staffing, facility costs such as rent, mortgage payments, and property taxes are the second largest expense for providers. Unlike many other small businesses, childcare centers can't simply pass these costs on to families without making quality care unaffordable. The reality is that many providers are operating on razor-thin margins, balancing the need to provide a safe nurturing environment while ensuring parents can afford their services. Second, strict regulations add to the challenge. Our state has rightly established high standards for childcare providers, requiring proper safety measures, low teacher-to-child ratios, and ongoing professional development. And while these regulations are essential to children's well-being, they do come at a cost. Providers must invest in training, infrastructure, and compliance, all while keeping tuition within reach for our working families. Third, workforce recruitment and retention in childcare is an uphill battle. The industry struggles with high turnover rates because many providers simply can't afford to offer competitive wages. Childcare professionals are entrusted with our youngest community members, yet they often learn, earn less than workers in retail or fast food. Without support, childcare centers facing staff shortages can lead to fewer available slots for families and increased operational strain. And finally, providers are constantly balancing affordability with quality. We all want the best for our children. Safe environments, skilled teachers, and enriching activities. But providers must weigh these aspirations against what families can afford to pay. Without financial relief mechanisms like Prop 2, they are left with impossible choices that threaten the sustainability of their businesses. This is where you, our city leaders, can make a difference today. By adopting Prop 2 and providing property tax relief for childcare providers, you can help reduce the financial strain on these vital businesses. This support will allow providers to reinvest in their staff, facilities, and programs, leading to better services for families and a more stable local workforce. Now, this initiative isn't just about helping childcare centers survive, it's about helping our city thrive. More working parents means a stronger economy, more job creation, and greater demand for city services like transportation, retail, and housing. Prop 2 is an investment in our future. I urge you to consider this measure not as a handout, but as a strategic move to support our workforce, stimulate economic growth, and ensure our community remains competitive and attractive for businesses and families alike. Thank you for your time and your commitment to our city's future. I look forward to working with you to make quality childcare more sustainable and accessible for everyone.
Ms. Skylar, thank you for that. Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Gallup?
Skylar, would you be the person to reach out to if we have questions outside of this meeting?
Yes, me or Carol Lee Clay.
Okay. Do you have an estimate of how many facilities in the city of Amarillo this would affect if this were to go in?
I do, and I think it's very interesting. So if you guys fully funded, you know, at 100% the proposed ordinance, then we anticipate about 26 childcare providers would be eligible. And so the impactfulness of 26 childcare providers getting this tax property break would actually be at really low impact to the city's revenue. We estimate only $28,000. You guys would kind of be on the bag. And to provide such a large impact to 26 childcare providers, I mean, I think even when my kiddos were, you know, before they entered public education, which was just a couple of years ago, I saw through my network of friends, several childcare, high-quality childcare facilities shut down, Amarillo Montessori, Southwest Montessori, all sorts of places because they just couldn't make ends meet. And if they, I can, I sat on the board at Amarillo Montessori, so I balanced as best I could that budget. And property tax relief would have been very, very welcome to us when we were really, really struggling to, again, balance paying our workers any sort of sustainable wages to keep them and not lose them to retail and fast food while really struggling to do best to our kiddos to provide a high-quality education center. So at the cost of 28,000, providing this relief to 26 providers in town.
And what other municipalities or counties have enacted this ordinance currently?
So Potter County has enacted it 75% and Canyon, just in our area, that's only, that's the data that I was given. Canyon has passed it at the full 100%.
Is it a, is there any time limitations on the year amount or is it forever?
I'm not aware of that. But we certainly can follow back with that information. This was also passed in the last legislative session, and there's a good deal of cleanup that I expect is going to happen, specifically to open it up to home care providers, which were kind of left out of Prop 2 last session. But as I understand it, that was an oversight and they expect to button that up. So, you know, expanding even the property tax relief that is granted.
Thank you.
Hey, Skylar, do you know if a new facility were to open up, do they automatically qualify?
So it would depend, Carol Lee threw me into this yesterday. Okay. So it's going to depend on if they are credentialed with the early, what is it?
Texas Rising Star.
Rising Star, if they have Rising Star accreditation, which is why 26 right now. And that could expand, and frankly, we want it to, because the more childcare facilities that are awarded the Texas Rising Star accreditation means that we are attaining that goal that we're looking for, to have more quality childcare facilities. So I would assume that if a new childcare provider opened up and obtained the Rising Star accreditation, that they would fall under that. Is that your understanding?
Yeah, so, may I ask?
Yes.
Texas Rising Star is the quality.
If you don't mind, come forward. That way they can get your audio online. We may have a few extra questions, so if you don't mind hanging out.
My name is Jill Goodrich. I'm a mom of four, always used childcare, but also I'm the executive director of Opportunity School here in town. Opportunity School does not benefit from this measure, but I'm here to support our local childcare industry. Texas Rising Star is the state's quality rating system. So for a program to qualify for this exemption, they would need to be part of that program so their quality of their program is monitored. And they also have to enroll, I think it's 20% of low-income families. And so it is geared to help our programs that serve the most vulnerable children in our community.
Okay, so in order for them to qualify, they have to meet those standards and then it's monitored as well, correct?
That's right.
So it's lifting the standard of all facilities that, okay.
And Rising Star is a longstanding accreditation program?
Right, okay. Thank you for that. Any other questions, gentlemen?
Just one on the Rising Star, real quick. On the Rising Star, do you have to pay membership or anything to be a part of it?
No, you don't. There's no membership fee. We're monitored every year. In fact, we're getting ready for our monitoring. We don't put a limit on the number of low-income children that we serve, but many centers, because it's not profitable to serve low-income families because of the rates. It's, it is something that you have to be serving low-income families and in order to qualify.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Councilman Simpson.
Was the final approval, so this came from the legislature? Was that the final approval? So it never, it wasn't anything that had to go to voters, it was just the Texas legislature?
No, it was a constitutional amendment that was widely passed.
The Texas legislature put it on there and voters approved it.
The legislature put it on, the constitutional amendment, it was widely passed, and now it's just up to every taxing entity to, like, to approve the ordinance.
Okay, so voters thought it was a good idea.
Yes, sir.
Or we should at least look at the opportunity to be able to do it if we can.
Yes, sir, widely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Just to recap, we have the opportunity or the option to do 70% abatement or 100% abatement? Are those the two, the two options?
Other than just the 100 or?
Right, yeah. The option for the 100 or the other option for the 100?
I think it's 75% or 100%.
75% or 100%? Okay.
Draft ordinances.
There you go. And so Randall County has not passed this yet as a taxing entity?
I don't have that data. I was awaiting it.
We don't know. Okay.
I think Potter County, Randall County, and the city of Canyon have all passed it.
Have all passed it.
And I think there's like 26 other counties or city municipalities who have passed it across the state.
Okay. Counsel, I would ask for a little bit of discussion on, and bringing this back so we have an action item, something that we could vote for. Would you guys be more inclined to entertain the 100% abatement, knowing that it's a small amount of money for our total revenue? Or would you guys want it brought back with options? What are your thoughts?
I'm fine with options.
Okay.
Yeah, same. I mean, I would look at both.
Do we, do we have any reason to feel like counsel wouldn't support this measure moving forward? No.
No, not with.
Okay.
The voters have spoken on it.
Yeah, I mean, and I don't know whether staff has any opinion on this one way or another, or feeling if it's detrimental to us to take this money off or anything like that. But I'd be interested when we get the final proposal, if staff had any recommendation in one way or the other, or our observations.
Obviously, I think you hire me to always raise concern about our funding sources. But no, I've talked to staff, I mean, this would be, this would be something we can definitely absorb, so. But I'll give the staff to, so when we bring this back to you, we'll try to have numbers to you, that way you can kind of see what this may impact our budget. But I would, I would be surprised if it's a significant amount of funding. But I think, look at our notes here, I think you have options between 50% to 100%. So what we'll bring back to is kind of blanks there, and then you can fill the blank in that meeting with the set ordinance.
Really good. Anything further, counsel?
No. And you said, do you know what the rate was for Randall County's exemption amount?
I just texted, I don't have it in front of me, and she hasn't responded.
Okay, well, we'll bring it back for an action item, and then we'll hope for the higher end of that option of 100%.
Yeah, as will we. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, guys. Appreciate you. Onto Item 7C, we've got a streets and facilities update with Mr. Hooper.
Thank you so much. This is, good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. This is at the request of Councilman Simpson at the, two meetings ago, that asked that we would come back and give a recap of what we did in the snow event the first week of January. So what we're going to do is kind of walk through this, talk about what we did to prepare for it, go through the actual event itself, and then talk about some lessons learned and some things that we look forward to for the next event, which actually we were able to practice in the next snow event that came just about a week later to make some improvements. So just kind of starting with the, looking back over a recap of January 7th, there was a severe snowstorm, up to 12 inches of snowfall that fell across the city. The original forecast for that was for about an inch and a half to two and a half inches, which is what we were preparing for. Even though some of the forecasters we did talk to said we could see six inches and a limited, you know, confidence in that, about a 20% confidence in that. So that's what we prepared for. We did see some winds that reached 45 miles an hour that were in the overnight hours, led to some high drifting in that first night of the storm, and some blow-freezing temperatures that prevented the natural melting in the two days of the event, even though we did see a little bit of sunshine out there that helped with that. We still stayed down in the low temperatures, especially overnight. Forecast underestimated the snowfall amount impacting our preparation for that. And we had minimum street closures. It's something we always look back on as well, is, you know, how many streets were closed, how many areas of town were inaccessible? There was only one that we knew of inside of the city. Of course, I-40 was on the Tex- dot side, all the way back west of Saucy. But on our end, Ninth Street had some issues going up the hill, and that was the only area that we actually closed down. The police department closed that down during the storm. But kind of just run back through, this is our insight into our planning and our response. On January the 7th, which was the Tuesday before that storm began, as we always do, that's when we start our initial planning. We have our shift scheduling. A lot of conversations are taking place with our street department, public works coordination, and of course, forecast reviews with the executive team. Something I do personally is contact the National Weather Service. I've been doing that for a long, long time. I have a pretty good relationship with them, have good discussions with them, also have relationships with some of the meteorologists here in town as well. I don't pay much attention to some of the stuff that's out on social media that's coming from the storm chasers at times, but I do at least look at it and kind of get an idea of what they're thinking, so that when we have the conversations with the meteorologists, we can get a broader idea. January the 8th, our street division transitioned up to 24-hour shifts, which means that we came in and worked at 8:00 PM that night. We had sent some people home early in the day. They come in at 8:00 PM and they start our 24-hour shift rotations beginning on the 8th. Forecast review with the executive team as well. Then on the 9th, of course, I called the National Weather Service at 5:00 AM, and they said the snow should start at 6:00, and it started at like 6:01 where I was at. So they were, they were spot on with that. As the, as the morning went, that snow intensified, as we all remember, and our emergency response was activated. We had all our crews out. Our city services were actually closed down at noon that day. I think by 11:00 AM, when Grayson and I and the executive team called the National Weather Service on a conference call, at that point in time, we'd already received six and a half, I think was the number, six and a half, seven inches in some locations in Amarillo. When, again, the original prediction was somewhere around four max. Our salt and sand operations began then. We started our drift plowing operations as well, critical building access from facilities, snow removal from parking lots and things like that that we do on every snowstorm or ice storm. We start working with our municipal facilities so we can get those back open as quickly as possible. Now, on January 10th, our solidway service had to be suspended because they were having a difficult time getting into some of the alleys, especially on the alleys where we had some drifting going into those alleys. And we also closed our landfill that day as well. On January the 11th and 12th, we did resume our solidway services, and we did open up our landfill that morning, thanks to some creative work out there that I'll talk about here in just a moment. Then on the 13th, after, this is post-storm, our sweeping operations began to go and sweep up all the salt and sand that we have out on the roads. And we start our pothole patrols right away because we know that anytime you have the weather, you have the moisture, you have the freezing, we're going to have some potholes out there, so we start that. And then, of course, that Monday, right after that's where we, and we do this every event, just so you know that, no matter what, whether council's requested this or not, we have an internal hot wash meeting and an after-action meeting where we go over everything that occurred with all of our department heads, make sure that, and we really, we say the words, leave your egos at the door and come in with solutions to problems and real things that we saw that we could do better so we can make improvements. We conducted that on January the 13th. Then on January 14th, we started equipment repairs and started replenishing our salt and sand bins and things like that, so we could be ready for the next storm when it comes. I wanted to just give you this picture, just to give you a good insight into, in the building that we have out, the street maintenance department. When all of these trucks are loaded up, this is what it looks like. To put the spreaders back there, you'll hear us talk on some of the emails when we talk about V-Box spreaders. Well, that's a V-Box spreader right there, and that's what goes in the back of the dump trucks. They have a conveyor system in there, a trolley system that they can move all that stuff around and get them all loaded. That's generally what the overnight shift was doing whenever they were preparing for response that next morning, getting all the trucks, getting everything prepared. We also have a facility where we can go in and load all of those trucks up with salt and sand and keep them indoors, so that when the snow begins falling and we start to see precipitation, that that, that material is dry. So when we go out on the streets, it's ready to go. And I wanted to show you that. This is the salt and sand bins. I had somebody ask me that last week. They said, what is a salt and sand bin? Well, there they are. That's, this is where we have, we have salt on some sides, we have sand on others, we take all that and we mix it. We have a loading dock, the trucks pull up to that, and we're just continually rotating those trucks in and out and bringing them in and filling them back up and getting them back out on the streets. So I want to talk about just department. Now, you got to keep in mind, too, during this presentation, there are some departments that are going to be skipped. This is all the things that are under my purview. There's still some departments such as utilities that have some responsibilities for parking lots. The Parks Department helps with some of the fire departments and other areas in town too. So they're not going to be a part of this report, but I want to talk about my operations here. Staff began 24 operations, as I said, on 12:00 AM Thursday morning, remained operational until 8:00 AM on Sunday morning. That's, that's when we finally shut the operations down. We had up to 26 personnel on duty at any time, performing all the operations listed below, sanding the arterial intersections, overpasses, downtown. below, sanding the arterial intersections, overpasses, downtown streets, our overpasses are generally the ones downtown, we don't have anything that we maintain on I-40 or on I-27, it's just the ones that you'll see, like a good example is coming in on Pierce Street, that's one that we take care of right there. Loading sand into the spreaders, plowing some snowdrifts, remind everyone, this is a good public service place to do it from, we do not treat residential streets, we never have, we don't have the equipment to do that. Our intent and expectation during this storm was to treat the arterial streets as best we can, depending upon the situation, and also depending upon what weather is coming, what do we have coming in two days, do we have a lot of sunshine and 50 degrees, or do we have freezing temperatures for another week where we're not going to see any melt-off? All of that goes into that decision-making process of what, what method we're going to use in treating the streets that we were addressing. We have listed on here busting snow and slush out, that's one of our favorite terms, we call it curb busting, we do that at the onset of the melt, when it starts to melt, we start to see our inlets clogged up, we start to see slush in the curbs that's built up, so we actually have our tandem trucks, pickup trucks, everything we have out on the street, their intent is to get in those curbs with their wheels and clean those out, it works very well, opens up the drains and lets everything drain off so that more melt can come and more can go into the curb and into the drainage system. Then we also, performing our equipment repairs and supervising our operations was all a part of what we do. I'd like to just take a pause too and introduce a couple of staff members today, sitting back in the back, our superintendent of streets is Lynn Hill. Lynn, would you stand up and show everybody you're 6'4" and all there, Lynn has been with the city for, well, is it 26 years, Lynn, is that?
20.
Okay, close enough, it's over 20. And Frank Shaw, who's a supervisor, the good-looking guy in the white shirt there, how many years, Frank?
26.
So there you go, there's the 26. So you have, you have 50 years of experience sitting right here in this room, that's been a part of that operation out there. Lynn was the assistant superintendent for many years and ran the overnight operations, he's now the superintendent, runs the daytime operations out there, so, and we were going to bring everybody, I thought, man, we need to do that, but we've got a lot of work to do out there, so we just wanted to pass it along to at least these two, so they can pass on to them, and we're super proud of the work that they did. And you can see a face and kind of put a face with some of the names that we talk about. So let's talk about our street division operations, we had nine tandem axle dump trucks with V-Box spreaders, we had three single axles sand trucks as well, we have four motor graders, four front-end loaders, and sanding, sanding assistance with the snowdrift removal, one backhoe was clearing snow from the service center parking lot so that they could work efficiently in there, and then 10 pickups with supervisors and other people that are transporting people back and forth, or going out and picking up someone if we had an equipment problem, et cetera, and also monitoring where we have trouble, where we have areas that we know that are high-impact areas during an event like this. We had our, about 6,500 miles just from the street department from 12:00 AM Thursday through Sunday evening, we verified all that through our GPS system, of course, we can monitor all those vehicles while they're out on the road and monitor the mileage and hour, runtime hours of the engines, everything. About 900 tons of salt and sand was applied to the streets during that one event, and our overtime cost was roughly about $35,000 on that, and it's really hard to put a number to what a storm like this cost us, but when you just take a rough number with equipment time, personnel, all those things that we looked at, it's a little over $400,000 is what it's going to be for our response during this event. Now, some of that would have been normal hours that we would have been working anyway, so it's kind of hard to put a full cost of, but during those, during that time period, about $400,000 or better for that, for the equipment, personnel, and materials. Our fleet services division, they start 24-hour shifts as well, as soon as our street division goes into 24-hour shifts, so do they. They need to be there to respond to, to the, anything that's going on out there as far as the equipment, when we have problems, and we were really lucky during this storm, we had four pieces of equipment, I think, total that actually had problems, and they'll pull those into the shop, the mechanics are there, they're ready to go. The good news is, and Alan was telling me this, and Alan Harder's back there as well, who ran this entire event and did a fantastic job on it, but he was telling me that he went out and we didn't have any trucks that were being repaired, but yet the fleet services division was actually working on our trash trucks while they were out there, so they found things to do, they were extremely busy during that time, and then when one would come in, we'd get it back out on the road. Six personnel, 24-hour operations, and again, we had very minimal issues with equipment. Drainage utility operations are a part of this as well, they have parking lot duties, so they have several areas that they go, and they also clear all the clogged inlets, and they're patrolling for those all the time. If we start getting clogged inlets, we start getting other issues with the streets too, we want that stuff to drain off, as I mentioned earlier. But they're responsible for moving snow, removing snow at the Grant Street Fuel Islands, that's important, because that's where we fuel up our equipment to go back out and continue running. Garfield Fuel Island, that's where we also see a lot of the police department fueling up their vehicles, et cetera. Animal Management Welfare, Transit's multi-modal facility, and Public Health, what they did during this event, and I got to give them a little bit of credit too, there's some, there's some areas that we've expanded to, such as our new transit facility, and Chris Quigley calls and says, hey, what about our parking lot? Well, it wasn't in our snow plan, because it's a new, brand-new facility, so that's one of the things you'll see in our after-action report that we've got to make, make right in our report. Drainage utility took all those areas where we didn't have anyone assigned and went and took care of it. So Thad Dees is the superintendent out there for Drainage Utility, they had nine personnel, a backhoe, three dump trucks, two pickup trucks, about 186 miles that they put on the event. Traffic division, you probably don't even realize that they're out there, but a lot, especially when we have a north wind in this snow event, a lot of the traffic signals that face the south are going to get, or face the north, rather, are going to get their lenses covered up with snow, especially when the high winds overnight, so they will go out and they're working on those to knock the snow off those and get those lenses clear and things like that. Also, looking at signal detectors, damaged signs, anything that's going on, some of the high-wind events, we see a lot of signs that go down, luckily we didn't in this one, but they're also monitoring for that. Four pickups, three bucket trucks, a service body as well, about 200 miles for the traffic department. Our facilities operation is very important to what we do, Jerry Danforth is the superintendent there, and I might mention Ronnie Olkerson's our superintendent for traffic, as, when I was talking about them. Jerry and his crews, they're responsible for making sure that the public has access to the sidewalks and they can get into the buildings, so as soon as they can, they start working on those facilities, 16 pieces of equipment, they had 12 pickups and four snowblowers, the four snowblowers didn't work very well, and we'll talk about that in a moment as well, they drove about 350 miles. So some of the strengths, and what we do in an after-action event, is we sit down and we talk about what did we do well, and what did we not do well, what do we need to improve on. The strengths that we saw as a team, that we, we had timely preparation, we started preparing for this thing on Tuesday, you know, we couldn't help what happened with the weather, but we were preparing for it. We got into our 24-hour shifts very quickly, and I think they did a good job with that. We focused on our priorities, it's very easy for us to start getting a lot of phone calls from different people across the city, or we get phone calls from a council member or from a management person, and they're, they're stick to what they're doing, stick to our plan, unless we see that we need to do something different, because it takes away from that plan, obviously, if we go off of it. And somebody may be depending on us to get to where we said we were going to be as a part of that plan, I thought they did a really good job of focusing on those priorities. Our collaborative efforts were good between departments, our landfill reopening very quickly when it did was because of the ingenuity of the folks at the landfill, they said, hey, we can get back open, let's go take a bunch of wood chips that are over at our wood pile, and let's start coating the roads with those so we can get trucks in here and get trash emptied. I thought that was very timely of them, and it was important that they did that, and we got open that next morning, so that was great. Drainage utility response, again, fill in those gaps that we had, they just jumped up and jumped all over it. Street department overall, I thought the work was, in executing the plan that we had was given, they did a very good job at that. 24-hour shifts and addressing that. The gaps that we identified, and there's probably going to be more that come out of us, I think every event you're going to find gaps, if you don't, you're not doing your job. The public advisories were not issued early enough to manage our expectations, and, and that's on me, that's on our department. OEI was ready to put out anything that we're ready to give them, we just really were not prepared for, oh, well, we're going to fix to have a big event here, so, one of the, one of the things that we really got to work on is managing public expectations through that communication, I think it would help so much if people knew what we were out there doing, what we were trying to accomplish, so they could understand a little bit better. Our internal communication need a little bit of improvement as well, across departments, we have so many partners that work in this, including the Office of Emergency Management, OEI, as I just mentioned, and that internal communication needs to get better as well, so that you can be informed also in that internal communication. Consistent messaging with the public didn't occur as often as it should have, and that was due to lack of information provided by the Office of OEI, as I just mentioned. And then situational reports, we've got to get better at that, and our sit, our sit rep reports are something that we put together, we try to send it out to Mr. Path early in the morning, we try to keep him advised all day long so that he can keep you updated on what we're doing. We've revised how we're doing that report even in that second snowstorm that we got, and I think we've already made some improvements, I'll talk about that in just a moment. Some of the other challenges and gaps that we saw was our snowblowers for the sidewalks, where they were having a tough time getting those to work, and those crews used snow shovels to do sidewalks, well, that's inefficient, we got to get that fixed, there's, there's simple fixes for that. And we do have a shortage of 4x4 vehicles of getting crews around to take care of parking lots and take care of transporting that type of equipment to other areas, so we've talked about even sharing equipment, finding four-wheel drives with people that have been sent home for the day, we can resource those out in a different way and help them get to their places that they need to be. And our parking lot responsibilities, those gaps I mentioned a moment ago, we've got to revise that, and we've got to, we've got to get that shored up. Some of the other challenges, snow removal plan needs to be updated with the addresses of the identified troubled areas, we found that there's some new developments too, that are residential developments, and even though we don't treat residential streets, there are some that are at the end of a residential area that's next to an open field, well, you're obviously going to have some high drifting there, and we had, we had a case where that happened, where people couldn't even get out of their house, I mean, it was three-foot drifts out there. We don't have the equipment to plow all the streets in Amarillo, we just don't, but we want to attend to things like that, and we did, so we're going to revise our plan to include some of those areas that were identified in this storm, and, and update that and make it more readable for the crews when they're out there. Our resource tracking, I don't feel like we utilize our GPS enough, we're trying to find where equipment was, who was doing what, well, we have a GPS system, and we're, we talked about how we need to utilize that better in our communication pieces to each other internally, it's a tool that we need to use during events like this more, and also tracking our time and tracking the things that we're out there doing. Our street team, especially the newer staff, understanding that snow removal plan, intersection sanding trainings needed, there were some of the lay-down areas that were leading up to an intersection that were too short, we need to go back and make those a little bit longer, the idea is to get traction as you're coming up to the stoplight, not as you're going through it, so, even though both those are important. So those were some of the other things that we recognized. Lessons learned, weather forecasts are great, but they're not 100% accurate, we've got to come up with a contingency plan, consider worst-case scenarios instead of the least-case scenarios, I think we should have, if we'd have been considering the worst case of that six inches, we'd have been a little bit more prepared for this one. And exercise more frequent contact with the National Weather Service, maybe on an hourly basis, I think is going to help us once we start going through a storm. Then we need to invest in some modern snow removal equipment for our facilities and budget for some upgrades as equipment is needed, and then also expand our plan to include high-problem residential patrol routes, as I mentioned a moment ago, those new developments where we could see some drifting, adjust our, adjust our snowplow language and protocols and be more definitive to the public on what operations we're conducting and why. I think we've got to, we must do a better job in letting the public know what we're doing. Creating a contingency plan, section related to forecast confidence, and clearly defining responsibilities for parking lot and driveway clearing, we're working on that plan right now. Our communications pieces, just real quick, and this is the last slide, provide better information to OEI so they can update, post, and respond to existing concerns. We've met extensively with OEI and discussed exactly what we need to do differently, we took the ideas from them, how they could make that and use that, take that information and use it better to inform the public, I think we can put a check mark on that when it's done, utilize a ribbon on the front page of our website, Mr. Path came in my office, I think we were the only two in our office at the time, and he came in and he said, where's all our information out about the snow plan, and I said, well, it's on the website, and he said, well, can you find it for me real quick? I said, sure. Well, I couldn't find it, it took me a few minutes to get there, and so, we wrote that down and said, that's, that's something we need to do, is put a ribbon on the front of that thing that says, for severe weather information, click here, and we can get to that, and we can make that better. Utilize our text groups a little bit better to, for pre-event advisories and keeping staff informed, and creating some boilerplates with pre-approved messaging in that, we're working on that, and, and that is probably about 50% complete already, where we have messages that are ready to go, and on all kinds of scenarios that we've already approved, and all we have to do is just put the data in it, and then OEI can get that sent out as quickly as possible. On our daily sit reps, changing the way that we do those notifications, I think you've already possibly seen some of the fruit of that, during the second storm, we changed the way that we were notifying Mr. Path, and OEI, and OEM, where we had a top section that said, this is for public consumption, the bottom section is for internal consumption, so that everybody knew what information could go out, should go out, and what shouldn't. And the only reason that it shouldn't go out is there's just internal things like, you know, we're dealing with a clog spreader, or we got, you know, there's, there's just operational things in there that he needs to know about, but not necessarily the public would want to know about. And adjust our frequency of daily updates that would come to Mr. Path that then would come to you, make those at 5:00, 5:00 AM, and 10:00 AM, 2:00 PM, and 6:00 PM, and any other time in between that we feel that something relevant comes about, we need to jump on that and get that out. I think in the second storm, we did all of those things, and I think we did them much, much better, even though we just didn't have the same snow that we had on the first one. So with all that, open for questions, and I'll try to answer anything you can, I think that the key to this whole presentation is, and thank you for asking us to do it, we want to be transparent, we want to put out there when we skin our knees, and we want to say we're going to get better at it, and...
Questions, gentlemen?
Just one, Donnie, I appreciate the information on this. On the equipment gaps, is there anything in place, you know, we're talking about snowblowers and stuff of that nature that are either old or don't work, is there anything in place where we can emergently, emergently rent those from a local company or something?
There are, I mean, there's places that we could do that, I think by the time we realized what we were doing, it was just, that probably going to be in the back of our mind and the plan, and I appreciate that idea, we can put that in there too, that if we have equipment that's like that, we can get it, I know that we can, and Jerry knows that as well. I think the main thing is, we need to have equipment ready to go too, they've made, there's so many different equipment now than there was, you know, five, 10 years ago, you don't have to get a big giant snowball now, you can get these ones that look like little weed eaters, we saw somebody using one of those, and man, it was moving a lot of snow and doing it pretty quick, a lot quicker than a snow shovel would, so there's all kinds of opportunities for us there, but yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate you bringing this forward, I mean, I think it's informative, I think the public needs to know it, I know we got a lot of negative comments about it, but I mean, I think y'all did a good job, you know, I was out there doing reconnaissance and texting you and letting you know, so appreciate y'all, y'all are very reactive to it, and, I mean, I think y'all did a good job, so appreciate you and your whole crew.
Yeah, and that's where the credit goes, is back there, they did a really good job, and thank you, go, go pass it along.
Counselor. Did we, did we hear back from Tech Dot?
We did.
What did, what did they have to?
Yeah, you know what, and I actually had that in my notes, and I apologize for not having it in here, so, there's two things that happened on that, we talked to Tech Dot before the storm, Grayson and I had actually met with him on Tuesday on a whole different matter, and they said, well, we got to go, because we're fixing to move some equipment down to the Dallas area, we've got to start getting organized for that, and at the time, again, it was, you know, they were same thing, they were seeing the same forecast that we were, there was a lot of stuff going on in the Metroplex, they were saying that they were going to have terrible conditions there, so, and I, and I've talked to Tech Dot, and they said, I can share this with you, I'd ask him to be here today if they could, but they're actually, I think he's in Austin today, so, what they, what they do, and typically So what they, what they do, and typically any storm, TechStop shuffles their equipment around, especially within their own district. So they have, I think they had 137 plow trucks that are in their district here. They moved six of those to the Metroplex. What they also can do is, there's not as much snow going on, say in Canadian. They can move that equipment to where they have snow here. So they did supplement that equipment back that they had as far as the plows were concerned. Now, they sent some motor graders down there as well and they contracted out some motor grader service to replace those. So there's a lot of miscommunication that was out there. A lot of people thought that was the city that had sent equipment to Dallas. And of course, I was scratching my head thinking, "No, our jurisdiction is in city limits." But however, TechStop's jurisdiction is the state of Texas, so they can do that. And they were relying on the same forecast that we were.
And then, when was the last time we got this large, as large amount of snow?
Okay, so, well, I can't go back and, and tell you every month, but I, what the numbers I looked at were just in January. In 25 years, this was the third time in January that we've seen the snow that was over eight inches. So that kind of gives you an idea of why we prepare the way that we prepare too, because historically, we know that we're not going to see big events like that. In my lifetime, and I've lived here all of my life in the Texas Panhandle, I can't think of a dozen of these that we've had that, you know, get up that high. Now, I can think of one that was, you know, 20, like 23 inches, like in 1987, and it was just, everything was shut down. So luckily, we had a little bit warmer road temperatures and luckily, we had some sunshine to get some of that stuff off. But third one in 25 years is according to the data that I saw in the month of January that was over eight inches.
And then how much snow do we usually have to get before we start to plow? And then when do we start to plow?
That's a good question. So it, it depends on a lot of other factors than just snow. I mean, we could see, like we see five or six inches of snow in this. It was a very wet snow. We look at a lot of different things. If traffic is not moving, if we, like, I'll give you a good example. We talk to our transit people all the time. If our buses are able to get out and move around in this fairly easily, we know that we don't, we're not going to go into plow mode. If we start to see cars that are getting stranded on the road, we like the, the big hillside. You remember the pictures of hillside with all the cars? They were definitely plowing during that snowstorm. Len could, could verify this number, but him and I were talking, and I think he said, "We've probably, since he's been here, maybe gone into plow mode six or seven times out of that 20-something years." Because it's difficult, when we make that decision to actually go into that, we know we're not going to get all the arterials, for one. We don't have enough equipment to do that. We have 13 pieces of equipment that are out there running. We know that we're going to have to pile it up in the center lanes of the arterials because we can't push it to the side. If we push to the side, we close down every business that's on that arterial because we'll be piling up snow in all their entryways. Plowing a highway or a county road is a little bit different. They turn the plows to the outside, shoot it off in the bar ditch and they keep on going. We don't have that luxury. So we have to put it in the center turn lanes and then you'll see these piles of snow that are there forever and forever. We have some in our parking lot right now from that first snowstorm that's still out there to this day. And that refreezes overnight when it drains off on the crown of the road and then we have people complaining about ice on the road. So we would rather not double and triple that operation by putting in the center turn lanes if traffic is moving. Now, generally, when we start to see five inches, to answer your question, five inches, that's when we start looking at that and analyzing that. We also look ahead and say, "What's the forecast for tomorrow?" Well, at the time that we saw this snow, we saw that we could possibly be at 38 the next day. So we knew we would have a little bit melting. We knew some sunshine was coming and we knew that that's going to help us more than we would ever help ourselves by plowing. So a lot of different factors, there's a lot of discussions that go into that, but it's mainly whenever we see that traffic is just not able to get around, it's when we have to start making some drastic changes like that.
Well, thanks for the update because I was familiar with a lot of this and, you know, we haven't had this snow in a long time. And then it goes out there and people don't immediately see a snowplow or something going on and they think no one's doing anything when there's a lot of factors that come into that. So I appreciate the, the update.
You're welcome. I thought one more thing in there that I, and this was at a previous city I was at, but we had an 18-inch snow and it was in April. And y'all may remember that. I mean, it was just like, man, what are we doing with snow in, in April? And it was just, it was just piled up everywhere, shutting everything down. And we decided to go into plow mode and the next day it was 68 degrees. And so we spent a lot of effort that could have been melted off by 10 o'clock that next morning. The weather in the Panhandle is a lot of fun to try to, try to work.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate the update, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, that moves us from item 7C to 7D. We got Mr. Harder and Mr. Danforth coming up here to talk about our transfer station.
Thanks, Mayor Council. As you mentioned, Alan Harder, Public Works Director. I just want to give you an update as well as members of the public that are working, or watching, sorry, on some damage that was sustained at the transfer station last week. I'm going to walk through a summary of that damage, a little bit of information about, you know, what is a transfer station, the impacts to our collection operations, what we're doing to mitigate those impacts. And then at that point, that'll exhaust my expertise and I'll turn it over to Jerry to talk a little bit about next steps to actually returning electrical service to that building. See if I can work the slide. Yes. Okay. So Tuesday, January 21st, transfer station personnel opened the transfer station doors in preparation for normal operations, something they do Monday through Saturday every week of the year, even in very cold temperatures, down in the teens and single digits. Unfortunately, the lowest recorded air temperature that morning was negative four degrees Fahrenheit. And so an exposed portion of a water pipe, which I have a portion of, or picture of on the next slide, which is used to clean the floor off every day, froze and burst, spraying water on the adjacent motor control center, which powers two out of the three compactors at the transfer station. Just so you know, the third compactor was actually part of an addition that was constructed in 2012. So it's on a, a totally separate electrical service and that's how it's able to still be in operation even today. That picture on the left there shows you, you can see a white pipe coming down on the right. That's actually insulation on the pipe. Services a hose bib. The hose is wrapped up there and it was just an area where it has to be exposed to get out to that hose bib that actually froze and burst and then just sprayed water down the wall on that motor control center. The picture on the right is just looking in, in one of those electrical panels to the damage that was done there. You can see it's kind of, kind of burnt and melted. This is, once we got everything thawed out and dried out this week, this is just to give you an idea of kind of the scope of what we're talking about, not a small electrical panel like we think of on a house, very large electrical components. So just for people who are listening to understand what the transfer station is, it's, it's a place where we're able to take our collection vehicles, drop off our solid waste in preparation for taking it to landfill. It's really not much more than a, a large open warehouse with a tipping face at the end, which opens up to a, a hopper where it can be compacted into the back of a transfer truck and hauled off to the landfill. As I mentioned before, the, our transfer station has three compactors and we're currently operating with one. The picture at the top is just what that open floor looks like. You can actually see a, a truck. It's one of our knuckle boom trucks dropping off in the back. The picture on the bottom left is looking over the tipping face down into a hopper and that's kind of the top of the compactor, which is at the bottom right. That's where a, a transfer truck backs up to it, hooks in and then actually gets loaded up and ready for delivery to go out to the landfill. So just so people understand what we're talking about when we talk about a transfer station. Obviously, our operational impacts with only having one compactor, we're not able to process as much solid waste through the transfer station right now. So we're diverting collection vehicles, especially ones that are running routes on the west side of town directly to the landfill. That takes more time and also puts excess miles on our, our equipment, which with older equipment is, is always hard on them. It, it requires us right now, we are running until about six or seven o'clock into the night to collect our routes and then oftentimes, we're having to push over into the next day to finish collecting service. So I appreciate, and I'll say this again at the end, I appreciate our residents and our businesses, our customers, who are being patient with us. We are working very hard to catch them up, but I want them to be aware that there are going to be times where it'll be a day, a day or so delayed in picking up their trash, but we are working and currently are maintaining that service. I know last week, we monitored it and I'll talk a little bit more about our monitoring. We monitored it and by the time we got through Saturday, we had picked up every residential dumpster twice, which is our, our schedule. So haven't slipped in service there, it's just a little bit delayed. So what we're doing to mitigate, right now, we're just monitoring our missed service complaints. I saw a slight uptick last week in our commercial complaints, nothing in our residential complaints. And so I think the efforts that our staff's putting in in overtime and going directly to the landfill is paying off. We're all very aware of 2022, when we got behind in trash collection because of equipment and personnel issues. So luckily, we had already been tracking those complaints. It's a really good pulse for us to know when we have problems. We're already tracking that so we can compare what we're, what we're having now to what's been going on for the past two years and really not seeing that go up very much. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Jerry to talk a little bit more about kind of next step forward to return electrical service to the transfer station.
Well, I hate falling behind Donnie and Alan both because they talk a lot faster than I do. So as you saw on the slide, the motor control centers, what we're addressing, we have got received bids on those. We do have the ability and it's actually the cheaper bid to get an ABB motor control system delivered in two weeks. We're working with Alan and them on that. Basically, what you saw on the one side with the explosion in that one motor control box, we had multiple explosions inside that motor control center. As I shared with the mayor earlier today, when you have a one-inch solid copper bar explode, that's a lot of amps going through that. This is a 480-volt system, 600 amp service that services two of those hydraulic plungers as well as all the pumps that are in that system. So the new system will come in, basically, we were fortunate because we had a current job that's going on out there with an electric contractor on site. We told him, "We need the quotes on the equipment so he can control the pricing on that." And then once we've got that, do a quick exchange, set it back in place and be back up in operations. Right now, if agreed to, we can get that, that MCC ordered today and have it here within the next two weeks and be back up and operational in three weeks as far as that system goes. Be happy to answer any technical questions with regards to the MCC if you've got them.
What's your turnaround time?
Turnaround time is going to end up being four weeks from the time of the event.
So two weeks from today, two and a half?
Two weeks from today, we should have the MCCs in place and in the, it's going to be about a week's worth of work. As you saw, that's a rather sizable system that's out there. Of course, we're going to mitigate any issues that we see that could be a future problem. Keep in mind, that system was installed back in, in 1964. So we've gotten a lot of use out of it. Alan referenced the water line that broke, has been there since that timeframe too. And we have had lower temperatures than four degrees below. So it has survived, it just didn't survive this time.
We appreciate the quick turnaround. We understand that six weeks, six to eight was expected on delivery on materials. I know how you got to go out and look and search and see what's across the nation in order to get those components. So we appreciate you guys working with that electrical contractor to get it here quickly.
Jerry? You said with the new one, is it to look to maybe forego any future problems? I mean, I know this is kind of a fluke thing that happened, but is this new system, is it, I hate to say watertight, I know it's designed for an interior insulation, but is it shielded from something like that?
That's a very fair question. You've got to keep in mind, once again, we're talking about a system that's 65 years old.
Yeah, yeah.
And that system has functioned that way, but over the years, opening and closing those cabinets, where it's situated inside as a very corrosive area.
Sure.
So over 65 years, it, it basically reached where it was going to reach.
But the new one?
The new one will be built better than what this system is and will have epoxy coating on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wanted to mention, sir, something else I forgot to mention. I'm also working on SOP. I say, "Ah," we as a team are working on SOP so that when we do have extremely cold weather like this, what's, what's a threshold for, you know, if we just keep the doors shut till 10:00 AM, send our trucks to the landfill. By 10:00 AM, I think by noon, it was 20. So could have mitigated that with just a few hours of the transfer station being closed. So that's another thing we're looking at to mitigate this as well.
Yeah. So for those listening, standard operating procedure for your SOP.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, you're good. Appreciate that. Any other questions for either of these gentlemen?
So with this item here, because of this, because of the need, the importance of our solid waste to our community, we did authorize an emergency purchase to get this thing going. So we want, but we want to bring you guys an update given we had a council meeting coming up, that way we can present this and also to speak to our citizens, make them aware of the situation. And we will, we will bring this item back to you once we get it all finalized and costs done. And again, we went in a minute, emergency purchase to get it going.
Totally understand. I think we appreciate the initiative and understand that we can approve that after you bring those final numbers. So I think you've got good direction and support from our side of the DIAF.
All right, great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. If I could, I'd like to move through items 7E and F and then we'll probably take a recess before we jump into the rest of discussions. So item 70 is, I think it's Stephen that, that's here as well as his team. I don't know if, if Mrs. Stores would like to start and hand it over to you, but if you guys will educate us on what you're working on for fire apparatus.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Wanted just to quickly remind you, we've been discussing this over the last couple of council meetings and today, we wanted to bring some updated information about some financing options through a debt issuance. And so we have Stephen Adams with Specialized Public Finance, our financial advisors, and we also have Paul Jason and Will Smith with Specialized Public Finance and then Bob Dransfield, our bond counsel. So we've got all bases covered if there's questions. So I'm going to let them present and then I will go over some of the information that was emailed out to all of you regarding kind of a plan over the next several years. And then we can help answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Laura. We brought our team. This has been our first opportunity to meet Mr. Path, so we're happy to do that. I think we have a presentation that's coming up. So we've been looking at the issuance of public property finance contractual obligations and to understand what these are, let me go back in history. In, in the late 80s and early 90s, you recall, if you are my age, that interest rates were much higher. And at that time, vendor financing for things like personal property, which is anything you can drive, pick up or move, a lot of that was done through leases like it is even today with copiers and cars and vehicles. Cities and schools saw vendor rates 10, 15, 20%. They came to people like us and Mr. Dransfield, the bond counsel, and said, "Can we do something besides these vendor leases? You know, we know interest rates are high, but we have to do something." So the public finance community, the bond lawyers of the state, worked with the Attorney General's Office to figure out a way for political subdivision to do, replace vendor financing with another product for personal property. And that is what PPFCOs are. So they can only be used for a personal property. Now, the, the key difference between this and a lease is if you lease vehicles or computer equipment or anything else, you do not own that asset. It is owned by the leasing company and this council or board or whatever, any budget season can choose not to appropriate and hand that equipment back. So that provides a degree of risk, therefore a higher interest rate. With the PPFCO, you are pledging your INS tax and you own the equipment. In this case, we're talking about fire equipment. You'll end up owning it. The theory is you're never going to plan on giving that fire equipment back. And in fact, in our numbers, we have worked out a buyback from the vendor in our numbers. Now, even though you're pledging your INS tax, you don't have to levy it. Every budget year, you can figure out how to pay this. You can do it out of your own M tax, other revenues, if those are available, or your INS tax. So the decision today, in my view, is can we use PPFCOs, which were for personal property, for the purpose of replacing a vendor lease for an asset that you plan on owning and keeping for its useful life? And then the way the contracts are with these, with these fire equipment, you actually have a buyback from the manufacturer. So with that, is there any questions about what a PPFCO is and how it's different from a lease? I know that's, it's very complex, but I'm trying to kind of make it easy to understand.
I just have one question. How is the PPFCO different than different debt instruments?
Okay, so you could sell certificates of obligation and purchase it and do the same thing. In this particular case, because of the timing of the payment that has to be made before a price increase on the fire equipment, we don't have time to go through the publication process for a CO, even though we're going to do a CO starting in the next council meeting if the council moves forward with that. So typically, we would bundle all this together and just put it in with a CO. But because of the timing and a price increase that will happen, you know, if we don't do this now, we don't have time to wait for a CO. The other thing you could do potentially is a tax note. Tax note, they're all the same credit, whether it's a PPFCO, a tax note or a certificate of obligation, but you can only go seven years from the date of Attorney General approval with a tax note. This equipment lasts longer than that and we've been looking at a plan to go year after year for, you know, 10 years at a time and do this every year to replace vendor financing and continue with the upgrades of the fire equipment for the foreseeable future, meaning every year potentially from now on. And so for that reason, at least this year, we're proposing PPFCOs. If in another year, you happen to be doing a CO already, we would just include this with a CO if we had time to meet whatever requirements were of the, of the contract if we had time to meet whatever requirements were of the contract to purchase the fire equipment. So that's a great question, and that's the reason we're doing PPFCOs rather than one of the other ones.
And is there any risk of doing the PPFCO versus just waiting to do a normal CO? Are we netting the, I guess, the savings by doing this more than?
Yes. In this case, my understanding, and Laura can correct me. If we don't do this by the 30th, there's a $400,000 price increase on the apparatus that we're buying. The demand has apparently gone up with all the weather events that have gone on around the nation, hurricanes and fires. And so we're trying to make sure we get this done. That may not happen every year all the time, but right now, that's the situation we're in. So it's, that is far more than the difference in the cost of doing this versus waiting.
If we didn't have the deadline and you were comparing PPFCOs versus regular COs, what's the difference? Which one would you use?
If you were not selling COs for other projects that are not personal property, then we would use PPFCOs. If you're already selling COs to, if you will, minimize the cost that he was talking about, you would just throw it in. And when we do those, we can separate, well, 13 million goes 10 years. And 10 million of something else can go 20 years and something else can go 10. So we can make the debt match the assets that we're financing and just put it all into one CO. That would be something we would do under a different scenario. If we're not selling COs because the city doesn't have other improvements that it needs, we would then do PPFCOs.
Further questions on this, gentlemen? Go ahead, please, continue.
Okay, so we've run three scenarios. One of them is two years interest only and then level payments. The reason we ran two years interest only, the equipment's not going to be delivered for two years. So that's one scenario. The second scenario we did aggregate payments to be the same. And let me talk about that scenario. It's a little bit hard to understand. I don't know if you can see this. But beginning next year, we set debt service on these PPFCOs to be 2.9 million. And then you see the following year, it drops down to a million. And that million goes on for the foreseeable future. This supposes, we have equipment list that goes for 10 years of everything we're going to buy for entire 10-year period. This assumes that every year for the next 10 years, you're either going to lease, put in COs, or sell PPFCOs for fire equipment from now on every year. That's the way the equipment works. It is phased, as I understand it, I'm not an expert on that. But our firm has run numbers with all of the different every-year replacements that Laura got us from the Fire Department. So for this program, from now on, there would be $2.9 million for fire apparatus, either in the form of PPFCOs, COs, or leases if they ever come back to where their, their interest rate is equivalent to a, to a PPFCO, which could happen. The markets, they move, I mean, different credits. So that's the second one. And the third one is that we've targeted a tax rate on this particular program of eight cents, just for this program. And remind you, this has been going on, you know, for years. So it's not necessarily a new eight cents. So with that, what we're looking at doing, and at your February 11th meeting, if you authorize us to move ahead, is selling approximately 13,500,000 in PPFCOs on a competitive bid basis with your AAA credit rating and using that to fund this year's fire apparatus. And here's a schedule. If we do that, we go through here. I think you have issuing the actual PO later in this agenda. If you decide to do that, then we will have to move ahead with some way to pay for it, whether this or a lease. We will have to get a rating from Standard and Poor's. Then we will come back. If we need to, at a January 28th, to update on a financing plan. And then competitive bid the morning of February 11th. And then awarded at that council meeting, which will be the last council meeting in this building, as I understand. And then deliver on March 11th. These do have to be approved by the Attorney General, whereas a lease item does not. Be glad to answer any questions, make any clarification that I can.
I would love to get in the weeds. Can you go back, I think, two screens, those itemized? There you go. 13, 5 at the top of scenario three, all the way down to the 18 million at the bottom. These are debt issuances. Is that correct?
That is one debt issuance, principal and interest. And then you see that 2.6 million of the buyback.
Right.
We have a large principal payment due then because the contract, they're contractually obligated to buy it back at that amount. So we're trying to lower the debt service until that amount. But that's, so for that particular debt issuance, the principal and interest is $18 million.
So you're netting it out at the 15, 3 off to the side, assuming you get the buyback?
The buyback, yes. So the net payments.
My total debt service on borrowing the 13, 5, which, you know, brings about so many apparatus, so many trucks, so many needed things over the years, right? That costs me 15, 3.
That is correct.
And so we have the option of spending cash, let's say, we got to go spend 13, 5 and just spend the cash, buy the equipment. And we've got to take it out of a budget somewhere. Or we have the option of utilizing some of those expenditures that we would normally pay cash for in servicing this debt amount. And so Ms. Laura, I think, maybe try to direct back to you for a little bit of questioning on, yeah, previous meeting. We had alluded to 1.2 million that was existing in the Fire Department's budget. But then that runs their maintenance, right? Fleet maintenance and parts and mechanics.
So the 1.2 million in the fire operating budget currently, and that's coming from the operating side of your tax rate at this point, it's going to fund future replacement of that, of your existing fire trucks. And so we will start lowering that amount if council, if this council decides to go ahead and do a debt instrument or a lease instrument to get this fire apparatus. And then next year's council does, and the year after that, that 1.2 million will start going away. It will not be needed on the operating side anymore.
Just so everybody hears it, tell me the list of equipment that you're buying for the 13, 5?
Yes, we are looking at six engines and two ladders.
Okay, so eight fire trucks.
That's correct.
Okay. And that is the justified cost of 13, 5, which you're saying the 13, 5 would increase 400,000 or the 1.5 million dollar fire truck would go to 1.9?
The, no, the full eight apparatus, so the 13 and a half million would go up 400,000.
400,000.
That's my understanding from the manufacturer.
Okay, so in the option three scenario, which sure seems to be the way you're kind of leading and offers council the most latitude in the future, we could always pay for that amount differently if we needed to. Meaning, we could always pull cash out if we had it available, pay down. Is there any prepayment penalties? Do we have anything there, Stephen?
Well, yes, there are. We can, any time, these assume a standard 10-year call. Anytime you shorten that call, it raises the interest rate. Because the purchaser of the bonds, you know, they want it for at least 10 years for them to do all their credit analysis, everything to buy the bonds. We could shorten that probably to eight years, which we try to do anyway. We get, we look at the market. If we can get it shorter, we can. But if you start going shorter than eight years, you will pay a higher interest rate.
Okay, and you've got this on a 13-year? Because that's the life expectancy of the vehicle?
Yes, well, and along with the lead time for ordering, yes.
Okay. Counsel, as I'm trying to kind of go down through that, am I missing anything that you want to point out in looking at option three? Trying to give us the most latitude, but then also being willing to understand, we're going to have a budget discussion. That really, a lot of this is more appropriate in the budget discussion of, do you put it on the INS? Do you put it on the O and M? Well, we don't have the variables, the significant variables that we're going to have in that budget and know how to balance the entire organization. So assuming we had $2 million sitting, you know, over on the side there without increasing, let's say, the tax increase. Let's say we've just become more efficient, then would we be better to utilize this money in paying debt service than we would to be trying to pay cash and buying one apparatus every year? So I think from, you know, our chief in the back and kind of what AFD is leading us for, they want to be able to go ahead and place these in advance, have some sort of schedule that's more dependable, reliable for these apparatus that are coming. I think the only negative I'm really hearing is there be a prepayment penalty. So you're signing us up for the full 13, 5 on the front end before we really get to budget?
So a couple of things. There is actually a prepayment discount with the vendor, the manufacturer. If we pay, if we go ahead and order by and have them, if we order by the end of January and we have the money to them within 60 days after that, we're actually getting a discounted rate. I think on the question with Stephen is if we try to pay back the debt early, it would make the interest rate go up.
So can I get both of those numbers from you? Do you have them? Like, what's the discount in dollars for the purchase? And then also, Stephen, if you could guess what the prepayment penalty might be?
I might get, David Kuba to come up here to help me. I do know the price increase we're up against is the 400,000. I'm not sure if we were to wait, I don't even know if we can do anything beyond a prepayment. Oh, great.
Afternoon, Chief.
Good afternoon. We have our vendor here, Keith, that can walk you through a little bit of what that discount looks like.
Okay, yeah, if you can tell us a little bit more on that purchase.
Yes, sir. My name is Keith Gould. I'm with Safe Industries. We're the vendor for E1 fire apparatus for the state of Texas. So what we brought to you is a discount structure on not only the fire apparatus, but we're also proposing a 10-year extended warranty on these trucks as well as a 10-year PM schedule. So it's all encompassed in the pricing that you're seeing here. So it's not just on the fire apparatus. When they built the pricing program together, they have to price out the service side of it, then the warranty side of it. We also have to take into different considerations, the motor changes that are happening with different motors going in. So that causes your warranties to fluctuate. So it's a pretty extreme calculation formula in how they come up with that discounting. Roughly, what they were talking about, the price increase, every year in our industry, we've seen price increases. Same thing on garbage trucks, your automobiles that you're buying now. Historically, those are 5%, 7%. Since COVID, we've seen industry-wide, not just our company, but all the way across the industry, approximately 30 to 35% in that timeframe. It's mind-boggling to all of us. But we also know that we have increases coming, not counting if we have additional increases throughout the year, which have happened historically in the last two to three years based on raw goods, technologies, things of that sort. Not to mention if tariffs come into play, say, two months from now, six months from now, 12 months from now. So, you know, what we're looking at is 5%, but that's what we know to be true today. Additional tariffs and other increases on materials and goods could cause that to go up even further.
So we're locking these eight apparatus in potentially like in the next week or so? Prices cannot change?
It's, we would have to have an issuance of a PO. Now, we did extend a cancellation clause. So in the event that something happened, for say, the city could not procure funding, you would have 60 days in writing to cancel the order if something just completely cavitated and you couldn't do that. So by issuance of a PO, by the end of January, we can guarantee and lock these prices. Because we've already gotten extensions on these prices multiple times as we walk through, work through this finance situation.
No, no fine print in any of that from your manufacturers, meaning there's a tariff, there's a war, something happens, where they're coming back telling us you didn't lock that price in?
No, sir.
Okay. Questions, counsel?
I have a question. I'm not trying to be a smart aleck here. But my question is, why would I want to hire a middleman when maybe I could go borrow the money myself and do it? Is that what we're doing here?
No. No.
No?
No, we're, actually, if you do leasing, that's kind of the model that is set up to a certain extent, but it's just another type of financing. What we're doing, we're proposing is to do a PPFCO. So that would be the city would be taking out essentially a loan to directly buy from the manufacturer. So.
Okay, we're taking the loan from the manufacturer?
No, we are issuing debt that we will have various bidders. They will go out and they will say, we will, you know, purchase your debt for this interest rate. And then we will, it's going to be a competitive bid process. And most likely, we will go with the lowest interest rate from the bids that we receive on February 11th. And then we will bring that back to council. They will directly buy our debt. And then we will pay it back over the next 13 years to the lowest bidder. And then we'll take that money from that debt issuance and we will pay it directly to the manufacturer within the 60-day timeframe.
Why wouldn't we bid on ourself?
So you mean, then just pay cash?
Why wouldn't I carry my own debt?
And pay cash for it? Well, we do not have 13 and a half million dollars earmarked anywhere in the budget at this point for it.
How much could we borrow?
That is what we are doing with a PPFCO.
Yeah, that's what we're doing with somebody else, but we could do it ourselves, couldn't we?
Are you asking if we could take it from reserves or?
Possibly, or somewhere else.
So let me jump in here. So in the issuance of a bond for the debt, it's our bank. So, I mean, we're more or less selling the bond to the public and that's how we get the lower interest rates. So if we were to try to borrow money in any other way, it would cost us more, Mr. Adams. And then I think in the debt issuance piece, maybe what council member is trying to get to is, is there anything that we could go kind of direct source other than what we're already doing? And so just to clarify that.
I mean, I think in theory, you could go borrow from a bank. And I believe Laura even talked to some banks and this was not in their amount. It was too small or whatever. But I expect that some banks will be purchasers of your bonds as well as high-income individuals. That's typically who's buying on 13 years and in. The winning bidder will be a broker dealer like Raymond James or Bank of America or Wells Fargo. They will turn around and sell to multiple other investors.
Give us the interest rate, if you would, on this bond issuance versus like an average from the bank?
We ran these at 380 with, that has 25 basis points or 0.25 of cushion. So we'd probably be at.
Be about 3.5, 3.6?
Yes.
Is that right?
That's correct. Taxes in. That is correct. And then.
From the leasing models that we looked at with, and I've talked to several different groups, those interest rates were running anywhere from 4.75 up to over 7%. Yes.
So safe to assume you could have a leasing company, which would be the middleman. And Chief, that's not really where you were driving us, right? You were driving us more towards the apparatus replacement and getting something that's more consistent? Okay. And that would have been all the way up to 7% interest?
Yes, potentially. It just depends. There's a lot of different groups that are in leasing. And we've had a lot reach out to us and it's, it definitely varies.
Did you have a follow-up question, Counsel, Mr. Sherman?
Well, according, I'm pulling thoughts here, that in our budget, we have budget for fire equipment every year, correct?
We have a, an amount that they pay into a replacement fund to eventually replace. So it's about 1.2 million per year.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, about 1.2.
Yes, sir.
So if you look at this scenario here, is that, could we not apply that budgeted item in the scenario, one of these scenarios?
We absolutely could. That would be something that we could discuss at the upcoming budget. We could look at taking a portion of that and allocating it potentially over. But that 1.2 million covers more than just this eight fire apparatus. So we're talking fire engines and fire ladder trucks through this discussion. There's also grass rigs that they have. There are command units and other equipment that they facilitate as well through the Fire Department.
Counsel, Mr. Sherman, you are correct. Yes, I mean, during the budget season, it's me over here, sorry. Yeah, voice off in the distance and stuff. But yeah, you are correct. During the budget season, the city council at the time will be able to identify whether they want to utilize part of that 1.2 or some other source to pay this debt. Your first payment will not take place until this fall or next spring.
It'll take place, I don't know that we, February of 2026. So it'll be in the next budget cycle.
Yeah, so there will not be an expense this fiscal year. All bonds, you usually have two payments. One is principal interest and another is interest, but it happens twice a year. So this will not occur till about February 2026.
Well, what I'm looking at is, I'm trying to look out for our taxpayers. And if we got budgeted items like we do here, I mean, I'm not saying this is a bad deal. I'm saying it's something that if we vote on this, we need to look at for budgeting next year completely. Because I think at the end of the day, we could save ourself a lot of money on borrowed money instead of borrowing it or financing a lot of it ourself. But we got to get those data to where we can break it down from the fire, how many times am I going to have to make this spend here? Is it ever five years, ever 10 years or? That's something I would like to know because of.
We're going to pull a PDF, and this was emailed out to council. And this, this shows the next 14 years of needs. And what we're anticipating is, and please note, and I apologize, I know it's a little small on here, but on the, in the debt issuance column, that could easily be called. small on here, but on the, in the debt issuance column, that could easily be called the cash payment column. You know, this is the next 14 years of needs from, for fire apparatus in order to fully replace all the existing equipment we have and get it on a consistent 10-year rotating cycle. And you'll see there that this is one of the larger years of needs, but it does kind of stagger. We've got two more years coming up, a couple of years without, and then pretty much half solid years of requests going forward. And, you know, I think the 13.5 million, we would have to get very creative in how we pull that out of our existing budget. I don't know that we could cover every single year going forward in just your regular operating budget.
That's the issue, is if we have 1.2, but as you go year to year to year, you're adding six engines, three engines, four engines, one, one. Eventually, you're not going to have enough funding there existing to do that. So what we're trying to do here is, we're trying to start a new program, which we're hoping future councils will follow suit, to which we start revolving a bond program where we are replacing equipment regularly, not getting 20, 25 years and then suddenly a big hit and we do that. So this is the first bond of many bonds, and I say small, this is the first year, 35, you see a 4.7 bond, 6.6 bond, nothing, nothing, 1.9. And then this could change as needs arise, but we're trying to get the city of Amarillo and future councils starting a new, better path of replacing equipment on a regular basis.
I agree with everything that's here, except what I disagree with is 13.5 million, 4.7, 6.6, 0, 0, 1.9. Why can't we average that out? We're working on averages instead of having one year at 31.53 million, the next year's 12.72 million. To me, if we took the monies and averaged, wouldn't we be better off? I mean, I'm not the brightest bulb in the pack, but I try to think anyway.
Yes, sir. What I looked at was I set everything up on a strict replacement schedule, 15 years, take our existing fleet, which is 29 total apparatus between our engines and our ladders, and I just set up something to get a good forecast set up. I knew that this would get us in the right direction, but there could be some wiggle room based on what we had. So everything we currently have, we're going to keep it and get all we can out of it for 15 years while we start implementing a 10-year rotation on this, on another way of purchasing our vehicles.
I mean, I want to...
That's really why it's a little bit scattered.
Yeah, I'm not against rotation, but what I'm saying, if we take an average, let's say we pay 6 million year one, 6 million year two, 6 million year three, we're building our bank up as we go. That way, by the time I get to 2035, I may have 31.53 million to make that payment. I don't know.
Yeah.
But that's something we need to sit down and actually put to the leather to the floor here and figure it out.
Again, part of this is, obviously, we have six engines and two ladders we have to replace today, and those cost 13.5. The vendor, they need payment within 60 days, and so we don't have the ability to decrease payment for six and six and six. And I think what you're getting at is, we kind of did in scenario two, where we tried to do a level, average out the rates for 10 years with scenario two, at 1.84 down for 10 years. So that in a sense is kind of what I think you're talking about, is trying to average out the debt payments through a scenario where you have a level payment.
I'm willing to vote today to give y'all what you want. If I have a commitment before budget next year, we have this broke down closer, better, know where we're at.
Absolutely.
I mean, I'm willing to vote, but, I mean, the thing is, where are we at, four days before we got to do this, or two days, or whatever it is? I, you know, I like these discussions, but I really like this discussion back in budget time.
Correct, yeah, we would definitely bring this back. We will, yeah, the council will definitely be discussing about how they wish to make that payment in budget season, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. I think the average would be around 6 million, if I'm looking at that. You've got 14 payments there, times six to get to 100 million. Is that roughly where we're looking? So for council, just consideration, I think we could move forward with the support for the debt issuance, knowing that come, really September, but July, when there's budget discussions, you're going to need to go and find $6 million cash and put yourself on a payment schedule of 6 million every year of just paying into kind of an account that's going to be able to go out and purchase, or you're looking at debt issuance and signing up for that, and then you have a debt service payment that is going to cost that level of interest, which we wouldn't avoid anyway. But you're, I think maybe where Councilman Sherman's coming from is the ramp-up where we're paying 700, 700, 1.5, and then there's a larger lump sum payment, kind of balloon style at the end. Could we help future councils by averaging that out all the way across the board and working within our given budget to locate those monies?
So the balloon payment is, at the end, is structured to assume that we are going to sell that apparatus back to the manufacturer. We have a guaranteed buyback amount from them for that apparatus, or we could go out on the open market and sell it ourselves, and that would be used to make that final payment or to offset that final payment. So it's still trying to average it out, and we do not assume that the city's going to directly spend our cash to make that final balloon payment.
Sure. I agree. I understand where you're coming from. Also, understand where Tom's coming from, I think. So the variables that we have in front of us, I would like to isolate those to, the one thing that's not a variable is the need for the equipment. And the issue of no issuance and not moving forward puts us further behind the eight ball on that. And so we've done an excellent job of finding tens of millions of dollars in our existing budget and prioritizing those for public safety. I feel confident that we can get that done again this year in making this happen. So what I'm hearing is overall, you know, we understand the need. I think we want to make sure we understand the numbers and the values and how we structure the debt.
Yes, and again, today, what we're looking for is just direction from council. One, do you want us to come back with a debt issuance? We could come back with a lease potentially, or, you know, do you want us just to back off at this point and not look at making an order? I mean, those are the options. And if you're looking to do a debt issuance, we really would just like you all to weigh in on if scenario one, two, or three is what your preference is. It's a little easier to see it on the screen here, and again, we just are showing a potential tax rate impact, but on scenario two, the annual debt service needed is 2.95 million annually for like the next 10 years. So it goes up in year one, and then assuming we need all of this equipment for the next 10 years, it will stay at that level amount. Where scenario three, it kind of ramps up, and then as it goes up higher, the need is higher, up to more, a little over 4 million annually. That is also when we have some debt rolling off that will be fully paid off for other things that that money then could be used instead to pay for this annual debt service.
Would council be comfortable in moving forward with putting forward this debt issuance underneath the INS side, knowing that we would be diligent in locating as much monies as we can under the existing O&M budget? Because the big concern here is, is, well, we're just going to throw it off on the borrower side, and then we're going to keep the revenues coming in that we already have, and maybe we'll be long, you know, because we could plan for whatever else we have in a future cost increase. And so I'd rather be more conservative on that and try to balance that INS side with as much of the existing tax revenue as possible.
And we can certainly do that. Council, this summer, will be setting how they want that tax rate to look, and we can absolutely make sure that that, if that's the intention of council, that that's what we bring forward, and then they'll make the final decision.
Anything further on this one, gentlemen?
Just one quick question. Take scenario two, for example, what would be the implication on our citizens' tax bill?
Yes. So that's the one where we basically go up to a level amount for the next 10 years, and on that one, it would be, we're estimating about 1.84 pennies on the tax rate. That translates to an average assessed value of a residential property in Amarillo is around 200,000, I just used 200,000 for round math. That would be approximately $36 per year or $3 per month.
And then are you recommending scenario three or scenario two? Which, what's y'all's recommendation on that?
So we, I think either one, unless Stephen wants to weigh in, I think we're good with either one for just the single debt issuance. The net debt service on scenario two is about maybe 600,000 less than scenario three in total for principles and principal and interest. But when you look at this scenario here, and it's in very small words down there, scenario two, for the 14-year, paying all of it all the way out on debt issuances, it comes to total principal and interest of 112.78 million, and scenario three is 113.24 million. So I think that, you know, we certainly, I think either scenario two or three would be reasonable. It's really which direction council wants to go. Scenario two is slightly cheaper because you're paying more principal upfront, and so it lowers the amount of interest you pay slightly.
No, that's exactly correct. Councilman Simpson, I saw you.
No, well, I do like, I do like the option of being able to look at this on the INS side and the operations and maintenance, because any way we can mitigate the INS side on operations and maintenance, I think is beneficial. Also, you know, we are limited each year on how much we can take on the operations and maintenance increase. And while we want to keep it low, if we lowered on the O&M side but raised it all on the INS side, you're losing ground, you know, down the road, because every year, we don't take full advantage and we don't, but the government is, the Texas legislature has limited us to 3.5%, which is some money, but not a great amount of money. But each year, if we continue not to do that, then we're going to be losing more and more money. So I think looking at balancing this on the INS side and the operations, as much of it as we can on O&M, I think would be a good solution to fund this, get it going, and also be as fair as we can to the taxpayers.
Anything further?
Do you have a recommendation on scenario two or three that you would like? Because we will structure it that way and take bids on the debt being structured that way. So we need some guidance. Yes.
Can you go back to the other slide?
Yes. Stephanie, can you flip us back? Okay. Are you talking this one here?
Yeah.
So what scenario two does is it brings the payment for this aggregate program of all those years to 2.9 million year one, and it leaves it there for the entire program. That's what scenario two does. Whereas scenario three, we target a total INS tax rate, not only this program, and this assumes it's all on the INS side, which may or may not be a correct assumption, right? And your existing debt that is also paid from the INS side and try to lower the entire In my view, you get the most flexibility with scenario two.
Right.
Because you have more money that you can choose to move back and forth between the two separate tax rates. And you've hit that highest mark year one that is going to continue throughout this program for the next, you know, 14 years.
Assuming that we can stick with this program.
Assuming, correct. A lot of assumptions. And we also think we have really low assumptions in our models with your assessed valuation growth, too. We have 25 basis points of interest rate cushion, so we think these are pretty conservative assumptions.
Yeah.
That can change by February 11th, but for now.
Yeah. I think option two is good. Okay. Option. Councilman Craft, what are your thoughts?
I mean, I know we only have control over this coming budget year as far as debt as we issue it. I mean, I would, I like scenario two for long-term if future councils stick with that plan. As far as saving money, it looks like, if I'm reading that right, saving money would be scenario three, right?
I believe the lowest is scenario two.
Scenario two was the lowest one overall.
600,000 different.
So on just this, on this, it's, the debt service after the buyback is 14,750 versus 15,347. And I think Laura had it for the entire 10 years up there, a pretty significant amount.
Okay.
Half a million? Okay, half a million.
Yep. Scenario two's fine.
Okay. Councilman Sherman?
What we're talking about here is actually raising the taxes to our citizens, correct?
Not necessarily. That will be for council to decide this summer at budget.
So that, if we go back to budget and redo, okay, we take that debt away?
We absolutely could if council chooses to do that, yes. So council can choose whether they want to capture the annual debt service payment on the O&M side of the rate or on the INS side, which would essentially cause a tax increase, or they could
Okay.
lower the O&M side and take it on the INS.
Give the scenario, scenario two, we cash fund the 2.9 million out of working budget, and we pull the 1 million plus out of the 1.2 if you wanted to just be flat within the giving department budget. Like, that is an option, right?
That is an option, yes, sir.
That would have no debt increase on the INS side to the taxpayer.
That's correct.
That's working all within your existing revenues.
Yes, that is an option.
So, Councilman, you have that as an option. I don't think anybody's recommending that.
Okay.
But obviously, I think they are pushing, staff is pushing for, well, make that decision later when you have fewer variables. But yeah, I mean, it leaves you the option when you get to the next budget.
Okay, I would go with two.
Okay. Councilman? Two. Okay. Staff have what they need?
Yes, that gives us what we need. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. We'll look forward to getting that back and taking care of those.
I'm sorry I dragged that conversation on, too.
No, you're great, and we will have this same group back on February 11th, and we hope to bring good news of low interest rates from the bids, but we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Good to meet a couple of you, and thank you for coming back. Yeah, appreciate you. I'm going to go ahead and move our recess up. Instead of trying to catch this next one, let's take a 10-minute, 15-minute? We'll say 10, it'll be more like 15, we'll see you back here. Thank you.
Back to our business meeting. Thank you for all of the discussion on item 7E. I feel confident we'll make a good decision there. We're going to move forward to item 7F, the Buc-E's donation. Who do we have that is bringing that one forward? I know Andrew Freeman was here, but he's not here today and he had led on this one last. Grayson, what do you got?
Thanks, Stephanie is going to assist us with this. Is that correct, Stephanie?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Well, I will try to assist then. So, I think the council, I think you've been given a binder at your desk. I think we've been collecting requests for the Buc-E's donation. Our staff have been compiling that for you. We've received some directly, you've received some and passed them on to us. And so I think today's goal is to discuss what you would like to see going forward and bring back as an action item. I think it kind of decides either some parameters. Are you going to pull from a hat? Are you going to pick each one, bring your top one? Are you going to do some kind of other process and go from there? So, that's kind of the goal for today is a discussion on how you want to identify who will get the funds. Yes?
So, before we jump into the discussion on the very well-deserved serving entities around town, let me address Mr. Fisher's concern. So, Mr. McWilliams, can you give us any legal opinion as to it relates? This is a term in an agreement and we've been given this money and council is just kind of the innocent messenger here, I think.
Well, first of all, you haven't been given any money. This is a donation from a private for-profit corporation to a charitable benevolent.
So, the money will be given directly from Buc-E's to the nonprofit?
All you're doing, all the agreement allows for is for you to give them direction. They wouldn't even have to ask you. They could just give it to them if they wanted to.
Right.
So, it is a donation. That's what it says, a donation from them to some other corporation. The money never comes to the city at all.
Do we have any backup on how this came about to be part of the term?
It was just, as far as I know, it was just, it was something that Buc-E's just wanted to offer. Andrew would probably have been better to.
Is this normal for Buc-E's when they go into a community to do something that is a real good thing?
It is, from what I understand, yes, Buc-E's does do this. Typically, what they've had in the past is they do it over a matter of years. In this situation, they asked for it upfront and that way they don't have to monitor it for several years. This is a normal thing we see in 380s across the state. Now, I won't say every 380, but it's not uncommon for a city council to request that entity who's coming to our community requesting incentives to then turn around and provide some incentive back to the community itself. It's not an unusual thing.
Okay. So, Mr. McWilliams, is there anything that would limit us legally in giving guidance to Buc-E's, our preference as five different council members as to whether we split the money out over five entities or put it all to one as a recommendation to them?
Not at all.
They can take it or leave it, correct?
That's correct. That is absolutely correct.
Okay. Any other concerns on the legal side with this term?
No concerns.
Council, do I have any concerns from you guys as to the legality or the way that we could do this in the most upfront, forward-facing way so that it doesn't have any appearance of anything other than what its intention is, is for it to be a donation from one private business into the community?
I mean, I don't have an issue with it. I was just more curious as to, I have an idea of how to split it out. It may be different than everybody else, but I don't know kind of where we're going to land on that.
Okay.
If that's part of the recommendation for Buc-E's.
Well, now, where did you get? So, I mean, my thinking is it would be great to impact as many people as we can. Some, you know, some organizations, we have so many worthy organizations and I appreciate the staff putting this together on everybody that had either contacted council or mayor or staff as far as requesting the donations and some are here today. I don't see anywhere where it says one organization. And I'll be honest, I mean, I don't want to sit up here and dictate who this is going to go to because I think there's so many good organizations. I think it puts us in a really weird position when we've got the benevolence of Buc-E's, which is great. We have $275,000 to give away or that they're going to give away, but then we're going to dictate where it goes or make a request of where it goes. That puts us in a tough position because there's so many good organizations, charitable organizations that do so many good things for the community. It's hard to weigh those out. So, I mean, I'm not loving this position. I'll just tell you that because there's, even somebody that may not have contacted us, you know, is a very worthy organization, but yet they're bypassed on this money. And I think it puts us in a bad situation. So, I would love to hear others' input into how we can do this. Like you said, divide it up, divide it by 20, divide it by 25, whatever.
Councilman?
Well, I agree because it's, you know, it's a lot of money. And if you've ever been on a nonprofit board of all kinds, you know what a difference even $25,000 can make. And I think we want to do this in a way that not only reaches the goals of what Buc-E's wants to accomplish, but also to have an impact in the area that we think needs to have an impact and to be able to do that where it's making a meaningful difference. I've asked several people kind of in the nonprofit world, okay, when you have this type of situation, well, how do you handle it? You know, when you're with a foundation or organization or that type of thing. And, you know, one suggestion I got was from somebody who's been the president of a couple of foundations and dealt with this. And, you know, for a foundation, this would be generally 5,000 to 25,000. She kind of termed it smaller grants, although this is big money for, would be big money for a lot of people. You know, her recommendation is, you know, to A, kind of determine a criteria, a broad criteria of what you want to accomplish. You know, is there something specifically that we want to do that would say this is how we're looking to accomplish it? Is it for basic needs? Is it for, you know, parks and recreation? You know, is it that type of thing? But to give any guidance that we can, but to consider perhaps instead of us just sitting up here deciding, you know, whether each of us might want to nominate a couple of members of the community that maybe have background in the community, know about the community, to work through the possibility of making the recommendations to us. And instead of us deciding, well, this is what I like because I like it, that we have more, you know, community buy-in and community input. It would take a little bit of time. I think we'd have to, you know, come up in broad generalization of what the parameters would be, probably put something out that allows people to submit the same information. And also it gives, you know, everyone at least a chance to learn that this is available and to be able to apply for it. And then, you know, instead of us determining, get the citizens to be involved that we think could really do a good job on this and to provide recommendations for us. Obviously, I guess we, it comes from the city council. I guess we could change, but nonetheless, I think those recommendations, but I think, you know, trying to get people in the community to really look through this. But I do think we'd have to provide them a little bit of guidance.
So, I need to break that down for a second and then we'll move on to other discussion on this topic. You're recommending that council would put together a subcommittee of citizens that then would bring back a recommendation to council that council would then adopt and recommend to Buc-E's, to which Buc-E's could take or not take the recommendation. And then the Buc-E's check would go from the Buc-E's entity to that one or more entities.
I'm not recommending it necessarily. I'm just saying that's an option.
Okay. So, that's just one option that you're putting out as a consideration?
Correct.
Okay. I think I got that one. Councilman?
I, I really think we need to make that decision. We were elected. Buc-E's reached out to the council for us to do that. I think we need to make those recommendations by us going to a subcommittee. I'm putting a subcommittee in the same place I'm at today. Not necessarily that I want to make, pick this one or that one, but I'm asking somebody else to do the thing I don't want to do. So, I think that comes back to us.
Okay. I understand where you're coming from. Councilman?
I mean, just in the back of my head was similar with Don making a big, as much of an impact as we can. My recommendation was five nonprofits per council member split out, you know, $11,000 each and you hit 25 nonprofits. I mean, it's spread the wealth, really.
Okay. So, you're saying go ahead and make a recommendation back to Buc-E's, you know, today if you can get through the discussion with something that, and I guess I'm not sure why we're voting on it. So, like, I don't think I have an action item to bring back. I think what I have is a term in an agreement where they've saddled us with some need that they feel is beneficial because they don't know the community. And so, like, yeah, it may put us in a hard spot, but it is a spot where you volunteered to sit in a hard spot sometimes. And so, yours is spread the wealth. Councilman Tips, what is yours?
I would agree. I think spread it, just my, again, I would say spread it instead of going all to one, just impact as many as we could.
Okay.
Now, how we get there? Great question.
Well.
I will add, I mean, just as a matter of what we have done before, I don't think asking for community advice is something that we have not looked at before. We do it every day through boards and commissions. And also when we were looking at the charter, we appointed citizens from this community that we thought could bring value to this. Obviously, at the end of the day, you know, council is, they've given the authority to council, but we, and we had the final say, we're not advocating it. But I'd like to have more community input in this than just people calling us or doing it. And that would be my preference, but that's just my preference.
How much community input have you gotten in the last couple of weeks? I mean, I've got emails every day. I've gotten phone calls every day.
I've got, I've got the list here. You know, more than a dozen specific community requests. You know, if I were to do this, I do think, again, I just think we need to look at some parameters in what we're doing. You know, if everybody wants to spend the time to call all of these themselves to determine it, but I think, I think it would be pretty easy to get a group of citizens to be able to help us work through this and it just not be our decision only, but using the resources of the people and the citizens. Because we always talk about the citizens and I think this is a good opportunity to provide community input.
I agree. I meet with the citizens every two weeks and they come and tell me a lot of things. And they tell me a lot of time, we need to step up and do our job. And that's where I'm coming from.
Okay.
I'm going to concur with Sherlin. I don't feel like it would be anything that I would ask anyone that I liked to serve on that subcommittee. There may be some political combatants that I would like to nominate for that. However, I wouldn't do that to them either. So, you might be one of them.
Well, you've already written a $25,000 check, I heard earlier, so that might be, you know.
Any time you want transparency.
I know you are. Rules for everyone. I love it. Okay. So, you know, the only lesson that I've learned in this is when you have, when you're put in a position like this, usually good leadership requires some sort of decisive action and that people feel more let down, more frustrated with a lack of good direction and a lack of action. And so, I feel like you take the gift, you receive it as a gift, and then you disseminate it, disperse it, you get the money out of your hands. You don't tie it up in further delay because I think that allows for people that continue to work towards like consideration or please, please, I feel like they feel more, more let down. So, I would say, I don't necessarily have a problem with the 11 or, you know, the 25 nonprofits. Well, I mean, you're saying you go 11,000. I do believe we let some people believe in the last meeting that we were going to go ahead and disperse this up into $55,000 chunks. So, I think what we would be doing is recalling that discussion, saying, you know, we've reconsidered that. So, I know I have one entity that I feel like they are probably very, very much represented by like the Buc-E's family and Buc-E's would be honored to have their logo, you know, sitting right next to them. That entity is Kids, Inc. I think it does a ton for our community and something that we don't have here. We all travel and go to games all over and we complain about it. And so, I thought that that would be good. So, I mean, like, I was intending on giving the full 55 to Kids, Inc. And I know that that is a worthwhile project out there and it'll make a small drop in their big bucket, but it would be my recommendation based on if I was Buc-E's, who would I want to be investing in? And so, I like that. I would recant that, pull that back because now I'm feeling like we as a body, which we can, take different direction, would be looking at spreading the wealth. So, I would, I would want to see, do you guys who are thinking maybe we go to 11,000, do you feel like we've got some level of expectation at the 55?
Well, what if each council member had 55 to give how they see fit? I mean, so that equals a 275. If you want to give 55 to Kids, Inc., you can give 55 to Kids, Inc. If I want to give 22 to one and then 11 dispersed among three others, I could do that. But we could do that. That way, we take the leadership.
That's a great example of why Don Tips will make a great mayor of this town one day. So, I think that's, that's good. So, I like that idea. Councilman Craft, that gives you some latitude and kind of your autonomy?
Yeah, I mean, I never felt like we had set in stone about the 55,000. So, as far as giving it to one organization.
Okay. Councilman? Okay. I'm going to try to lead through this in the way of I feel like the more we delay this and talk it out and bring it back, the harder this can become. So, I would like to see, do you guys have five? And do you have a couple that you're, or do you like the five? Okay. Would you be prepared to make a recommendation today?
No, of who we would give the money to?
Correct.
No.
Okay. So, Mr. City Manager, could you take direction from those that are ready here today? That way, this comes off of the dais. It goes back to you individually to work with Councilmember Simpson in order to wait on that one recommendation from him and then you could have staff deliver that to Buc-E's.
Yeah, I believe what I'm hearing is that each of the five will communicate with me either today or in the near future with your one, two, three, up to five, whatever you're thinking. And then I will then compile that and give to Buc-E's. Then I can report back to you the amounts and who all, what was all recommended.
Concerns on that, council?
And just to be, just to be clear, the, Don, you said how much is given to whom is left up to each council member?
Well, I mean, I think that if we're going to do it that way, say 55, each council member is responsible for allocating $55,000, however they see fit, to one organization, five, whatever they want to do. They do 11, I guess, at 5,000 apiece. Whatever they want to do, they could do. But each one's allocated, you've got 55 to do it.
And then, once again, to go to Mr. Fisher's point, I think that this could look a way that it wasn't intended to if it comes from council. So, the money doesn't come through the city. These are just recommendations. So, I, as an example, would recommend that all $55,000 go to Kids, Inc. I think that that's a worthy cause and aligns with Buc-E's family and vision. And so, then you would take that along with the others. And then I would ask that council members would contact those entities to let them know what to expect. And then if you're not contacted by a council member, then you would, you would be assured that, you know, you didn't make the list and that we greatly appreciate all you do for our community and we'd love to have millions of dollars to give away. We don't. So, I would like to leave that there, but I'll ask if council has any further discussion.
Is there a deadline we'd want to set to have this wrapped up?
How much time would you need to be comfortable?
Well, since I'm about to head to North Carolina for my grandson that was just born about an hour ago.
Congratulations.
I might be out of pocket for a couple of weeks, but I could work on it. I mean, I'd like to have it back for the, you know, as quickly as possible, but I'll do it as quick as possible. I don't want to hold it up.
Okay.
I think let's get it done and get it wrapped up and so everybody knows that, so.
Okay. I feel like we could probably get this moving so that they could make those donations.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Path, you need anything further on item 7F, sir? Okay. I would state on the record, you know, we run a pretty, not casual, but family-friendly meeting and we're not trying to put on airs of being too professional. We're also not ever trying to make light of anything. The significance of a $275,000 donation into our community is greatly appreciated by our new partner out there that is increasing other entities' business revenues by 12% to 18% around it. And so, those are monies that weren't stopping off of the highway before that we're seeing and that we can actually track. So, we're not taking somebody from the north side of I-40 and, you know, directing them to the south side. We are tracking the numbers to see the economic impact of that 380 agreement provided through the city. Moving on to item 7G, draft resolution for city council on council protocols. Mr. Path, I believe you're going to run that one.
Mayor, if I could have one request, just because I want to do this, is, and I think all of council may have received this today. It was a request from George Hyde of Hyde Kelly who wrote a letter and requested that the mayor read this letter at the meeting before our conversations as we look into this. So, what I would like to do is ask the mayor to honor that request of George Hyde, just to get this on the record. And then afterwards, I'd just like to have a minute to say a few things about that.
Sure.
I did ask Stephanie, just so if anybody wants to read along, we do, she has a copy of it and if we want to share that so, you know, people can read the letter along as you're reading it.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
This is confidential between my lawyer and me.
No. He said he wanted the public to read it.
Let me finish. Don't interrupt.
Okay.
My question is, he represents us, we voted on it in June 25th, we voted it through the budget. He is my lawyer. By him being my lawyer, that is attorney and client privilege.
Well, not according to him because when he sent the request today.
We've got a lawyer down here. Let's see what he says.
So, he said, well, when he sent the request today, he actually encouraged this may be made public. So, if it is attorney-client privilege, he just violated your attorney-client privilege by saying it's, but well, by releasing it to the public and encouraging people to release it to the public. It's a public document.
Why? How is that a public document? Who is violating the privacy?
Because it's, well, I think it's George Hyde, but I would just want, in respect with George.
I saw it on social media. I would like to know that was sent to us and the city. So, somebody slipped it to the media.
Well, what's, what's wrong with that? He wanted it to get out. He asked us, he asked it to get out. I sent it to people, I sure did.
Okay.
Because I wanted to get their opinion.
We have a leak on this dais, less than it should.
Oh, no? You have a leak?
Yes, sir.
Read the email that you sent.
This was sent to the council and the city.
It's a public document.
Less, less.
It's a public document.
Hold on. It's not a public. Brian, I want a ruling.
Councilmember Craft, you were asking Brian for a question. Can I ask Councilmember Craft what your question is?
No, my question was, since the discussion items, draft resolution for city council, legal council protocols, I didn't know that the document that was placed had anything to do with that.
It has, it has to do with that item and another item more particularly that's on, that's on the agenda for action. So, I mean, you could talk about it if you wanted to.
If we want to.
Yes, yes.
I place an objection.
Can I get, can I get a legal opinion from you on, does this violate attorney-client privilege since council as a body is Hyde Kelly's client? And we have one in the body at least that has said not appropriate for discussion here today, the letter that he sent.
The privilege is held by council as a body. If, if the matter is confidential, attorney-client privileged information, then only the council can waive that privilege, the council as a body. Does that answer your question?
It does. I think that's very good legal advisement. So, thank you for that. Council, I would ask for a consensus here. I believe I have one that would like to release it and read it here today, sir. I believe I have one that is wanting not to read this. I need to know where you would see. I need to know where you would sit, Councilmember Kraft?
I mean, I don't intend to release it. No, I don't.
Okay. Councilmember Tips?
Well, I'm looking at the email here and it, the document is titled, "Public Statement From George Hyde." So, I would say if it needs to be made, he requested that it be made public, or he titled it, "Public Statement." So, I think that that is his, so I'm fine if it's read out loud.
Okay. Councilmember Sherlin, if I could engage with you in this, and I haven't had an opportunity because we don't break the Open Meetings Act to discuss this letter with you, I don't know that you feel like it's your attorney-client privilege that's being violated. I would say that in reading this, I think it's very pointed to maybe his relationship with Councilmember Simpson, not necessarily you individually. And I feel like it would be more difficult to explain to the media and our public why we chose not to read it aloud when it's available and it's already been given to the media. So, I would prefer not to handle on-camera media after this meeting trying to explain why we voted against sharing it when it's already been shared. So, you may have a point that this is attorney-client privilege information?
Well, if you look at most of Hyde's emails, on the bottom, they say they are to the person intended.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? That's what they say.
I do know that he and I discussed this and he was, he is comfortable with allowing me to read it.
Okay. If he's comfortable, I'm comfortable, because I'm not protecting myself at all. I'm not brought up in there, I don't think. Go ahead.
Now, and so, can we get that put up, Ms. Stephanie? So, I think that per Councilmember Simpson's request to go ahead and read this previous to Grayson's protocols, Mr. Path, I apologize that we are doing, conducting some family business before you get to do your proper presentation.
Your main...
It's all going to run together, we'll work this out in the end. And though it may not be as professional in the presentation as I had hoped, I do want to honor Councilmember Simpson's request, so I'll read aloud. Attention, alteration of special counsel engagement unwise. Mayor and City Council, I found myself surprised and mystified when I learned for the first time, second-hand, that Councilmember Simpson was seeking to end our engagement with the City of Amarillo. I was disappointed that, without even a conversation he devoted all the time and effort to concoct a scheme to disarm the rest of City Council, from what I believe, from the statements of others, it's a most valued asset. Its own highly qualified and experienced attorney. When a person with more than 30 years of business and leadership experience who represents himself as an expert on career ownership coaching, does not even provide the most basic courtesy such as a phone call to discuss something before considering a death penalty sanction, there has to be an ulterior motive in play. Arguing the relationship should end based on transparency and stewardship is fraud on itself. Mr. Simpson is not a lawyer and apparently did not seek the legal advice of anyone before he elected to challenge the attorney-client relationship with an attorney like me, who maintains the relationship with those who are willing to, willing and interested in abiding by their oath of office. Each of the City of Amarillo elected officials took an oath in front of God and hundreds of thousands of Amarillo residents to faithfully execute the duties of the office and will to the best of my ability to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States of this state. So, help me, God. One cannot fulfill their oath without the highest quality of legal advice available to guide them as to what they are to preserve, protect, and defend. That is the role I play for this council. If they have an initiative or a policy they want to explore, I can provide the legal advice needed to ensure that before something takes place on the agenda, it is legally sound and the legal risks and benefits of proposing such action or legislation is fully understood by the City Council member, so that the cost of the time of the entire City Council, city staff, and others that attend the City Council meeting is not wasted. And I am confident that the cost of all those elected and appointed officials, city staff, and citizens who participate in local government is likely over 20 times such the cost that pays to my firm to have the items vetted before they go to council. So much for stewardship of the people's tax dollar if done without vetting. The communications between one's attorney and client are confidential as a matter of law. If we place confidential information in our invoices and a request is made for those invoices pursuant to the TPIA, we would have to examine the invoices, identify the confidential portions, prepare legal docs to send to the Attorney General, wait 45 business days, and then find out what we can and cannot release per the letter ruling. This, I would argue, is not transparent. Instead, we prepare our invoices so that they may be released immediately to the public by leaving the confidential information out. It does not, it does not just reduce our cost, it reduces the workload on the City Secretary, City Manager, City Attorney, and others involved in making information available to the public. If you want to know more about what all your colleagues are doing, I'm assuming this is directed to Councilman Simpson, through legal invoices, it appears that you desire to violate the prohibition of the series of communications law found in the Texas Open Meetings Act by reading our invoices. I will not knowingly be an accessory to or place any City Council member at risk of criminal prosecution through any act or deed I perform as your attorney. Doing so would violate the law and their oath of office. The only protocol that is simple and works is the one found in the original resolution engaging our services, it simply reads, Section 2 of that resolution, that Hyde Kelly LLP shall report to, shall report to and be directed by only the City Council, and in the period the City Council is not convened, the mayor, or in his absence, the mayor pro tem as appropriate, shall provide any necessary direction and oversee the engagement until the next City Council meeting, wherein any direction may be provided by the entire City Council. Y'all hang in there with me, we're about halfway done. How many times have you taken advantage of this protocol and requested a City Council meeting discussion of the work assigned to our firm? How many times has any City Council member found it necessary to follow your approved protocol unanimously approved by the City Council to provide any necessary direction or oversee the engagement in any exec session as provided by existing protocol? How many times have you simply gone to your fellow elected official and asked them what legal services they've requested? Isn't it none? Wouldn't that be the easiest, quickest, and most cost-effective way to stay informed? When you point your finger at me, you have four pointing back at you. You have had the tools needed to understand what others are doing when it is proper to have those conversations in exec session, in a properly-called meeting conducted in accordance with applicable law. The fact that you have not used the tools that have been laid out in front of you that would easily achieve the result desired is another piece of evidence that transparency and stewardship is not why you are weaponizing and challenging the otherwise successful relationship. Have you forgotten that through my advice to City Council during the last budget work, the mayor and City Councilman Kraft was able to fund approximately $2 million and needed raises for city employees? That was my work in action. Have you forgotten from reading the invoices and approving it prior to council meetings, where I was tasked with the Nurse Navigator project by Councilman Kraft, out of the holding pattern that it had been in for months with City Legal? And get the project done. Now, with Nurse Navigator with my help, you have reduced the workload of your EMS teams, better protected their lives, so they're not running Code 3 and end up in an accident on a call that is now handled by Nurse Navigator. And the program reduces the burden on existing EMS as well as reduces the burden to grow the ranks of EMS, which reduces the burden on the very tax dollars you are stewarding. So, in the first six months, I helped find millions of dollars used to help the city staff get paid and pushed through a program that is cost-effective, protects first responders, saves lives. Now, you want to call it quits. What is the real reason? Finally, why have you singled my law firm out? You know from the budget you approved and the protocol, city manager recently proposed in the following law firms, in addition to mine, provided special counsel services to the city and other areas. Why are you not questioning those costs? How are you being transparent and a good steward of public tax dollars when you focus on 188K when over 1 million is pouring out of the city attorney's office year after year? And those other firms are listed below if you care to read those. I'm not challenging the use, just being transparent and bringing it to your attention where you can be a good steward of the public monies. How is singling my firm out when you are spending at least five times the amount budgeted with other special counsel firms? Please be transparent and share with the City Council and the public what your real reason is for unannounced sneak attack on these services I provide to the City Council. Everyone is a snowflake. By making this statement, I am not saying I am special. I just want to share with you what you are asking others to give up. I have unique combination of qualities that other attorneys may share in part, but very few local government attorneys possess. First, I was in law enforcement for 23 and 1/2 years. Without being sued or being disciplined or any alleged misconduct, the initial application of law to fact is what police officers do and must do quickly and professionally. It is just not the complete application with probable cause. It starts with the legal process and is done without the benefit of the education provided to attorneys. I became an attorney while a police officer. I ended my career as a commander supervising four divisions of the Police Department. But now, in my case, I started law school with 269 classmates. I graduated from law school six months early with 148 remaining. Of the 149 that graduated, I was number 15 and received a degree with honors. I was one of the top 15 in my whole class of 270. One of the ones who best demonstrated their capability to understand the law and secured the means to think like a lawyer. One of the top 5.6% of the original class. This achievement narrows those comparable to my achievement in education. I'm also one of the few local government attorneys that practices attorney-litigator and a legal counselor, which activates both attorney-side and counselor-side of my Texas State Bar license. And having been a member of the Texas State Bar College for over five years, I take three times the continuing legal ed required for attorneys. I also write, present, and conduct lectures about the law, teaching other attorneys in continuing legal ed. Many of the professional municipal employee associations and universities offering master's degrees in government admin. Almost there. These qualities allow me to have firsthand knowledge of the courts who make the common law, of the legislature, of the stated men commissions, in addition to understanding and interpreting the place local legislation has in it since 2001 and have defended such law in court for the same amount of time. My unique combination of practical experience, good judgment, and common sense combined with experience of practicing law for four decades, 90s and to the 20s, teaching law to the others and have earned a Juris Doctor with high honors, makes my service to this City Council irreplaceable. While other attorneys can assume the role, they would not be nor practice the law with my unique combination of traits. Because I value elected officials' time, which would be best used to conducting real city business, focused on the people of Amarillo instead of trying to disarm your colleagues by this attempt to sever them from a lifetime of local government legal experience, knowledge, and training used to support cities all over the great state of Texas that I bring with me to every community I serve, my question is, why in the world would you do that to your fellow elected officials? Why have you weaponized the City Council's special counsel legal services under a disguise of transparency and stewardship of municipal funds? Despite this apparent issue, I continue to stand ready to work with you as I have for all the other council members. Work with the city staff and any others to serve the best interests of the City of Amarillo, Texas, guiding you and the others in maintaining your oath of office, and I'm prepared to do so for years to come. I think you love Amarillo and want to do good. I just cannot understand why you would do this, as it is not for transparency and it is not good stewardship of public funds. Thank you for considering my viewpoint on this matter. Hyde Kelly Firm. Councilman Simpson, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. So, last year, this council approved an unprecedented resolution. For the first time in Amarillo's history, the City Council hired an outside legal firm, as we heard exclusively for its own use. Unfortunately, this resolution has turned taxpayer dollars into a poorly managed slush fund with no oversight, excess spending, and a troubling lack of transparency. About half of the $186,000 paid so far to Hyde Kelly, at least $85,000 by my count, was for work that was neither brought before the public, nor this council, nor directed by this council as required by the resolution. And the lack of oversight has led to overspending limits that we established, paying for work that had already been done or could have been done much cheaper, or even in one case, for free. I want to stress very clearly, I do not have an issue with using outside counsel. This is not about the practice of using outside counsel. We use outside counsel all the time and there's no problem with that. However, when you're paying outside legal counsel $395 an hour of taxpayer money, you want to be prudent about that. This is about wise use of taxpayer money and transparency with the public and with each other as council members. Two years ago, we all campaigned on those two very important topics, transparency and wise use of taxpayer money, and for obvious reasons that we all remember. Today's actions will determine where each of us stand individually and in council on those issues. How is this practice any different than a City Council hiring a legal firm to develop a plan to use tax anticipation notes to fund a civic center without telling the public or all the council members? Amarillo taxpayers deserve transparency, accountability, and responsible use of their money. While perhaps needed initially for a specific purpose, this practice has turned into a wasteful and backdoor arrangement that we have an obligation to end. I want to, a couple of things I want to present, and I've got a couple of slides here that I'd like to go over to maybe answer a couple of Mr. Hyde's questions. This first one just kind of gives a summary of where we are. I don't have us at 188. I went through every bill, put it in a spreadsheet. I have it at 186, 99280.
Is this attorney-client privilege we're seeing?
For a, no, it's a bill. It's already been released to the public.
Is this attorney? It is. Has it been requested by the public?
Uh, yes.
Who requested it?
I don't know. You'll have to look in the open records.
The media's requested all of it.
Okay. I just want to make sure, I mean, in my opinion, as I said.
Can you let me finish?
No. Not really. I think at this time, I need to interrupt because you misled quite a few people in your statement.
Now, well, can I finish?
No, because I'm going to...
Correct me. Mayor, I would ask, I would ask to be allowed to finish my statement and then...
Finish your statement and then we'll take others.
You'll let me go?
Oh, yeah.
So, the oversight on spending, let's go to the next slide. We passed a resolution that said we were going to spend an amount not to exceed $95,000 with Hyde Kelly in the first four months of the arrangement. If you go back and look at the bills, $109,255.88, about $15,000 or 15% over budget. On the next item, we had a $10,000 limit for drafting the ADC Articles of Incorporation that has almost doubled in cost. Additional January expenses for what we paid for that have not been included. Go to the next slide, please. Thank you. Yes, this says, "Is to be directed by only the City Council." So, this is where the direction is to come from. But in the period the City Council is not convened, the mayor, or in his absence, the mayor pro tem as appropriate, shall provide any necessary direction and oversee the engagement until the next City Council meeting, wherein any direction may be provided by the entire council. So, all these things have come up, and I'll go to the list, it has not come before the entire council. George Hyde mentioned one of them, Nurse Navigator. That request did not come from council, nor for the mayor or mayor pro tem. You were mayor pro tem, I think, at the time that it went.
Oh, I'm guilty.
No, you're not.
Well, let me, let me make a statement while we're doing this.
I'll just, I'll go to the next slide.
Let me finish. You brought my name up. And I've got the right at this time to defend your statement to me.
Okay. Can we go to the next slide, please? So, this is work that's been done without any council direction or approval that did not come to this body. Open records request and meetings, about $32,000. A look at the ADC credit cards for $18,000. Let 'em Popper Pipe ruling, $13,000. Physician Transparency Act, $10,000. Nurse Navigator, $5,700. Ten Commandments, $4,700. I just want to put down here the, you know, and I don't know how, again, how a request was made to have a paralegal go over credit card transactions. I don't know where that came from. We never, we never voted on that. But that cost us $18,272 to pay her $165 for 98 hours to look through credit card transactions. Our trained internal audit department spent 200 hours looking through all the transaction records, not the credit card, and only cost us $7,000. Next slide, please. Now, nothing I've talked about so far has anything to do with George Hyde. This is really about how council conducts the business. And I'm going to let Mr. Hyde's letter stand for itself. I don't think anything needs to be added to it. I don't think anything needs to be added to it. But I will address a couple of issues as it relates to transparency and stewardship. Lack of transparency. What you're seeing here is a highlighted statement that came to George Hyde to us on May 30th. When George Hyde was engaged by council in June, he advised us not to use our city email addresses for communication with him. Instead, he said, and I quote, "We ask that each of you create an email account, such as a Google Gmail account or similar account, that is only used for our communication and is only accessible by you." Now, I'm not sure why he recommended we do that, because no matter where the communication is, whether it's a Google account or text message, if we're talking about city business, it's open to the public.
Not if it's attorney-client privilege, sir.
Correct.
Thank you.
But then if it's attorney-client privilege, it could be in our regular emails.
Should be.
Should be. So I don't know why we're getting advice to circumvent that.
Well, I think it's an interesting point you make. Did anybody set this up, sir?
Transparent funding.
Did you set up a Gmail account, sir?
I didn't.
I didn't. So even though this is something that you're making a point on, but you're making a point on it, but I do want to clear for the record, nobody did this.
Oh, I didn't say they did. I didn't say that. I don't think they did. What I said is, we have an attorney that is advising us to do that. That's not transparency.
What's the difference?
Why would that advise? Let me finish, and then everybody can have their statement.
What's the difference when the city manager searched they wanted a personal email? What's the difference?
Although George Hyde was quick to indict the ADC for line item transfers, he had no problem with the council using it to get help and pay, as he said this. And then the invoices, and he mentioned this. So when the public, and this is an email that he sent me, when the public began asking for these invoices, he says right here, he began limiting the information that was to be sent out to the public. Let's also look, and that's off of the slides I have, let's also look at George Hyde and his transparency with us. From this dius, he told us that he had written Articles of Incorporation for seven other cities, exactly like he was doing here. But when asked to provide copies of those, he couldn't find them. In fact, he had to pay a paralegal 3.7 hours at $165 per hour to find it at a total cost of more than $600. And if you look at the final parts of the Articles of Incorporation, all that money we invested in George Hyde's expertise, much of what he had in there, thankfully, was stripped out by the ADC board, Alex Fairley and John Atkins. We've been paying a Hyde Kelly paralegal $165 to do all kinds of work. Just to provide some perspective on that, that's a pay rate higher than anyone in our legal department. Actually, that's a pay rate higher than every city employee, including the city manager. And I'm pretty sure that there aren't many of our taxpayers, who are footing the bill for this, by the way, are getting $165 an hour. To recap, whether this is $165 per hour or $395 an hour, we are wasting taxpayer money. Council is not following its own resolution and being transparent with the public's business. We are exceeding budgets. We have an attorney who instructed us to use private emails to communicate with him and give as little information as possible. Why are we being told to operate in the dark with zero transparency and accountability? Well, I guess his name is Hyde for a reason.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
That's pretty low there, Les.
Councilmember Sherlin, let me ask you a question before you respond. It's probably more appropriate right now to allow the protocol presentation to be done by Path, and then we come back to the discussion.
Sounds good.
You okay with that? Mr. Path, if you would, continue with your presentation.
All right, city council, yes, at your December 10th of last year council meeting, you requested that I develop some written protocols to bring back to regarding the use of legal counsel. And so I went back to that meeting, and I re-listened to the video, and just to make sure, I tried to capture all the concerns being raised and so forth. So what you were given, I'm not going to read through it all. I'd be happy to answer questions, but I'll just kind of touch on the highlights of each section here. So what you've gone in front of you here is, I've gone back to the chart in the city code and reference items in relation to the council, manager, city attorney, outside council. So that's the first page there. You'll see that. Get down to Section 2 of the body. You'll see here that I tried to cover, define what is in-house counsel versus outside counsel. And so with this, I go through, and I try to identify the pros and cons, and I say, actually, the purposes and uses of both inside and outside counsel. So you see that section there for how each one is beneficial in its own right. Section 3, you'll see, I go into talking about when the city council requests a written opinion. And under the charter, city council has every right to request written opinions, and so that's done obviously through discussion as a body. And the protocol here, it shows that you would then direct that to your city manager and myself, and then I would then work with in-house legal counsel, Mr. McWilliams and his team. And then, if necessary, we would address, we would bring in outside counsel, we'd then bring back to you a written opinion. If the city council requested a second opinion, we would then shall obtain a second opinion through an outside counsel, and then the council can choose which one they prefer. Section 4 is where I try to address, what if a city council member requests a written opinion outside of a council meeting? I know that was an item discussed in the city council meeting, so I wanted to make sure I covered that. And so with this, again, the written protocols, and again, I want to emphasize, this is all just draft. This is all, I was asked to bring forward some protocols, some procedures. Again, city council can take these, add to them, remove them, say, "Thank you, Grayson, but no, it's totally your document, and I'm just here to facilitate that." So in Section 4, with this, a city council member would then approach the city manager. We have a conversation, discuss the parameters, what's the issue, because sometimes with my knowledge and my abilities, I might be able to answer the question or provide guidance before we bring legal counsel in. But ultimately, at the end of the day, if a request is made for legal counsel, I would then approach Mr. McWilliams. We would then bring back a written opinion to that council member. Again, if we determined that we would need an outside counsel, we would do that, bring back to you the opinion. If you then think, you know what, I appreciate this, but can we get a second opinion from an outside counsel? We would then discuss that. And so either I would then proceed, we're getting outside counsel, working with Mr. McWilliams, or, and I know one of the concerns here was, what if I said no to that? What's the council's recourse? I really don't see a situation where I would say no unless I know the rest of council's opposed to that. And so obviously, I work for all five members of the council, so I'm constantly in communication with all five of you, trying to read your cues and so forth. And so if I, I can only see the situation, if I, that could be the only situation I wouldn't get outside counsel. However, just to add some language here, so the council member had some recourse, one of the items I was brought up in the last meeting was getting a second counselor to weigh in on this, and so I wrote that in here. Obviously, you can always go back to the overall council and say, hey, I got a written opinion from the city attorney's office. I'd like to get a second opinion. City manager said no. Again, I don't see why I would do that. But council could weigh in on that too, or a second council member can then drive that to do that as well. I would then get that second opinion and bring it back to the council member. All the while, one of the concerns that was expressed is making sure that the whole council is aware of that. I would then relay to the whole council, either through email or so forth. Okay, this was a question. Here is the written opinion, and here's the outside written opinion. That way, the whole council is kept informed of that. Section 5 is, obviously, there are situations to where you may need to speak with legal counsel about my employment, say, "I'm not performing to your standards" and so forth. And Section 5 would cover that to where you can then approach the city attorney around me, because the city attorney, per the code, does, is both the city manager and the city council's legal counsel. So this is a situation where you can approach him directly. And then obviously, if he requests outside counsel, the language here says that Mr. McWilliams shall get outside counsel if you directed that. Likewise, Section 6 is where if an individual council member were to request written opinion regarding my employment or my services, this is where, again, I'm the employee of the council as a whole, and so what I wrote in here, and again, this is all subject to your direction, what I wrote in here is that you would then approach the city council as a whole, you would have likely a closed meeting with legal counsel, and the council would then decide whether, yes, to proceed or not, because there are situations when myself and a council may get crossways, and they may not represent all the council. And so that way, the city council can weigh in whether they wish for legal counsel to be sought in regards to my employment. Again, just trying to set some parameters, there's some protocols for council. Section 7, again, in my daily duties, and as well as Mr. McWilliams' daily duties, I mean, we're handling HR matters, we're handling loss claims, and so there are times which through our daily duties, we have to approach outside counsel. So this Section 7 allows us to do that, as the city code discusses. Section 8 is where, under our code, Section 2-3-4, it says that the city manager may employ other attorneys with the advice and consent of the city council. Therefore, in order to create some efficiency with this, obviously, it would be a bit challenging to pause every two weeks in order to bring it back for discussion. And so with this, what we've done here is, we've developed a list, we're working with Mr. Williams, we've identified all the legal attorneys that we currently work with. You'll see I have Hyde Kelly in there, we have Big B Curtis on top there, because I just did alphabetical here. Gannon Way Clifton is our HR attorney. We have some litigation attorneys here. I just have a list here. So basically, what this section allows is that anywhere in this protocol, whenever outside counsel is needed, whether it's through Mr. McWilliams, myself, or working with city council, working with city council member, we would then pull from this list. That way, the city council has, with through consent and advice, approved a list here. We would not use public funds to use any other legal counsel unless the council amends this list, and we bring that name back to you. And I think, then of course, Section 9 is, obviously, any council member can approach to legal counsel for general inquiries at any time. If you have a question, it's like, hey, what's this? What's that? Can you explain this? That's always okay, so we have a section here for that. And again, this is general inquiries versus written opinions. And then I went ahead and addressed, let's see here, again, Section 10 covers, if you, I mean, as a city council, you can decide, Grayson, you must use Hyde Kelly, or you must use Big B Curtis, you must use, so the council always has the ability to say, you shall use this particular law firm. You don't, I mean, you can leave it to me to decide, or this section here allows you to say, you know, Grayson, we will say this firm, and we would use that. Section 11 is covered litigation. That's covered in the state law, so I covered that, just generally saying that litigation, we have some protocols in place already for that. Then Section 12 is, if there's any situation in which I feel that there's a conflict of interest with working Mr. McWilliams, whatever the situation may be, I have the authority then to bypass him and go to outside counsel. Obviously, if there's a conflict, it would not be appropriate to use his legal services. I would then use another counsel to do that. So otherwise, that's a summary of it. So I'd be happy to answer questions. Again, this is all subject to your decision, your recommendations, your requests, edits, and so this is just me bringing back a written document for you to consider.
Who made the approved list of lawyers?
This here, working with Mr. Williams, this is over the years, we've used these firms over time, and so we just compiled all the ones we know we've used in the last five or 10 years, and some we haven't used in a while, so, but we brought that to this list here.
My question, have y'all got approval from the council to use those firms?
I've only been here six months. I can't answer that. I don't know. I apologize.
I mean, to me, we do have approval from council for Hyde Kelly. Council, as far as I know, I could be wrong. You've been here longer. If we have a list of litigators here, or firms that want to handle the city business, I think we, as a council, need to weigh in on that.
Absolutely. And that's what this protocol would do. Sorry.
I feel I don't want anything shoved down my throat. I'm a very independent thinker. I believe in calling who I want to call. Now, if there's a list, and I've approved a list, I'd be more apt to do that.
Yes.
But for me, as one, at this point in time, I don't like this.
Understood. And again, none of this prevents the council from pursuing your own private counsel. This all addresses this publicly funded counsel.
Other questions for Mr. Path?
Now, just, what's the reason for two council members?
Again, that was discussed at the last council meeting, and so I incorporated that into this list. If you go to three, you have a quorum. And so again, this was, the discussion last time was, again, what is the recourse if the city manager were to say no? Now, first off, again, the council is in charge, not me. I don't overrule you, I'm not in charge of you, and so I am your employee. And so ultimately, it does not matter what I believe and what I think. I provide advice. So I don't see a scenario where this would be a problem, unless, as I said, if I, again, since I communicate with all of you, if I feel that a majority of you are opposed to something, that would be a situation where I may say, take it to the whole council. But again, I put some protocols in there just to give, just to put something right, but we could change that however you like.
Can I ask a question? Does this consideration, this protocol, allow for direct contact and direction from council?
For, to talk to legal counsel?
Yes. So I mean, you've given a pretty good understanding of how you go out and you obtain this counsel. Once that's here, the thing I'm driving at is, what would be any different from the current conversations that are going on with Hyde Kelly? So can you describe to me any of these entities that are on this list, Bigsby or whoever, they're going to go ahead and discuss everything directly with council members?
No. According to this protocol as written, it would run through myself, the city manager, with the city attorney's office. So this would actually, this would actually repeal the existing resolution with Mr. Hyde, because that would not follow the protocols as written. So we need to amend this to do that.
So how would you facilitate your employment as your five bosses here, by going out and getting the resource that we need, but then remaining the go-between from, you know, counselor to council man?
Again, per the protocol, if a council member requests opinion, again, the protocol talks about how you would then approach me. I would then incorporate Mr. McWilliams, and then we would give you a written opinion on the matter. If that, if the council would request a second opinion, we would then, as council member and myself, talk about that. If we agree, I think you'd get an outside counsel opinion. Again, if we disagree, that's where either you get a second council member to weigh in, or the council comes in.
So this does not consider any more than maybe just a legal opinion you'd bring back. This doesn't work or function for a relational aspect of like a counselor advising for everything from Open Meetings Act, further education, or looking at potentialities for new policies, reconciling an issue. This protocol also doesn't consider maybe other resources like consulting firms, you know, audit firms, forensic accountants, maybe even like a medical advisor if we had, you know, something significant, again, like we did back in 2020. You're not contemplating any of that. What you're really saying is, is we could come to you if we didn't like the legal opinion we were given on a subject with a question. You would then go out and procure a second legal opinion.
Again, this is written, again, what I was asked to do is to provide protocols for getting written opinions from legal counsel. Yeah, this doesn't contemplate consultants, those kind of things, no. This is just...
But it does, in the way in which you're serving the community here, it does recognize the authority of council as a body, that if council comes together and we vote, you know, three to two, to go out and hire a firm, put it in the budget, that then those monies are to be expended with that firm for any of those council members. It still recognizes that.
This protocol would need to be amended to that, because the protocol discusses that you would communicate that through the city manager when you have requests for written opinions and so forth. So we need to amend that to allow that to be allowable.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Tips?
Well, so my question's going to be for you and you, Grayson. Just because y'all have more experience. With this council-city manager form that we are, does this protocol, and I know we've had some discussions up here, Mayor, to understand that, you know, the way I look at this protocol, one, it provides a little bit of safety, and this is just me talking, so just provides a little bit of safety. I'll tell you, I was super frustrated the last meeting we had, that we've got two attorneys, okay, we've got Brian, then we had Hyde. They both weighed in on a position, right, gave an opinion, and they were opposing positions. So we couldn't move forward as a council, because then we five are exposed, because we got legal counsel from one, and legal counsel from two, so no matter which way we went, we are going against council. So we're exposed. I don't like that. I'll just be honest with you. I can't stand that, actually. And I feel like if we called 10 attorneys on certain issues, we're going to get 10 different opinions. So when we got two that we're listening to, and I'm not knocking that, don't hear me say that, but I do think we need some clarification of, it creates so much, so many problems for those of us sitting here on council of going, man, because I'm going to depend on the attorney, right? That's my, I'm going to depend on a attorney to say, listen, I'm not an expert here, I'm not an attorney, I just need your guidance. I'm not going to go look it up. If I've got somebody on staff or on a retainer, I'm going to use them and ask them, and I'm going to, then I'm done. That way, if I do something based on the opinion that I sought, and it was based on the attorney, wherever the attorney is... the attorney, wherever the attorney is, man, that's not, that's off me. That's the whole point of having an attorney, right? They're acting on behalf, or giving you counsel, so that when you act, I mean, they're going to get your back. So, in that way, and again, I'm not saying that these don't need to be revised, or we can revise them and that kind of thing, but the protocol I do like, because, again, back to the council manager form of government. So I think that there's safety in that, for us, for us five, and I would go to, you know, the exposure, the safety, and again, let's just get it out there in the open. If we distrust staff, if we think they are completely inept, but yet we bypass them, and we don't allow them to maybe show their ineptness, or not do their job, well, that doesn't benefit the organization at all. It doesn't help anything. Now, if we make a big blunder, we make a big mistake based on counsel that was given, that's a problem, right? But again, that does not fall on the individuals making the decision, it falls on the attorney that gave the opinion.
I do want to give a response there, and then Grayson can weigh in, because I think you directed it at me. So you do realize, we didn't do that.
What?
Well, we didn't do what you just said.
Bypassed?
Well, we did not trust staff, so we had no trust with previous city manager. We had all sorts of things that weren't truthful, you know, in their substance that we were dealing with, and you chose not to go to Brian, and to go out and hire a consultant, and then that is how he arrived. And so like, we had to act as an autonomous body in order to go out and procure a new city manager, and we came together and we did it all as a body. So we went and we contracted with a consulting firm, just like we're contracting with a consulting firm in Hyde Kelly, a legal consultant. And so like, I understand what you're saying, and I think you're drawing a box, that if it fits in the box, it's fine. But I think anytime you're outside of the box, or you would have an issue from, say, me to you as a council, you don't have that opportunity to put Brian between us. Now, Brian could give a legal opinion on a matter, but then as far as advising you or me, and so I think in the way in which Mr. Path arrived here, it's a great example of the need for true elected representation. So, you know, the thing that's going on here that we're not talking about is, it's not my attorney that I'm running the risk of losing, it's yours. So you guys get together and you vote for your elected representatives, you're taxed for this service, and then we are now being told that we're not allowed to be educated by an independent party to us directly. You realize that.
Wait, wait, wait.
Like, in this protocol, well, no, I think that is what it's saying. It's saying that in this protocol, all education has to run through one person who is a city staff member. And that is not the balance of power, the separation of duties that we need. We don't do this at the judicial branch. You realize you have a municipal court that constitutes the judicial branch of government? I don't think we're over there digging into that judge's protocol and putting these parameters on that judge to only talk to a specific attorney on a procedural matter that she may have in a case. Why is this five-body individual that has protocol where you have to put out what you want to do, you have to name the firm, you have to budget it, and if it gets approved, then we want to somehow short-circuit that and put it back in underneath what could be a bureaucrat, but I'm not, I mean, I love Grayson, and he's doing a great job, but his role is bureaucratic to a certain extent. He has to be more concerned with the organization. Do you realize that we are the last line of defense for you when you are in opposition to the city staff? So if you had an issue and you need an advocate, we are your advocates, yet we're not allowed to have an attorney advise us, or we have a significant limitation on that. I in no way want to limit this body, other than this body has to agree. You have to be able to count to three. You got to have two more people plus yourself vote to hire a firm if you want it paid for by the city. And then think about what we're saying here. You're saying that if an individual from the north side of town, who doesn't have a thick checkbook, and can't go out and procure these resources, that he doesn't get the same treatment than any other council should. What I'm saying is, is council, we owe it to each other to always do our best to resource each individual council member, even if their agenda is opposite of mine. And so if this was the Hyde Kelly firm that I didn't like, but Les liked him, I'm going to work with him. Because he gets every opportunity to hold his autonomy and educate himself, and I don't get to know everything that he's doing and working on. You know why? It's called the Texas Open Meetings Act.
Well, okay. My issue is, and as long as we're acting as a council, I would have no problem with that. But as I remember, we've only publicly, as a group, come to a consensus to ask him to work on three things. That was sanctuary city ordinance, the charter, and the Articles of Incorporation. And none of these other things have come to the council for approval. It takes, all of us independently, we have no power, we have no authority, as each of us are individual. We only have authority when we're meeting in a group of five, and we only have authority when three are in. And that's what the resolution says.
Now, that needs to be challenged. That needs to be challenged. You're an elected representative, so not only do you have authority, you have liability. What you're saying is, is that we couldn't get in trouble unless all of us did it. That's not true. You can get yourself in trouble. And do you need an advisor to keep you out of trouble? You do. Do you know everything that I'm doing? You don't. And you can't look to me to be that cover for you. So us five as a body, that's how we...
No, I would look to my attorney, but he's going to charge me $3.95 an hour every time I talk to him.
But we've put it in the budget. So it's in the budget, you're well within it, and it is good stewardship in you needing resources.
Well, I know, because all of us have been calling him all the time at $3.95 an hour. You said you never, you called and talked to him once. Don, you haven't talked to him. I mean, I talked to him to ask him for information, to give me some background on his experience.
The Nurse Navigators are a great example, councilman.
It's never came, how did we get to work on that?
Well, that came from Councilman Kraft, and that came as a derivative through the public that had a need, and they got hung up in the legal department, right? Now, I'm not saying that's our fault, I mean, maybe they didn't provide the right documentation, or we didn't know where they were, but it sure got done quickly when Councilmember Kraft got involved as an advocate, so that we can improve our city. So are you truly electing elected representatives and you want us to do our job? Or is this ceremonial? Do we just cut ribbons? And you've got a city manager, we turn the keys over, and am I not responsible? Because every time I turn around, everybody's threatening me with going to jail. I mean, I get on Facebook all the time, well, here's another illegal thing, you can't do that, you go to jail. Well, how am I doing that if it takes all five of us and we didn't say it together? So you can't have it both ways.
Why did we not bring the Nurse Navigator program to full council to say, hey, is this something that we want to work on? Why did we not bring the Physician Transparency Organization?
You did, and it goes exactly like this protocol calls it out. So what happened was, Councilmember Kraft exercised his right to reach out to legal counsel, ask an opinion.
I have that right.
No, he does.
Not according to, the only people that have that right to manage this relationship in the interim is mayor and pro temp.
No.
That's what the ordinance says. Any other time, it would take the approval. This is not an individual...
Call the question.
There's no question yet. So on this, if you are ready to end discussion, we can move forward. But on this, Councilman Kraft contacted me, and he said, hey, I need a second opinion, I've got this, I've got this over here in the legal. I said, yeah, that's great, man, get with it. So you've never called me. So I mean, I would have exercised that with you, but yeah, you're right, the resolution's written in a way for us as a body to utilize that. Now, it did come to you.
After the fact, after we'd spent...
Which is how everything has to come to you. You realize you cannot know what Councilmember Kraft is working on until he understands what he's doing? There has to be an allotment for time. You're assuming that time doesn't exist, that he somehow has knowledge before he ever thought the thought. He has to be allowed time to go and research and educate himself, and that costs money.
Yeah. And I'm not saying, but what we are doing is establishing a protocol that future councils could use and potentially abuse. And we've already, again, I go back, what is the difference between a few council members working on a legal issue, getting everything together, and spending taxpayer money to do something?
I agree with you. I agree with you. This protocol could be abused. Let's not do this, and here's why. You have an existing protocol called your charter, and it works very well. You have an existing protocol called the Open Meetings Act, and all sorts of privacy issues that you maintain as rights as a council member. So you didn't give up your rights when you got elected, you're just an advocate. So let's stick to the fullness of the protocol of the charter, which means, you're allowed to work on anything you want to work on. And if we put it in the budget, now, this is what is considered later, do we not feel like this is money well-spent for our citizens? Then let's cancel it, let's terminate it, because you can't afford $100,000 worth of legal fees that just saved you $2 million, okay? If that's your ROI, I get it. But you're going to have a hard time looking at the PDP monies, because the same level of transparency that you're exercising on me as your mayor, you're not willing to look back at PDP. Mr. Skank, you spent how many meetings out there with PDP? 30?
Oh.
You realize we spent with that firm, that consulting firm, $241,000? You know what that was for? Street fees. They wanted to put a fee on your water meter bill, so that those monies could be dependable to repair your streets. Now, we were still going to charge you your full tax rate. So now, council has worked diligently to work through your budget, along with Hyde, to take and say, you know what, we could use this franchise fee over here on this enterprise business, and we could pull that money over. Do you know that $1.4 million was spent with Norton Rose and Fulbright? I never voted on that. That was your tax notes for the Civic Center, and the defense of a lawsuit. Not only that, then we were advised to appeal the lawsuit, and that was only after it was already appealed.
Three times.
We didn't even get to vote on that. So are you going to exercise the same level of accountability with your city attorney, and with everybody else that you're doing business with? Because I think you should. I love this, I'm being totally transparent. You can see every dollar, you can pull every bill. I'm just willing to defend the fact that I'm spending your money well. Everything I spent with Hyde Kelly has a return on the investment, every dollar.
Yeah. Good. I never knew that, because he never talks to me, you know, and I'm not calling him up, and I don't hear from anybody else. The thing I like about this is, again, remember, every time we call, $3.95 an hour, $3.95 an hour, $3.95 an hour. I mean, if I'm calling him to find out what's going on, I really don't, the problem is, how do we know what's going on? The Nurse Navigator, all these other things. What are the, what is the legal advice being given? Having a central location to go through that, and again, this resolution that he's saying takes not one iota of power away from this council.
Protocol.
This council still has the power. Well, you know, you have a choice to make, you know, but you get it, you understand it, but this council does have, our power is, our power is more limited than you think. Our power is, this is the gentleman we hire and fire and expect to execute on the job.
Not at all, not at all true, Councilman. You can go out and you can pay your own legal fees if you can afford them. But I'm just telling you, if you can't pay your own legal fees and you bring it to this council, we've budgeted that. You didn't call me one time, and you're not allowed to know what I'm working on, and I'm not necessarily allowed to know what you're working on, and if I'm working on the same issue with somebody else.
But if he's council's attorney, he's all of our attorney. Now, if you want to use him as your own attorney, I have no problem with that, but that should not be on the taxpayer.
Let me, I'd like to say something here.
Yes, sir.
Brian, one time I asked you, are you a litigator?
Yeah, I asked you if you're a litigator.
Are you a litigator?
Yes, that was my first job.
And you told me you weren't. You told me, not a year ago, you said, I'm not a litigator, I go outside for outside counsel. Is that true?
No, I was a litigator before.
Okay.
When you take the city attorney...
Are you litigating our cases today?
You take the city attorney job on, you oversee litigation. When you're not the city attorney, you typically are driving the litigation, okay? So you're involved in all of it, it's just a matter of oversight and getting updates, and then suggesting things, you know, related to the litigation.
I'm good with that. Now, in answer to Les's question a while ago, he says every time I call, we're spending $3.95. What is my cost in-house?
No additional cost to taxpayers.
No.
We're paying the legal department, no matter what.
You are.
There's no additional cost, we're going to pay them.
No, but you're overloading the department, you're going to have to hire more people.
Well, we're hiring more people.
No. Well, Les, I'm not going to argue that point with you, and I had a call to question a while ago, and a call to question, we stopped discussion.
There's nothing to call, Tom.
Well, we're discussing, we got a discussion.
My question, if we want to move forward, it's just, let's be transparent with each other. I mean, instead of working against each other.
Yeah, transparency, putting stuff in a public notice, that really bugs me. You know why it bugs me? You broke a deal with all five of us.
No?
No, you got ahead of the story, you're a newsman, you're ahead of the story. You run and get to the paper, I got to get it out.
Thank you, Mr. Path, I think we're done with our questions with you, sir. Council, we've had a discussion on this item. You have some protocols set before you. What we have here is a true elected form of representation, and this is an elected representative government. And there are three branches here, I don't know if you realize this, but, you know, our staff constitutes the executive side, and they work underneath this legislative body, and we are being required to conduct ourselves like a smaller state House of Representatives Senate. You know that none of these parameters that you're trying to place on us, Les, you're not worried about with Fairley, or Sparks, or any of them. You know, everything that goes on down at the state level of them working their legislation affects us, and we're going to have to educate ourselves on that. You undoubtedly are going to have some different views than I'm going to have. I don't ever want you to be underneath a mayor that can control you. And right now, you've got an opportunity to spend that $250,000 budget, right, and whatever's remaining of it, 150 of it, on the attorney firm that you want to call. So nothing's keeping you from calling Underwood and saying, hey, I got a question, I want to work on, you know, this next initiative. And so we have a budget item in there, and we've removed it from within our budget. We didn't raise your taxes to go out and pay for an attorney, and we're not using it on things that we don't need, and we're good financial stewards. And you know what this goes to? It's just a political hit job on us not doing a good enough job of taking care of your money. You cannot look at that budget, the things that are unprecedented. It's unprecedented what's happened for our first responders. It's unprecedented that our AFD E-Board is going up to DC to give a discussion on how they single-handedly turned an entire government that they couldn't get along with in a lawsuit for seven years, fire marshal issues and all sorts of stuff, and now they have a pro-local hero body that they're working well with. So everything that we've done, the road repairs that are going on, the animal management improvements, the list goes on and on, the pay increases to all of the employees, not just, you know, police and fire, everything speaks for itself. Now, we need to keep an attorney for exact reasons like this. You and I hit the skids when the AEDC was the issue, and the issue came because what was done at the range was wrong, and we wanted to investigate that. And what you're pointing to was my direction, to go through and go through those credit cards, go through and pull all those items, because I needed to know if I had an issue or if another agency had an issue. And I didn't know how to deal with that, because what I knew happened was wrong. I didn't know exactly how, I didn't know if it's criminal, I didn't know if it was just unethical, and so all of that was procured, and I spent the money on that because I needed to hold that entity accountable. And that's exactly what we've done, and all the bylaws and everything else that's been worked on will work out for the good of the entire community. And I don't back down from that at all. This is what agents of change look like, and people don't like it. And we're not up here because we want you to like us. We're up here because we're going to turn the lights on, and we're going to operate with the lights on. And what you're trying to do is turn the lights back off.
You're absolutely wrong. And tell me about this political hit job.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, Channel 4 has ran multiple items in deep, deep search of all of the expenditures, and they've got me and you opposing each other on camera multiple times.
You have a differing opinion?
No, we can. I'm just saying, you sent the letter to the media before we came out.
I did not send it to the media.
You cannot deny the fact that this is politics.
The man wanted it out there. People need to know what he thinks about me, and I think...
Not yours to share, he didn't ask you to read it at council, he asked me to read it, I would have shared it. All I'm saying is, the hit job here is pointing to stewardship, it's not pointing to actual legal counsel, because we have legal counsel all over. We're not trying to get rid of Underwood. And you're not, you know, here's the proof in the pudding. You're not exercising this level of investigation on anything else. Why not?
What item do you want to investigate?
Well, I like the AEDC and I like the range, so let's start there.
Yeah, and we've investigated that, haven't we?
Well, not really.
Yes, we have, we've investigated all the transactions.
So everything, no, everything's not out yet, is it?
Well, I don't know. What do you know, Tom?
I don't know nothing.
Okay.
I don't know a thing. But the story's still out there.
I'd like to know, let's talk specifically, I'd like to know why I don't have the range's financials. So like, can we as a body agree? We need to go get those.
Hey, pause. Can I just pause?
Yes.
This is not the subject matter. Okay, I'm not the mayor, not the mayor pro tem, but this isn't the subject matter. Is that... Brian? This is where I would like you to step in and direct the meeting.
Well, if you're discussing about matters related to the protocols or things that are from a resolution having to do with...
You know, as a guy who's just out here learning and trying to swim around in the weeds that some like to throw on top of me, I'm going to take my council members' advisement, and I'm going to tell you, I'm comfortable with ending the discussion here. Council, do you have anything else you'd like to talk about on item 7G?
I've got one thing.
Yes, sir.
Couple things. If, as far as protocols go, some things that I do have issues with, that I think need to be discussed, is when we have outside counsel, okay? If we stick with whomever, whatever in the budget, I've got, I would like direction on, or we need to come to consensus on, an outside counsel paying them 395 an hour, whatever, to do things that our inside can do, the public information request, I mean, those kinds of things, extremely expensive when we could do them in-house. Now, if there's a reason to be done outside, so be it. But I think that we need to be in agreement on that. There are, it is pretty kind, it's kind of sloppy. I mean, it's kind of sloppy on some of the uses of Hyde. I don't like it. I mean, it just doesn't make sense when we've got staff inside, we're already paying a pretty healthy salary, I'm not even saying our attorney, but staff that are perfectly capable to do some of the things that he does. I don't love that. So I need to get that out there and say, you know, regardless of what these protocols, if we adopt them, don't, massage them, whatever, I do think that there needs to be some guardrails. We've just experienced, to your point, you know, we just experienced the EDC and some things of, well, there weren't really guardrails, I mean, they did something that really wasn't right, but wasn't wrong because there wasn't anything there. We've got to have something there, and I trust our council, right? I trust our council. But future councils that come forward, I think we've got to set a good precedent and maybe put some things up to say, hey, maybe we do need to be able to use outside counsel. Whether we do or we don't, we can finish that discussion whenever. But we do need to have some guardrails put up of going, you can't just, if we've got outside counsel, but we have inside that we're already paying staff for, why would we use outside counsel unless it's an expertise issue, you know, whatever else?
What about a confidence issue?
What'd you say?
Like, confidence issue.
Confidence?
Yeah.
Well, then I think that that goes to...
Talk to the city manager.
I think that goes to Grayson and say, "Grayson, I don't trust these people. I don't..." And it goes to the protocol of going, if I'm going to go outside, then I go to Grayson and say, "I don't trust the people you got."
It's not personal against Brian, but I'm saying, like, if you ask a question, and it's a yes or no answer, and you don't get that...
Frustrates me to no end.
Right. So, I mean, how do you rebuild that confidence in attorney?
I don't rebuild that confidence. If I'm not getting what I want, if we're going to use Brian as example, then I go to Grayson and say, "Grayson, I have a problem with your attorney, with the city attorney. He's not answering my, he's not answering my questions, he's not giving me good counsel." Like, something needs to be done. You need to write him up, you need to do something, let's get a meeting together, let's sit down, let's do something. That's the way I think that it should work, so that we help improve our organization. But if we just end around somebody because we don't trust, or we don't like what they say, or however, a confidence issue, we don't get better. I mean, we just, the organization doesn't get any better, but I think that that's our job, to your point, Mayor, to hold the organization accountable. We're your representatives. We've got to make sure this organization is functioning right. But if we just keep going out and finding specialists to do jobs that we're paying for, I don't think that that's good.
I have a potential solution, and I think we were working towards this last time. So, it's four steps, it's super simple. Because I'm also not saying that we should just work with no guardrails, I'm fine with holding ourselves accountable. What I want is protocol that council puts in, that we hold each other accountable to, and it doesn't ever put council's ability to go out and get anything done underneath our management. So, it's four simple steps. Before you contact your outside attorney, or consultant, or auditor, or accountant, any thing that is an outside, before you contact them, assuming that that has already been set up by your city council, you go to Grayson. "Grayson, I got a problem with X," right? He helps you by going to McWilliams. McWilliams helps you, and you're done, or he doesn't. Then you go to your outside consultant or attorney, and then you bring it to the council, this body. And so, what we could do is, we could set a very easy, simple, logical, common sense thing. We could just tell our city, or our outside council, our attorney, hey, you're not allowed to spend any more than $1,000 with any individual before they bring it back to council. That gives you a time to go and do a little bit of research, understand what you're doing, and then to go and expend $10,000, what would have happened is, Councilman Kraft would have come in, he would have said, "Hey, I want to work on Nurse Navigator." Man, I'm good with it. Is it something that can be fixed with Grayson? Nope. Grayson said, "No." Okay, well, did you go to Brian? Yeah, Brian said it's hung up. Okay, well, then go to the other attorney. Now, other attorney would have come back and said, "I can fix it." So then it would have come to this body, that's the step we missed. It would have come to the body, and we would have said, hey, do we want to spend $10,000 of that budgeted money on that? I mean, you can get your vote at that point. That would be the next step for me, that's the only thing I'm willing to do. But I'm fine working with a body of five people up here, that if we have a $250,000 budget, and you're ringing him up all the time, so be it.
Well, I think that's a good start. We're going to put that in writing and make it up.
I got it written down right here. I think it looks good.
Then let's work through it.
Last time we tried to hand it off, and it turned into several pages, and I appreciate the work that you put in for it, Grayson, but I don't think that that was really where we needed to land. So, go to Grayson, go to the city attorney, go to your outside council, and then bring it to this council.
Before we spend more than $1,000?
$1,000 limit, and we go put that on Hyde Kelly right now. Hey, you got $1,000 with anybody. If we're just calling, saying, hey, I want to know if this Open Meeting Act is something I need to watch or follow, that's plenty of money to get any of those answers. But if you go to him and you say, hey, I'm interested in changing the charter, how do we go about all that? He may tell you the nuances, but then you've got to come back and put it on an agenda, and it comes back in front of this body.
I'm fine with that.
So, we would still with those, we would still have the list that's in here, or whatever, of approved attorneys, I guess that came from somewhere, Tom, I don't know where. But I don't know where the approved list of attorneys came from, but if we're saying, hey, that's who we get to choose, if Hyde Kelly's on there, you want to use Hyde Kelly, or any of those others?
I don't even think it matters if you work on that list, I think you can bring anybody to you that you'd like, but we have a letter of engagement with the Hyde Kelly firm, that's what's being assumed, is that you can go and call that person. So, what we've all kind of conveniently forgot is, we did this rightly, we brought it to this body, and we engaged with him, and we all voted for it 5-0. Now, what we're saying is, we don't want a letter of engagement with him, or that's at least the discussion later today. And so, you got to bring a letter of engagement with a new attorney firm if you want to use somebody that we don't have a letter of engagement with.
Yeah. And I think, I think that's fine. But what we didn't have is the ability to be transparent about what was being worked on with each other. And to make a decision as a group as to whether we wanted to spend a significant amount of money on that.
Man, I disagree, but I do tell you that this will improve it, and none of us are sitting here telling you that we're beyond improvement. All I'm saying is, is I don't want to be handcuffed. And the direction we're going is not healthy.
Well, the other direction that I would say if we're going, if we're going to the city manager, well, number one, we should be going to the city manager to get his advice at all times, that's why we pay him what we do. He's a trained professional, that he's done that. You know, but we run out these scenarios, like, we're going to just be constantly going to the city manager, and he's going to be telling us, no, 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 or the attorney, well, that's not an outside council problem, that's a city manager problem. And so, you know, if we're running through those scenarios, if we don't feel like we're getting the adequate representation problem, that's not an outside council problem, that's the issue to deal with the city manager.
Agreed. What did you have, Craig?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion on item 7G?
No.
Okay. Thank you guys for enduring that with us. 7H, AEDC Corporation Board of Director applicants. I think we ran off all of the volunteers successfully now. No, I'm kidding. Ms. Stephanie, do we have you coming up for this one?
Yes, and I'm just going to introduce it and then let our governing body discuss. We had 55 applicants, we provided y'all with those applications back when we stopped accepting them back in, I believe it was December. The list of the 55 is on the screen here, and so today was just an opportunity for you to speak with each other about those candidates, talk through them, and our goal would be to bring this back for action at our next meeting to appoint.
Okay. I would like to direct, if I could. We've made a lot of progress. We have bylaws and some other things that I think are ready to be updated and move us forward. We've got, you know, more change happening over there, and we've got a temporary board. My interest is pulling the two council members off of that, bringing them back up to the dais. My interest is also in a discussion of, should this council appoint all board members, or should we appoint a few and leave temporary members there until after the May election? Giving for more transparency, more willingness to let your vote count, so now who you're voting for to come and sit in these seats is also going to have a potential of putting somebody out on that AEDC. Do we want to put these board members in place in February? Would we be ready, or should we let the temporary board work through February, place them in March? Knowing that you're not getting a potential until the 11th or the 25th. So there's three different scenarios there that I floated out. Does council have any opinion on where we are with that temporary board? And maybe we could hear from our two temporary council members that are down there, what have you guys seen, and where would you like to go?
Well, I know we still have a little work left over there, I know we have the bylaws still, and then we have the business mail stuff to go through. I don't know that it's great, I'm sorry, go ahead. I don't know that it's great to hand this off, just, I'm not, trust me, I'm not one to serve on lots of boards, and, you know, the time and that kind of thing. But I think we need to set a time for sure. I don't think Kraft and I want to sit on that board, I think it creates some issues and that kind of thing, but I think we've got some major changes coming. And to put brand-new people that don't really know anything about what the, how that operates is going to be rough. So, I don't know, I mean, I'm okay with throwing names out, or wherever we want to get to, but we're going to have, I think Kraft and I are going to have to choose an off-ramp at some point that makes sense for the organization to help that thing continue to operate. I do have a realization that these are pretty big positions. Even to sit on the board, they're not just ceremonial positions, that, I mean, you're dealing with a lot of stuff. I don't know if that's...
I agree. I don't know when to...
I don't know when that off-ramp is.
You don't know how much time you need?
No, but, I mean, there was a pretty big, you know, announcement, the agenda's coming out, you know, for, you know, looks like something big's going to happen Friday, I think that we need to walk through that.
Okay.
So, I hate to say that I don't know, but I don't know if Kraft feels any different. And I'm open.
I think we could probably set a deadline, maybe...
Careful.
Yeah. I mean, we're going to have to pick a date at some point, either March 1, or whenever these, I don't know, I mean, I would like to get the rest of our work finished, and then whatever training stuff, I know Councilmember Tibbs had talked about that on the board down there, is get whatever training lined out in place for that way, whenever these new board members come in, they have a training plan.
Novel idea. We've got Doug sitting out there.
We do have, we do have some staff here.
How about some representation from the EDC, if y'all would come and maybe give your input on what you think? Is that fair? I hate to put you on the spot.
Counsel, Mayor. I'm not sure that we're in the spot to give you feedback about when y'all should exit the board. That's obviously y'all's decision. We're here to do what you want us to do.
We hear that, but what about stability for your organization? I mean, give us some input, we're not going to say that you dictate to us and tell us a date, but stability for your organization, does it matter if we stay on that you've got some people that kind of understand what's going on? Does it not matter? And I'm not going to take offense, I don't think Kraft's taking offense. We want to do what's best for the organization.
Sure, and I think that has a lot to do with who you choose. There's going to be some people that can hit the ground running, and some that will require a little more time to get their feet on the ground.
Do you guys have a preference? Not on who we choose, but do you guys have a preference on when we would exit? Because like you said, we don't know who's going to be in place? Or it just doesn't matter?
I'm not sure that it does matter. There is a training, we have a process to train board members, new board members, to bring them up to speed. None of our current temporary board has elected to go through that. So, I'm not sure...
I guess that's where I feel like, we at least understand the inner workings of it, probably better than the average person, because we sit back here and we discuss with you guys the deals.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's why I'm offering this, but if you're saying it doesn't matter, I mean, we're not going to take an offense either way.
Well, let's narrow this, let's narrow it to give you a little bit better target, because I think you could give feedback, I think we're just so broad right now, it's maybe not fair to you if we could work it into maybe an either-or. So, to keep you from having to sit at the podium for a minute, we're good for a second, and I think we would like to get some feedback at the end of the discussion.
Sure.
So, hearing you guys say, like, let's finish cleaning up the mess, let's finish making the changes, whatever you want to term it, that way you can onboard somebody that has something that's ready to drive forward. You know, March 11, I think would be our first meeting in March. That's going to give us a little bit of time, you could look at March 25, maybe if we wanted to give ourselves two weeks of a breather to kind of have. And I don't think that's too long, I think that what I don't want is, I don't want the public to feel like we're trying to keep council members on that board, and we're never really letting those other leaders lead. And so, you've got a group of really good, high-qualified individuals that we can consider. Honestly, I don't know if we're going to leave you down there that long that it's beneficial to talk names and who I this, or who I that, at this point. I think what we would be having is a limited conversation here on, is, what is the longest temporary board that you feel like we could leave that's healthy? Is March 25 too long to leave a temporary board to go through and finish this work and then revisit this conversation?
I really feel that if they're in the middle of stuff, they need to finish it up and give a new board a clean slate to work with and know what direction we're going. That's just my opinion. I would hate to put somebody in right now when you're looking at things still in turmoil or whatever. That's just my thought.
Councilman Simpson, you got a feeling on it?
You know, I think whether opposed now, I don't know how much we still have to do. I mean, we've got the bylaws today and what other issues are there, but I, I say we, I mean, the great thing is you look at this and we have got a lot of really qualified people that are on that list. I've, I've talked to about a dozen of them and there are a lot of people on there that I think, so to your point, I think we've got some people on here that are very smart, that know a lot about the community, that know a lot about the business community, that I think would have no trouble picking up quickly onto what's going on. And I think if we're going to work in, in moving things forward, I, you know, to me, the sooner the better. If it, if it takes us a meeting or two to work through this, as I said before, I've talked to a dozen or so. My only request would be if someone else has someone that they'd like to nominate, I would just like to have a chance to talk with them before we take, you know, before we go into it finally. That would be my only thing, but whatever, however we think that. But I, I think getting a board on as quick as possible is going to set it on a, on a new chart for, for the future.
Can I get your opinion just as an individual in, you know, you're replacing four members out of the board that's temporary, or you're replacing two? What do you think about just doing the two in this election cycle and then allowing the other two to be placed after?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, you know, the question is, are we going to put the right people in there? And, and I think we would. I think we've got, and we've got a job to do, as Tom said. So, I mean, I, I don't think we necessarily would have to wait. You know, we need to just look at, you know, who we may, you know, put in there. But, you know, I think let's just do a good job of putting a real strong board
Okay.
in place. I think we're, I think we're at a crucial crossroads with it. And, you know, I think our selections are going to be very important, but I, I think let's at least have the discussion. Maybe we walk through it and we maybe say, hey, maybe there's only, we only do want to do two right now and maybe we want to look. But, you know, I don't have any problem with discussing the idea of, you know, potentially putting a full board in there.
Okay. Councilman Sherlin, where are you at?
I, I think for cohesion, two and then two, plus it gives you credibility for a new council. Say, I mean, we don't know if we'll be reelected or what, but at the end of the day, I think for cohesion, bringing two in at a time would be easier than bringing two in at one time.
Okay.
And we are replacing members for certain terms. We need to keep that in mind. There's some one-year terms, two-year terms, three, four?
Three.
Three. So we're, so each position is going to hold a different term.
So we've got unexpired terms. So two of those positions, hang on just a moment, let me click over here, council member tips. Two of those positions have technically already expired. They expired at the end of 2024. The other two expire at the end of 2025. So just based on our city code, and I would ask Brian to correct me if I say something wrong, we would fill the unexpired term whenever we replace those temporary appointments.
Correct. Okay. Let's talk about like, what's too long? Do we, could we at least give some expectation here? Or do we want to just leave no expectation of like, we'll do it as soon as we can?
Yeah, we'll just let you know we're done.
Okay.
I mean, but sooner than later, I agree with Les. Like we're, we don't want to stay on there to
Okay.
you know.
We're not going to speculate, but we will work diligently.
So Mayor, to specify, so, so we will have, we will have an item the next meeting then we'll just kind of wait until the, till the council is ready for it.
Would, we would, and Doug, this would probably be something back to you. And hearing that brief conversation, do you have an opinion? And if you don't, it's fine. But do you have an opinion on if you felt like something would take too long? Or are you guys comfortable as staff and as that body down there of just pushing through this? And, and you guys like the work that we're getting done and you want to see it move forward. So cohesion would be our priority.
Sure. And I think the process that we've been through, articles being completed, bylaws discussed today, I think we're, we're ready to push through.
Okay. Great. Well, I think we take the advisement. Thank you, sir.
Sir.
Of staff and
Thank you, Doug.
also, so Grayson, it'll just be to be determined. Once, once they have a few things in place down there where they're comfortable, then, then we would bring that back to council.
So at this point, we do not have a next step?
Our next step would be to wait to hear from that temporary board. So we, we, we need to defer to them on when they're going to be ready to roll off, you know. So what, what they would define as a successful handoff and having the entity ready to hand over to new board members. Okay. Anything, anything further? Okay, we're getting down to a little bit of business. Item seven I, anybody got anything they want to request for future agenda item?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to have a report on accidents and death at controlled intersections.
Okay.
I would like to see.
Talking about traffic accidents?
Yeah, traffic accident report. Because it seems like we are having a large number of deaths within the city limits. I would just like to have a brief report by traffic, I guess. I guess that's you, Donnie.
PD, we are.
Okay, thank you.
Does that, does that report include when alcohol or anything is, I mean, a contributing factor?
Yeah.
Yes, we had, we just had a meeting to discuss some of this stuff recently. So it has cause of accident. That's all PD side of it. We have the traffic side of it, with traffic counts, signal counts, things like that. So we can get something together for you.
Really good. Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Any other items?
I've got two, if I could, please, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
One is I would like, because I, I think Mr. Benson brought up a very good idea about not only the AEDC being televised, but, and I think I've asked this before, but I don't know what the setup is in the new city hall. At one time I thought multiple rooms might have cameras to be able to video meetings outside of just the chambers. But in my mind, now, you know, you, you wouldn't have somebody back there like we do now that would be changing cameras and switching. But I would say as many meetings that we can have that could be recorded, whether it's animal management welfare, whether, whatever media parks and recreation, you know, that type of thing, to, to go for that and to, to do that. Because I think everybody's gotten, you know, you have people in here, but you hear of a lot of people that are watching this on. And if we're, and we broadcast the, the budget meetings. So if we could kind of talk about maybe again, and I don't think this is anything urgent. We need a report in two weeks. We're just moving over there and that type thing. But if we could talk about how maybe that could look and maybe we could do that, you know, going forward as much as we possibly can, I think would be really beneficial. The second item I have is related to what happened in downtown over the weekend. This horrific, this horrific thing that happened. Again, I'm with you, Grayson, and the council of saying, boy, you know, thankful for our first responders, people were there. But we've got to look at this and figure out a way to do something with this. Because this is not the first time that something like this has happened downtown. We have, we have, we have crime that is going on there. What I would like to ask the staff to put together is, and I do think this is, it seems to me, and I may be off, but it seems like most of this is happening in one specific area of downtown. Now, maybe there's some other areas that we're having problems with, and I'd just like to know that. But, you know, and our strategies on what we can do to combat that. Because we've had continued problems with that, of being able to, to provide a safe downtown. And I want it to be safe, not only at two o'clock in the afternoon, but two o'clock in the morning. Now, you, you know, I wouldn't be out there. But, and the other thing is, I don't know if there are any other, because this isn't just about downtown. If there are any other hotspots in town where we continually see to have problems of what those are and how we may be able to address them and, you know, or they're, you know, and I know people, they get liquor licenses, it goes along with the, the property, those types of things. But, you know, I think we need to be looking at how we can, we can make all areas of our community safer, safer, downtown, the central gathering place, but, but any other parts of our community they're having problems.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Colonel Johnson, I, one time, I may be wrong, but I think that, didn't we instruct the police department to have extra patrols on Polk Street on Friday and Saturday night? Are y'all still doing that?
Are we having extra patrols?
Just for Polk Street and that area downtown? I thought we instructed y'all at one time. I may be totally off.
I, I don't remember if it was instruction from the council or what, but we, that's part of what our downtown NPO unit has been doing for the last several years.
Is that correct, Joe?
So we have police officers downtown from what, 10 to two or 10 to three?
Captain Loftus is head of our special operations unit.
Okay.
Our downtown NPO hours, they work Wednesday through Saturday and they work from 6:00 PM to 4:00.
Okay. So for the most part, we do have them down. How many are down there?
There's currently on nighttime NPO, there's two officers currently assigned. We had other officers assigned, but one recently resigned to go to a different department and another one recently transferred to a different shift.
Does that include the supervisor?
In terms of supervisors, I'm sorry, we have three.
Okay.
You have two officers and one supervisor down.
I, I've been asked that question by a lot of citizens if we do have. I thought we did, and I just wanted the citizens to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other requested future agenda items? Okay. You get?
Yeah.
Brian, is that, is that an okay discussion to have, since that wasn't noticed on the agenda?
Yes, statement of fact.
Okay. Okay. On the consent agenda, I need to pull item 8F. It's not ready. Staff still has a little work left to do on 8F. We're going to pull item 8F off not to vote on. I'm going to ask for item 8K to be pulled off and discussed, then voted on, and pull item 8H and I to be discussed together and then voted on. So I would ask for a motion from council.
Wait, wait. Can we take off O2? I've got a couple of questions.
Oh, you got, I'm sorry. What, what else do you need to pull?
Just O.
Eight O.
I just got a couple of questions.
Okay. We'll pull item 8O. Is there any other requests? No other requests, then we would ask for a motion for the rest of the consent agenda as described.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of 8K, 8H, 8I, and 8O.
As well as 8F.
And 8F.
Yep, there we go.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. 8F is pulled for future. 8K, we would go ahead and take up. Mr. Path, do I have anyone that you would like to hand that one off to?
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to Chief Johnson. Who do you have?
Or could we do Chadwick?
Is, is it Chadwick you have? Okay, yes, please.
Lieutenant, how you doing, sir?
Good, Mayor. How are you guys?
Good, good. Specifically, if you can tell us, are we replacing any of these? What kind of technologies in them? And then some of the feedback that I've gotten is, is kind of like the Chinese, you know, camera system. Are we buying American-made? And then are we holding all this data ourselves? What do we use these things for?
Sure. So if you guys will give me just, I won't go long, I promise you. But I'm going to tell you this. We didn't have any technology at this level, not in drones anyway. First flight that we did was September 7th of 2022. Chief had sent me across the United States. Thankfully, we were part of the Public Safety Partnership, also part of Project Safe Neighborhood. They gave us funding to go see what the rest of the United States was doing. One of those was, was the drones. At the time, we didn't have any drones in the PD. Since September 7th of 2022, we've flown 3,923 missions. We've got 859 flight hours. We've got 530 remote flights. And beginning in September of 2022, we began working on the regulatory side with the FAA so that we could do drones as a first responder. The idea of the drones, at least in our world, is that a, a drone can respond to a call if they're properly placed throughout the city within about two minutes. Average time for an officer to arrive at a call is about five to six minutes on a priority call. And the, the idea for us is an officer safety, public safety idea that we have eyes on scene roughly three to four minutes before an officer arrives. The technology is cheap. A lot of departments have been using helicopters to do this for, for decades. I don't think Tom's going to let me get a helicopter. But this, this, this technology, on the other hand, is relatively cheap. Just for, just a little bit of information of what we use them for, just the departments in the city, we've used them for the fire department, Fire Marshal Service, City Marshal Service. We've used them for the EOC. We've used them for the city. We've used it for the airport, water treatment, plant, Atmos, XL. We do mapping with these drones. There's a fire, there's a flood. We've sent our drone and drone pilots at the request of other cities for tornadoes, like we sent to Perryton to, to search for bodies. The capabilities of the drone, to be honest with you, they're probably a little bit exaggerated. The things could stay in the air about 35 to 40 minutes. Battery technologies to, still the thing that, that keeps them from being, you know, crazy useful. It's also the reason why you have to have a bunch of them if you're going to cover the entire city. And I've given to Stephanie the idea of what we're working toward as Jones's first responder, where they're docked. You guys have approved some docks before. To your point, Mayor, of course, we've been, like I said, we've been very slow and methodical in trying to figure out drones in, in our service. I could tell you this, they have definitely saved our officers' lives. We've used them when our officers have been shot at to, to track suspects that are danger to us. We can see people that secrete themselves even in the dark. So they're very handy for us in that respect. Right now, we currently only have nine. We have four that we put on patrol. They're trunk launched. The officers in the field are pilots. We have roughly 20 pilots that are either covered as 107 pilots with the FAA or they're under our certificate of authorization through the FAA. We have a couple Matrice 30Ts that are used by us for trying DFR and building that program out, also for SWAT. We have two Mavic 3Ms which are used by Traffic and CSI to do mapping, so traffic fatalities, homicides, or anything else that the city needs mapped for their purposes. And we have one Avada drone that, that the SWAT team has. It's an indoor interior drone. And those are something that we're trying to scale out a little bit. Just it's better to stick a drone around a corner than, than an officer's head. So we're working towards that. So that's kind of the, the idea of it. A lot of the things, like I said, that we've used them for is city flooding. We use them for looting during the city flooding. We sent it out to XL Power Plant when they thought that the fires, the wildfires were going to possibly affect that plant. To be honest with you guys, sometimes it's the only eyes that, that the people in the EOC have. I mean, it's the only thing that's out there. So we've come to find it, it's invaluable. But to be frankly honest with you, it's, it's not cheap. So that's where we're at. These two from Skydio, every single drone that we have has basically the same capability. My suspicion is, and, and I'm, I'm a fan and a lover of our president, but my, my suspicion is and has been since I started this, that he's going to get rid of DJI. They are, they make up 80% of the market share in the United States of America. But I understand the reservations that they have. Skydio is an American company. It's the biggest American maker of drones in the United States. I've been to their manufacturing facility. I, I could personally talk to their CEO, which is pretty rare. We're also mixed in with a lot of our other technology comes from Axon. Axon and Skydio have a partnership between the two that, to be honest with you, probably by the end of this year, if an officer needs a drone, he'll simply tap his body cam and a drone will go to him with y'all's approval. I mean, that's where the technology's going. And that's what we would, that's what we would like to see. But again, we've slow rode the idea of the technology. Every single one of them have a wide focus cam. It's about 65 megapixel, has a telephoto lens that's about 50 megapixels, and then it has a thermo lens that you can see basically heat. And we can use them for all kinds of things. To find a hotspot in a fire or find a human hiding in a bush. We put them out for missing persons, you name it. I mean, we get all kinds of requests for these drones. So right now, we see that, that a drone can be used in about 50,000 calls that are priority zero, one, and two. And some of our future leanings are, which we haven't brought to you guys yet, some of it's just been the tech side of it. But, but eventually what we would like is to have docks at our fire stations where we can cover most of the city if and when a drone's needed, whether it's mapping, crime, fire, you name it, whatever the city needs that we can bring them to bear.
Okay. Questions for Lieutenant Chadwick?
I've got a couple of questions. How many lives do y'all expect you might save with this technology?
I, I wish I could, now I'm giving you all the slides, Tom, but I will tell you, because we're late to this game, Chula Vista says that it's reduced their, their, the, the crime against our officers by 50%. It says it saves the money just from, from sending a drone to some of these low line calls, like a dog barking at night, ends up being a possum or a cat. Saves a $1.2 million a year just in answering these low calls, allows officers to go to bigger calls, I suppose.
Okay. Is this more invasive than our drones are?
Hundred percent.
Okay. That's, that's the point I wanted to bring.
Yeah.
Is that the cell phone we carry in our pocket tells you, tells somebody where you are. They can find you any day of the week. How many times are you being filmed by somebody walking by? We don't know. So when people worry about invasion or intrusion of privacy, you carry it with you everywhere. That's all I've got to say. Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Can I say something?
Chief?
And it goes directly to what you just talked about, Mr. Sherlin. We have heard the concerns from the community, both in these public council meetings and out in the, out in the, in the neighborhoods. And we share those same concerns. At the end of the day, and this is a thing that I think most people overlook, is we're police officers, we're also citizens of this city and this country. And let's face it, this country, because of the way we were birthed through a revolution from a tyrannical government, is distrustful of our government. It's in our DNA. There's no way around that because of our history. We share that concern as well. So what, what you're saying is absolutely true. The concerns that Cassie, that you have, I apologize, I don't remember your last name, but thank you for introducing us to, to the folks out there so we can kind of try to alleviate some of those concerns. We've had catless meetings and we will continue to have them on, because really at the end of the day, we're not talking about the technology. We're not talking about the drones. We're not talking about the cameras. We're talking about the men and women that are going to operate them, that have control of them. That's what we're talking about. I, I will have been at the police department for 37 years in April. I have seen technological changes from the computers in the cars to cell phones to cameras. I have seen technological changes from the computers in the cars to cell phones, to cameras, to tasers. I've seen the technology advance. It's frightening now because it's coming so much faster. And Mr. Gagnon can testify that, how much faster it's coming. But Mr. Simpson, to your point, when you talk about the future agenda item and are we experiencing hotspots in town somewhere else? That is where we have been heading since Chief Drain was here, data-driven policing. Trying to, instead of just allocating by holding our thumb up in the air and see which way the wind's blowing, we're actually using the data that we collect. This will help us do that, the drones, the cameras, things like that. Lieutenant Chadwick talked about incidents where we can point to specific incidents and talk about how that's helped us save probably an officer, certainly some citizens. I just want to give one quick example of how we're using these drones. It was one of the very first ones that we ever sent up, the first one I'm aware of. It was a missing toddler. Mom calls, says my child got out of the house. I don't know where they're at. That's a terrifying ordeal for a mother or anybody to go through. In years past, before the drones, we would have tied up probably half a shift over there, starting from the house and working our way out, canvassing that neighborhood, going through our Amber Alert protocol to try to find this little girl. We sent a drone up and within just a couple of minutes, using the camera that detects heat, we found that she had crawled up under a bush out in the front yard and gone to sleep, taken a nap. She's perfectly fine. That is how that usually happens. 99.99% of missing kids, that's what's happened. She's crawled somewhere and is down. But I'll tell you where that wasn't the case. It was in 1992 when Audrey Reeves, five-year-old little girl, was snatched off of one of our streets, walking to the park. She was taken away, sexually assaulted, murdered, her little body stuffed in an ice chest and thrown in a dumpster like a piece of trash. We didn't have the technology available to us then. I don't know if it would have made a difference, anyway. But if you're asking me if I wished I'd have had it, you bet your ass I'd, you bet your life, I wish we'd have had that technology back then. We share your concerns that you have. We share everybody's concerns. It comes down to the men and women operating it. Are we hiring the right people? Are we training them the right way? Are we setting the right policies? Are we holding people accountable when they violate those? That's what it comes down to. Shane talked about going to different organizations and seeing how they're set up, and we have been doing that, we'll continue doing that. But we now have departments coming to us to see how we're doing. We're not even 100% operational yet. We have departments from across the country coming here to see how we're set up and how we're launching this. That's something that you can be proud of as a council. That's something that the citizens can be proud of. I want to thank you guys for tonight. Very entertaining, as it always is. But the passion that you approach your responsibilities with, that's the passion we approach ours. We don't take that lightly, the trust the citizens have put into us. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Chief, we appreciate you. Lieutenant, thank you. Maybe for some of those that are watching and have concerns, the delineation or the line could be kind of that AI technology, you know, where I think I have a lot of comfort in knowing it's the men and women that are working that. Just like that pistol on your hip is a dangerous weapon, but I trust that you know how to handle it. And so maybe that weapon isn't necessarily the issue, but if you said that weapon was going to be controlled by AI and maybe it was just programmed and there would be something there that we really wouldn't control, maybe that's the line we want to draw right now. So from this councilman in this seat, I think, you know, we appreciate the utilization for technology for fighting crime, but we want it to come underneath your authority and be driven through personnel.
Well, I appreciate that. And one thing I failed to mention is we're having an open house for our ARC Center. We've notified, made a public notice, but we're fixing to put that out. So we'll have several different ones for different groups of people, but certainly the citizens will be included in that. Come up, see what we've done, what they've paid for, and how we're going to be using it.
ARC is Amarillo Regional Crime Center. And so we're trying to feed a lot of information to our public about how this is our data. It stays within our local law enforcement. You know, we're working with our Sheriff's Department and other law enforcement entities that are here. And this is not uploaded to the cloud. It's not something that can be speculated on. It's being managed very well. So I think this is great. It would be something where you're able to continue to engage, and I know we have citizens that are thinking this way. So thank you for everything. Thank you for your words.
Thank you, sir.
Let's take up H I and, or H and I as well. So we've got two signs here, or multiple signs, sorry. I was going to vote on them all together if you think we're okay. So I was just going to get discussions out of the way and then get one motion to get the rest of them. So Ms. Kohler, are you going to come up and educate us on these?
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, you're welcome. So these two items go together. The first one is acceptance of a grant agreement from the Texas Historical Commission. I know there's a question about grant funding being paused currently. These are state funds. This is coming from a state agency. These are specifically earmarked for the Panhandle through that agency. There's $500,000 there. There's a list of eligible projects, and it's proven hard for our community to access these funds. The eligibility for them because of the historic requirements is challenging. So there are three signs. That was one of the questions, what are the signs? These are all local historic, well-known businesses, the Natt, Cattlemen's Club, and East Ridge Lanes. These are designated as historical signs and are eligible for this particular funding. I know that it does seem like a lot of money, but these are being restored to specific historic preservation standards. So we're working very closely with the Texas Historical Commission. They would not approve this funding if we didn't meet that higher level of standard for restoration. And I think the other question was why neon? Well, the original material is very important in the historic preservation process. We actually originally drafted the scope with LED and received some resistance from the Texas Historical Commission on that. So we're looking at ways to possibly do like clear plastic covers to protect the neon or potentially help the business owners have a second set of neon tubing made as part of the grant program. And we'll just have to see what happens with our weather. But we share that concern and are looking for ways to mitigate that. And so I think that addresses, I guess I just wanted to say one more thing. I know it's just three businesses, but I think we should be thinking about this as an investment in Route 66 as a tourism asset for the community. I think this is really going to impact the entire corridor in addition to three well-deserving local businesses for the city.
Questions for Ms. Kohler?
So you said you are looking at, I mean, I share some concerns, the insurance guy, right, of hail. So you're looking at some ways to protect that, because I think neon, the first hailstorm we get, I mean, to Mike Fisher's point, that's trashed. And I guess this is a match, right? We're going to put up $145,000 in its grant match, correct?
Correct.
I'm just looking at $145,000 for a sign that the first hailstorm, it's done. Like, they're just gone. I would like to see that we're going to do something if the Historical Preservation Society would say, hey, this is, it's okay to... I mean, I know we don't want to detract from the way it looks, but I mean, there's a protection issue and an investment issue here of going, hey, we got a $145,000. And I mean, this spring, it could be gone.
Right.
Doesn't make any sense. So I would say if we can, like, really push for some type of protection of that neon, because it just doesn't make sense, not in our climate.
Noted. We will. Yeah. We, I think probably the clear cover might be the easiest and the most cost-effective. It does detract a little bit from the historic restoration, but I think that's the smartest path.
Are the ones that we're replacing, are they trashed right now?
Oh, yeah. There's no...
Nothing left?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Kohler?
How come we chose the Cattlemen's Club and East Ridge Bowling Alley?
So there, the Texas Historical Commission has a survey. And so the signs are actually listed separately on that survey than the buildings themselves. So in order to even qualify for the funding, they had to be in that survey. So we had kind of a limited number of signs to work with. I think we started with nine. And we went to the business owners, asking if they would be willing to participate in this, in this program with us. And so these were the three of that original nine that were willing to partner with us through this process. And so the business owners have to agree to a 30-year easement. So these signs have to stay looking just like they do the day we finish the restoration for 30 years. And they do have to carry full replacement cost insurance on them.
Have we done a traffic survey to know how many people would see these signs that are basically out of town and maybe even in town both?
No, not yet. But we could definitely work to do some before and after, you know, before the signs are restored, what those traffic counts are like. And then once they're relit, we've talked about just measuring the impact to the businesses themselves.
I just would think we would want to put them at the highest traffic level possible. And I'm not sure what the traffic flow out to Cattlemen's Club is or East Ridge Bowling Alley when, you know, you start with Sixth Street here, go through Old San Jacinto, which I know it gets a lot of traffic. And that would be the only thing I'm concerned about is I would want them to be in the highest visibility places in town. And I would suggest maybe getting the traffic flow and see what we got going where. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions?
No, sir.
Council, would you guys like to take these individual? So I think we probably would. I guess item 8O would be the other one for discussion. Who do we have on that one, Grayson? I'm trying to get ahead of myself.
Mr. Kishuba.
So, Mr. Kishuba, if you'll walk us through that one, then I think, Council, I think we bring those up individualized.
Mayor and Council, Michael Kishuba, Director of Parks and Rec. So this item is for the design of parking lots at both John Stiff and Rick Klein. This was, they were selected through the RFQ process for professional services. So we actually did an RFQ number 303-25. And the whole goal is to bring those park spaces more compliant with our parking issues. So Rick Klein, the issue we run into there is the south side of those soccer fields is just dirt, which is, doesn't meet our development standards. And then the issues we're running into at John Stiff is really traffic-related. So we have issues when we've got those youth sports groups out there, and we've got a lot of congestion. I think last year, we ended up, APD was towing cars and writing a bunch of citations. So it becomes a public safety issue. So we would be proposing one on the south side to kind of help facilitate for those five fields on the south and then some additional parking on the north side for the three football soccer fields on the north side. So really just to meet the needs of the current users and address some of those development standards concerns.
I really just, I just have one question. And since you did an RFQ, I mean, I'm guessing, it was just confusing to me why we use an architectural firm, not a civil engineer when we're just dealing with parking lots and traffic flow and that kind of thing. I don't, it just seems like we would overpay for an architectural firm.
So it was actually for landscape architectural services. So that was the RFQ. They had submitted their name as a part of that process. But on their team, they do have MEPs, they do have structures, they do have civil engineers and landscape architects. So they have that team available to address any of those concerns. So.
So through the RFQ process, they were the, they were the best?
They were the, yeah.
Okay. That's really all I had, just didn't make sense in my brain.
Councilman Sherlin?
Thank you, sir.
Hang on, Michael.
Yeah. The way, I look at things a little different. You probably know that by now.
What?
But if you find a good guy with a blade that's been in business about 20 years, you could put four stakes to the ground and say, I want a parking lot here. And he could, he could do it with his blade. I mean, spending that kind of money to have a parking lot, I just think it's high. But that's me. Thank you.
Okay. Council, do we have any questions on item 8O? Okay. Would ask for a motion on 8K, please.
I move to approve item 8K as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second on 8K. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Going to group 8H and I together, ask for a motion on those two.
Move to approve item 8H and 8I as presented.
Second.
All in favor on 8H and I, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Ask for a motion on 8O.
Move to approve item 8O as presented.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Consent agenda is now complete. We'll move forward to the non-consent. I think I've got Brady coming forward with some public hearings. We'll push through those. We'll probably end up taking one more recess before we get through the whole thing. 9A, sir, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. 9A is the public hearing and first reading of ordinance 8178. This is considering the rezoning of Lot 10, Block 5, Edge Hill Edition, Unit 6. This is in Randall County, Texas, inside the city. Plus one half of all bounding streets, alleys, and publicways to change from Planned Development District 89A to Planned Development District 89B to construct a new Autozone on the site. This is in the vicinity of Georgia Street and Southwest 35th. And the applicant is Wesley Berlin for the Furman Family Partnership. The applicant is proposing this new Autozone. It is replacing a shopping center that previously burned down and the site is currently vacant. Since this site had a specific site plan associated with it with the planned development that is the reason for the request, the item was found to comply with City Plan 2045 and the assigned place type for the lot. And this proposed site will feature a few differences and improvements over the previous shopping center that occupied this site. Autozone is going to provide full landscaping. The previous site did not. The building will be smaller, and there will be increased setbacks along the east and south property lines, which those are the property lines closest to nearby single-family homes. Additionally, the signs will not be allowed on the south, the east sides of the building to protect those homes. There is only one driveway for public access on 35th. The second drive is a fire department-only access point. That way, we're limiting the traffic on 35th next to those homes. And access between this site and the shopping center to the north will be maintained to allow continued cross-access. We did send notices as required by state law. One call in opposition was received. It was noted that the comments in the opposition letter, which were included in your packet, were primarily related to the existing lease between Autozone and their current landlord and were not within the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission or a zoning case. And the letter was provided, though, within your packet. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this item with a 7-0 vote.
Questions, Council, for Brady?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. At this time, I'll open a public hearing on item 9A. Do I have anyone here to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one, we get to close that public hearing, and I would entertain a motion on 9A.
Move to adopt ordinance number 8178 as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second from place three. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 9B, Mr. Kendrick.
Plus the adjacent 11-foot-wide vacated portion of Grand Street, lots 6 through 10 of Block 377, lots 13 through 24 of Block 398, lots 1 through 5, plus the east half of Vacated Alley of Block 144, all those located within Mir's Edition in Potter County, Texas, plus one half of all bounding streets, alleys, and publicways to change from Light Industrial District to Central Business District. The vicinity is southeast Eighth Avenue and South Johnson Street. And the applicants are the City of Amarillo and Curtis Sinclair for BG CG Real Estate LLC. And this rezoning case started with a applicant at 701 South Johnson that owns the warehouse here east of Hodge Town. They are proposing to open a restaurant and event center in this building. However, being that it is zoned light industrial, that means that they would have to provide onsite parking. And given that the building essentially occupies the entirety of the site and there are no other lots in the area that could be purchased for parking, that would make the project very difficult to complete. So that is the reason for the original request. In analyzing this staff, P&amp;Z and City Management saw this as a good opportunity to include the city-owned properties that are owned there east of Hodge Town. to include the city-owned properties that are owned there east of Hodge Town. And there's a few reasons for that, and they're on the screen now. The blue properties are the city-owned properties, and the one in tan there east of the ballpark is the original applicant's property. Um, we are proposing to rezone all this to central business district, and there are a couple, um, benefits that we see in that. Currently, um, a lot of these properties in downtown, uh, between Hodge Town and the railroad tracks, they are 100% lot coverage lots, meaning the buildings occupy the entirety of the lots, which means there's not a lot of room for parking, and parking would have to be provided for all those lots. Um, by expanding the footprint of the area that is zoned central business district, future property owners closer to the railroad tracks would have the opportunity to also request central business district in the future as there's been an increase in, um, interest in development in this area, and parking is often the hurdle to redevelopment in this portion of downtown. So by also including the city-owned properties in this request, um, it opens the door for more property owners that are adjacent, would be adjacent to that property to also be able to request central business district. So in our eyes, it could help spur some additional redevelopment in that area as I personally, you know, have, we've met with other, others that have wanted to develop in this area, and that parking issue is often the big one that comes up. And they would also, um, the request would also bring a number of those city-owned properties into zoning conformance, as currently there's several of them that are 100% lot coverage lots, meaning the building occupies the entirety of the lot, which means those are technically legal non-conforming at the moment. So it would bring some of our city-owned properties also into conformance, um, with zoning regulations. Um, additionally, um, if we were to expand that footprint of the, um, central business district, um, we would probably see additional development in this area, and it would also open the door for maybe some mixed use or live-work dwelling type opportunities in the future as light industrial district only allows for apartments and manufactured homes. So overall, um, the current use of the buildings that the city owns that are proposed for rezoning, those uses would be allowed to continue. I coordinated with Jerry Danforth on that and confirmed that the way the city is using the buildings would still be legally allowed in central business district, and he confirmed that that would be the case based on how they're being used today. And if the city ever, you know, wanted to redevelop or potentially sell any of these properties, it would also hypothetically make them more marketable as anybody wanting to buy one of those sites wouldn't have to provide parking for the site. So, um, gets back to that development barrier that we see here sometimes in this area with the parking issue. So that's a brief rundown on the request. I know the transmittal memo had a lot more in there, but those are the major highlights. Planning and zoning commission agreed that this is a logical, um, continuation of zoning and development patterns, uh, for this area in downtown and thinks that it could spur some additional development in this area. We did, uh, send notices as required by state law. Uh, no comments were received on this request, and, uh, planning and zoning commission did recommend approval with a 7-0 vote.
Very good, Mr. Kendrick. At this time, uh, I'm gonna open a public hearing on item 9B. Do I have anyone here to speak for or against this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Kendrick on this one?
Brady, is this in the downtown tiers? Is it included in there?
I believe so, yes.
So all those buildings that you said that this would affect or could affect, it's in the tiers?
Yes.
Okay. Just thank you.
It's a good question. Any other questions for Brady? Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Um, entertain a motion on 9B.
Move to adopt ordinance 8179 as presented.
Second. Uh, motion and a second from place one. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 9C, Brady, are you up on this one?
I'm not.
Oh, that's Keshuba. Come on back.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Could I ask one idea, maybe? I noticed that, uh, uh, John Ward's wife and a friend of hers were here earlier. I, I think they didn't stay around. Uh, I just wonder if maybe, uh, cause I didn't know if any other people might have wanted to be here.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know whether we might be able to look at doing this at a different time, so she could be here for this. And then maybe if we reschedule it to do it, uh, one action item really earlier, so if, if she and friends and others would like to be here, that may be, may be more appropriate.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That's, that's, uh, I think, very considerate and appropriate. We, um, didn't get to the item as early in the evening as we had liked to. I would think that it would be go ahead, it would be good to go ahead, since we may have other members of the public that would like to hear this. We allow you to do your presentation, give the update, and then, uh, we could just table this and put it up for the following meeting, since there's no rush on this.
Yep. Mayor and council, Michael Keshua, Director of Parks and Recreation. Uh, the item before you is Resolution 1-28-25-2, uh, and it's a, a resolution to reconsider the renaming of Medical Center Park in honor of Mr. John Ward. Uh, I've got a couple slides I'm just gonna go through. So in terms of the process, uh, we were directed by council to investigate some naming opportunities, uh, for Mr. Ward. Uh, staff reviewed, uh, council guidance, and, uh, we shared it with the board. So these were the guidelines that we reviewed it for, uh, in terms of the criteria that are required to name something after an individual who has served as a city official or as a city employee. Uh, we feel that Mr. Ward has met multiple of those criteria. Only one of them has to be met. Um, one of the things that we did with our park board as we reviewed this is we looked at, uh, facilities that could be renamed. We really looked at the bigger parks, so things like regional parks, community parks, and then, uh, other city-owned facilities. Uh, what we did was we looked at the, the park name, and then if it had been previously renamed, obviously it had been previously renamed, we're not gonna consider that. Um, and before we had done this, I'd actually reached out to Mrs. Ward to get some feedback from her as to what her recommendation may be, uh, as we present it to the park board. Uh, from this list, Medical Center Park was one of the ones that she had recommended. Uh, the next, obviously, the next one is the community parks, the ones that were named, unnamed, uh, and then obviously some other city-owned facilities, uh, that report to the Parks Department. Uh, Comanche Trail was the other one that was considered for, uh, the potential renaming. Again, Mrs. Ward had initially indicated support for either Medical Center and/or Comanche. So we, we shared this information, we presented it to a park board, uh, on December 11th, and this was just a discussion item to get them thinking about the potential for renaming a facility. Again, we went through this presentation with all of those locations, um, and the, so the board decided to, that we go ahead and post notice. One of the things we have to do is post 15-day notice. So we posted 15-day notice of both Comanche Trail and Medical Center to make sure we were And then, uh, they also scheduled the, the park board meeting to do a public hearing on January 15th. So on January 15th, the board again reviewed that proposal. We walked through basically the same list of locations. Um, again, the two that we had posted notice for were Comanche Trail and also Medical Center Park. Uh, we had two citizens that did speak. One of them was Mrs. Ward, she did attend. Um, and honestly, I think the board was leaning towards Comanche Trail at first, um, but after hearing a story that she told the board, the board shifted and was really focused on Medical Center Park. It was a very touching, uh, story. Um, and I think she wanted her husband to be recognized beyond just the golf courses. He really loved the community, wanted to serve the community well. Um, and so that was her recommendation, is medical center's a little bit more visible for all users, not just golfers. Um, and so the recommendation before you is to rename Medical Center Park in honor of Mr. John Ward. So, uh, with that, I'd be happy, happy to answer any questions. One of the things I will say, uh, is that i- in the resolution, you can get a list of some of the things that he accomplished during his tenure, um, whether it's the three new libraries, the downtown bus terminal, six new parks, two new golf courses, tennis center, police and court buildings, three new fire stations, fire administration building, youth baseball complex. Also, uh, the ADC was created, airport terminal building was renovated, and the city's water supply reservoir was guaranteed for 300 years. Uh, also, the 911 communications district was initiated. The Amarillo Zoo was expanded, Northwest Texas Hospital was constructed and sold, and downtown revitalization organization Center City was established. So, um, significant impact on the community. As a board and as staff, we were honored to consider, uh, renaming this in his honor. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or, uh, any other council direction.
Questions, council? Let's do all that again when we can invite Mrs. Ward back to get to be a part of that. Okay? So, uh, council would ask for us to table that if somebody agrees.
Make a motion to table Resolution number 0128252. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll take it up in the next council meeting, as long as that works with, uh, her schedule.
We will have to check on public noticing as well. We'll have to renotice the public hearing. It's gonna be a tight turnaround, so we'll check those dates first thing in the morning and then work with Michael on Ms. Ward's schedule.
Yeah, we appreciate that. All right. Everybody doing okay? Y'all wanna keep pushing, or y'all wanna take a break and come back?
Take a break.
Okay, let's take a 10-minute recess, we'll come back. Thank you. Okay, let's take a 10-minute recess. We'll come back. Thank you. You know, Donna wants us to go ahead and improve it. We knew, we were there because, you know, we knew the agenda would go on. They're actually in a restaurant right now and it's coming up. So she says, please just go ahead and improve it. And then I think they're traveling, so if we want to go back and handle the public here. And maybe what we could do is at a future meeting, maybe in the new city council, that we just...
Do a recognition.
Maybe, because to be honest with you, I would like the public to hear the story that she told. I don't even know what it is, but maybe we could do a little bit, you know, a special in honor of him in the new city.
I think that's a great idea. Mr. Path?
What I would say real quick, we were just talking a little bit ago. Part of this is a public hearing, and we may have lost some individuals who may have been here to talk about that. So I know it's a table, but we recommend that you move to the next meeting or so, because we did announce this table, then individuals could have left. And so I don't know if that could be the case or not, but that's always a risk.
Okay. Well, I think we probably better take that under advisement. So if you'll let them know we apologize, I think we got a procedural issue.
Yeah, and I think if, I guess, maybe they're okay with approving it. We can check the situation and see what happens in the future. So, sorry about that.
Maybe we could do a recognition when we bring it back and still do that, because I think that would be good to be able to present something. I don't know that we really had all that worked out. Okay, item 9D is next up on our list. Mr. Nelson, if you'll come up here and work through these bylaws, or at least maybe just present. You don't necessarily have to go through them. I think we may have one, one item.
Well, I do have John Atkins here, who assisted with the process of rewriting the amended bylaws. But just to let y'all know, the AEDC Board of Directors did review and approve the amended bylaws on January 15th and moved them forward for y'all's consideration. And I know John would be happy to answer...
Very good.
...any questions that y'all have about the bylaws.
Well, let's do this. I know I'm in possession of a piece of paper here from Councilman Kraft with a suggestion. So I'm going to turn it over to Kraft and see if he'd like Atkins to come forward, or if you're good just moving on your red line.
Absolutely. I'm trying to find the section here in the bylaws. So just had some public feedback after our last meeting about one section inside the bylaws, and it was pertaining to basically confidential information. See if I can find it real quick. Sorry. There it is. So just in that section that we had talked at with Mr. Hyde and Mr. Atkins together, there was one, there was actually two proposed changes. One came from Mr. McWilliams and one came from George Hyde. And I placed the one that's in front of you on the dais that says "public information." That's one from Hyde. And then we received the one from Mr. McWilliams on January 22nd. So...
Okay.
I can read the change out loud?
I think so. I think if you go ahead and read it out loud, and then if we could get any advisement that we need.
Okay.
Oh, I apologize. I'm going to go ahead and officially call us back in session. So, thank you. So, item 9D is the discussion. We are back in session. Councilman Kraft, would you read your change?
Yep. So it just states, "Public information, any information which is subject to public disclosure by an applicable law, including the Texas Public Information Act, as amended, is presumed to be information which is releaseable to the public if requested in accordance with the act. All information which is determined to be confidential by any applicable law will not be disclosed to the public unless it is ordered by court to do so or directed to do so by the Texas Attorney General's Office, and which is not appealed to the higher court until a final judgment is rendered. The corporation reserves the right to exercise the discretionary authority conferred upon it by the act to determine if circumstances warrant to withhold information from disclosure to the public until a final letter ruling or appellate order requires the corporation to release the information." And so that would just replace the confidential information.
Be Article 5, Section 1?
Yep.
Councilman?
So Article 5, Section 1 would be replaced as presented here in front of council on the dais, brought forward by Councilman Kraft. We probably would ask, do you have a copy of this? Would you like to read it?
I've not seen that, no.
Here you go. And then if you have any change or recommendation, and then, Councilman Kraft, if you want to go to the heart of the issue of what you're trying to accomplish with that, like what your concern was and why you feel the need to put it in.
I mean, really, the only reason why is we had some citizen feedback. And then plus two, I feel like this section is a little cumbersome as far as when it talks about just all the stuff. Clues, but element to materials, non-public information. State law really already speaks to basically public information. So if it's going to be confidential, it's going to be, it's going to be determined by the AG's office before it's released.
Mr. Atkins, any concerns with what he's putting out there?
Not at all, Mayor. The pre-existing section had a qualifier unless otherwise required by law, but I get how the casual reader might see that and not, not read into it what it ought to be read into, which is that the Public Information Act, of course, you know, governs over anything that we could put in these bylaws.
Very good.
That's the only suggestion I would make to amend on that.
Okay. Any other questions, suggestions, concerns on the bylaws as presented? Probably just, you know, somewhat of a voice of approval from you. I think you've had quite a hand in this. You guys really, along with Mr. Fairley, worked these over. Didn't necessarily take what Hyde had kind of spit out originally. And so I think you and your board would agree that these are workable documents. They go to the heart of the vision of the AEDC and are keeping everybody in line with what we accomplished through the articles.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any concerns that you have being their representation?
Only, just real quick, John, just one thing I just thought of when I was reading this. In respects to, I think it was Mr. Fairley at our EDC meeting, I noticed in here there's wording about the NDA on the original bylaws. I don't know if that needed to stay or not, because that was one recommended change that the board had approved. Talking about the NDAs, President of Corporation, my sign any nondisclosure and confidential agreements provided by prospective companies. I'm not sure if that was the piece that we had discussed in our board meeting, or if that had to do with the... We're talking about NDAs.
And LOIs were...
LOIs, yeah. That may be in a whole different section, though, so that's the only question I had here.
I think that's, I think that's correct. We, we do mention NDAs and LOIs separately. Let me find, see if I can point you to that. I noticed it earlier today, in fact.
Yeah, I think it may be in a different section.
See where I... Sorry, give me just a moment. Need a word search feature.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, here. Earlier in Article 4, so if you're looking at the markup, it'd be on page 10, Section 5, where we mention, the language reads that the President of the EDC can enter into NDAs, nondisclosure confidentiality, and similar arrangements with business prospects without board approval. It further goes on to provide that the entry by the corporation of LOIs, letters of intent, memorandum of understanding, and similar arrangements must be approved by the board. Is that the section you were thinking about?
Yes, I think that would probably have to stay and then just add this edit in there. That was it?
It's a different section. Right. Yeah, I think Doug's saying, so the Article 5, Section 1, that would be replaced by this new language, includes a similar mention about the execution of NDAs, but I believe Section 5 and Article 4 adequately cover that circumstance.
Okay. There we go. That's all I have.
Okay. Anything from any other council member? Mr. Atkins, thank you. Appreciate you voicing your opinion on it. At this time, I think, counsel, we are actually complete with those bylaws. So, Councilman Kraft, you might make a motion on that to approve as you've redirected.
Move to approve resolution number 1-28-25-3 as amended.
Second? Have a motion and a second on 9D. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a 5-0 vote.
Thank you, counsel. And Mayor, just procedurally, these are prepared as if they'll be executed by the Secretary of the EDC Board. And so I'll take this council's approval to insert the suggested language to replace Article 5, Section 1. Take this back to the board for final adoption and execution at the next meeting.
That'd be great. And then I'm sure we can record the document wherever we need to here as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Mr. Nelson, you want to hang out for 9E?
Yes, sir.
If you're prepared to present that, we are walking into 9E, which is a consideration of the budget.
Yes, sir. So based on council's feedback, staff has gone in and created a budget that matches the City of Amarillo's outline, their style, the whole thing. So I'm going to go through this quickly. Happy to answer any questions, but basically, our budget is broken up into several sections. So the first is operations, because we allocate 12% of our revenues to operations. Our anticipated revenue is $3.24 million for the year that we're currently in. We've got expenditures and personnel of $1.228,720, general supplies of $20,000, contractual services of $158,500, repair and maintenance of $18,000, rentals of $105, other charges of $62,500, and insurance of $75,000. Total expenditures, $1.667,720. That would leave a net income in that fund of $1,572,280. The second section of our budget is the business development section. That's page three. That is $800,000. That's broken down among eight categories. Those eight categories are also delineated on your exhibit, which is the last page of your document, in very specific detail. So we've got marketing support of $150,000, content development $25,000, collateral materials of $30,000, business retention of $60,000, workforce initiatives of $60,000, marketing, technology, and software of $45,000, business development of $360,000, and local market development of $70,000, totaling $800,000. Again, your exhibit gives you much more detail if you're interested in looking at that. The TPRDC contractual relationship, I know y'all are probably not as familiar with that as you may want to be, but basically, AEDC signs an agreement with TPRDC, which is another nonprofit corporation that delivers the SBA 504 loan program. That program has 1.35 employees. It pays 35% of my cost, and then we have a full-time employee that does this. So that budget is $237,000, and it's broken down, $194,000 in personnel, basically $31,000 of contractual, and about $9,000 of insurance and other. So total expenditures of $237. So it's basically a reimbursement agreement. So the expenses that that entity has are charged through AEDC, and then TPRDC reimbursed AEDC for those expenses. Finally is the project budget. That's page six of your handout. Revenues are projected at $24,805,385. Expenditures are broken down through repair and maintenance for $50,000, project fund expenses of $570,000, depreciation, which is non-cash, debt service, the interest on the debt service, which is expensed at $699,680. Company projects, which is, this is new information probably for y'all, of this year, we expect $26,219,000 worth of company project expenditures, and then other incentive projects of $9,751,503. Total expenditures potentially this year are $37,291,83. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about any of that.
Questions, counsel? I know we've been very familiar with this and worked through it for several weeks. Nothing from Mr. Nelson? Okay.
Only one question. What happens to the money on his budget for CBMR that was in there?
It, it goes away. So that was a $20 million obligation on our part when those performance measurements weren't met, and the board decided not to extend the timeframe to and the board decided not to extend the timeframe to allow them to move forward potentially in the future. That obligation goes away.
Anything further, Kraft?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nelson. We'll entertain a motion on a budget, finally.
I make a motion, we accept resolution number oh one dash two eight dash two five dash four.
Second?
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a five oh vote. Pardon me, we will move on to item nine F. Mr. Path, do you, do you have anything for this, or Councilman Simpson, can I hand this one over to you, sir?
This was requested by Councilor Simpson, they put my name on there, but I'm going to refer to Councilor Simpson.
Okay.
So from our earlier discussion, the new protocols that we're going to put in place is, any of us are free to call any outside counsel up to the point of $1,000. And then after those conversations, if there's a feeling that we need more work done by the outside counsel, then it would be brought back to the full counsel.
Yeah, I don't mind rereading it, just to make sure we kind of have it down. So, step one would be to contact Grayson for the requested item. See if you can get satisfaction there through city manager. Step two would then be to go to the city attorney for that item. So example would be Grayson says, well, let's talk to Brian, I don't know. Step three, if you're dissatisfied with that opinion or that outcome, you have the opportunity to engage with any counsel that we have a letter of engagement with. That may mean you have to bring a letter of engagement back to counsel at that time, just like we did with Hyde Kelly. You then would engage with that counsel for up to $1,000 worth of attorney fees that's already pre-approved and set forth, you know, protocol. And then that would hopefully get you the education that you need in order to see if it's something that you'd like to bring back to counsel for counsel to be updated on, aware of, and then allow you to move forward with an expected budget. So you may have, you know, $40,000 or $50,000 worth of legal fees out of that $250,000 budget going to not Hyde Kelly, let's say it happened to be the Underwood firm. And that was their estimated amount, and you're good to work up into that, counsel knows what's going on. And, and that basically ends that, the fullness of that protocol.
So, but counsel, but before we get to the point, if it's $40,000 or $50,000, have we looked to say, well, because I may come up with something, and then I may call the attorney of my choosing, talk to him for three days and run up a bill, but is there a cap to what we're going to spend? Or how do we monitor the spending?
Sure, so my issue would be that you are approving that attorney to give you a cursory review of up to $1,000. And then, based on their proposal coming back to counsel, that would set the amount of the expenditure.
Okay, and we would look at that and say.
So let's say that you had an item that you wanted pink fire hydrants all throughout the city. And so you go to Grayson, and he says, I don't know that pink fire hydrants are legal. So y'all go and you talk to Brian, and sure enough, Brian tells you, pink fire hydrants are illegal, you can't have them within the city limits, but you don't, you don't agree. So you call, let's just say XYZ law firm, you say, hey, do we have a letter of engagement? They say, we do. All right, I have a $1,000 budget for you to give me a legal opinion on pink fire hydrants, legal or illegal? Well, they provide that for you, so you bring that back to this council, you put it on an agenda, and they provide, they provide a budget. For $20,000, we think we can show you how you can work fire hydrants into your community. And then if we vote it down, you don't get to go and spend that money, you got to have the body's approval. We don't think pink fire hydrants are important, and so we're not going to let you spend 20 grand on it, sorry. It also means that if you did the additional legwork, it probably wasn't going to pass anyway. So I think that goes to your good stewardship.
Yeah, I would say this, with that, I think that, that, that looks at exactly what we're trying to achieve on the transparency and watching, and that there are guardrails that we talked about in place. So from my perspective at this point, I'm more than willing to take this item off. I think we've come up with a solution that's a, it's a point to begin with. We may get into it and realize maybe some things need to be altered, but at this point, I would be willing to, to say, let's, let's take nine F off, and let's put in these new protocols and get them, get them, get them in writing so we all know what the playbook that we're playing by and move forward with it.
Sure, so counsel, you have any discussion on pulling item nine F?
I agree.
Agree? All good, okay, counsel, take no action on item nine F, and then I'm going to hand this very thorough legal document here to someone that could type it up and put it on some, or some city letterhead, and I think we would choose to adopt that, if needed. Okay, item nine G, Chief, you going to walk us through this one one more time?
Yes, sir. This is a continuation of the, of the previous discussions on purchasing these fire trucks, so that's what I'm bringing here for you guys today, walking through what this purchase looks like and seeking y'all's approval. I think it'd be important to, I want to do a quick review of our most common fire trucks that are out there, so the community sees, and that you guys see, so we know what we're talking about, we have a lot of different apparatus. The first one up there on the top left is our engines, that's a fire engine, it's a workhorse fire truck that goes to all incident types. These trucks are equipped and staffed to also provide advanced life support service, including paramedic service on many of our engines. On the top right, that's a ladder truck. These trucks also go to all incident types. Their primary response is structural fires and other types of rescue incidents. These trucks also are, can provide advanced life support. On the bottom left is a ladder, a platform ladder truck. It responds just like every, like a regular ladder truck, but it has a platform at the tip of the ladder. That platform provides a safe service working area for, to perform numerous tasks, including the most important task of victim rescue. Down in the bottom center are our grass rigs. Grass rigs are located throughout the city, and they're equipped for the wildland, for wildland firefighting and for the wildland environment. And then finally, on the bottom right, are our command units, those are where our battalion chiefs ride in, and they're the incident command vehicle that's on scene, that's who's usually going to run the scene, if you see that. They are equipped with enhanced communication equipment and also have supplies primarily for fire incidents. Over the past year, we conducted a comprehensive fleet evaluation. Initial discussions began with a city fleet team and later progressed with conversations with city management, focusing on how the fire fleet placement schedule could align with the overall city fleet replacement plans. This approach considered escalating challenges of extended build times and rising costs. While we were having those discussions over the past year, we also were looking at national standards, other departments, and trends throughout the fire service on fire fleet replacement schedules and how their folks were handling, especially battling some of these rising costs. The evaluation focused on age, mileage, hours, repair and ownership costs. Other areas we assessed were fire truck manufacturers and vendors. We also looked at our fire truck specifications, we wanted to ensure that our, our specs for our trucks and our equipment were matched up with our operational needs. We went through and evaluated seven through 15-year replacement cycles, and we concluded that the 10-year replacement cycle is the most balanced replacement cycle that will allow us to increase operational reliability and have plans in place to rotate our fleet sooner to reduce repair costs. Our research revealed that years six through 10 are on average some of the most expensive cost of ownership years for engines and ladders. With a 10-year rotation, we anticipate reducing repair costs and overall lowering the cost of ownership by placing the newest trucks at our busiest stations for the first four years, and then rotating them to a slower station for the next four years, and then their final two years of that 10 years of service that we're looking at will be put in reserve. For many years, we purchased trucks from Farrar Fire Apparatus. Over the past several years, we've noticed a decline in quality and customer service, that in addition to the increased cost and build times puts us in a position to start evaluating other manufacturers. Over the past year, we evaluated E1, Pierce, Rosenbauer, US Fire Apparatus, and we knew, already knew quite a bit about Farrar Apparatus. E1 stood out as a front runner for their superior build quality to ensure firefighters are in a safe, reliable, and durable fire truck. Their quality control is exceptional. They relied on a detailed process-driven approach, and they're more process-dependent than individual-dependent that we've seen in some of our other manufacturers. And their trucks were also competitively priced compared to other trucks that we were evaluating. Safe Industries is the vendor for E1 fire trucks. In the last year, a longstanding fire truck vendor, Lone Star Apparatus, merged with Safe Industries. With that merger, we were able to maintain our Lone Star rep, which is here today, and this was a big advantage since he already knows a lot about our fleet and a lot about our challenges. By moving to Safe, we gained a much more robust support and service programs, such as the warranty reimbursement program and trade-in options on our current fleet. So today, we're here requesting approval to purchase six engines and two ladders. This purchase includes equipment and a 10-year warranty on all, on each truck. And if ordered, very soon, we anticipate the delivery of these fire trucks three years from now in 2028. I just kind of want to give you guys an idea, I've showed this slide before of where we're at now and where we'll be at in 2028 when these trucks arrive. We'll have, it's highlighting that three-year build time of what we're, we're going to have to wait for to get these trucks. In 2028, eight of our frontline engines will be 10 or more years old, and seven of our reserve will be over 20, 20 years old. It's important to note that these frontline fire trucks, they don't have a break until we get some new trucks coming in. So what you see here is they're going to be extended in their use in these, these 13 frontlines until we get, get some relief on these six engines, and then hopefully further purchases each year. Same comparison on our ladder trucks, a lot of our ladder, the age of our ladder trucks is a lot in our reserve, but those do get used quite a bit, and then ladder one is also at that 10-year point, it'll be up for replacement as well. And then some of our timeline here, timeline is what we're looking at right here, January 28th is we're looking for approval to purchase these fire trucks. And then kind of going off of the February 11th date that Mrs. Storres discussed on bringing a council award of debt financing, and then March 11th proceeds submitted to Safe Industries for that prepayment discount. That was a quick rundown, you guys have seen some of this before, you guys have any questions for me?
Questions for Chief?
Now, I appreciate all your work on this, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Well done, Cuba.
We had a lot, I've, I've had a lot, I have a really great team, I have a fire fleet team that does exceptional work, and they've been doing a lot of good work on giving me a lot of information, coming in to learn a lot about fire trucks over the last year, I've learned more than I ever thought I could on, on fire trucks, for sure.
And just on the warranty, is it 10 years, bumper to bumper?
It covers just about everything, it's the shortlist of what it doesn't, what it doesn't cover, primarily wearables, tires, belts, and things like that, but we'll be able to cover a lot of those expenses. And then one of that, that other part of it, that we'll be able to have our mechanics do some of that warranty work and be reimbursed for it, and just some, you know, that, that, that gives them a lot of opportunity to, to get some of that money back, and working with Safe Industries is going to be allow us to do that.
That maintenance savings is huge, isn't it?
Yeah, it's going to be huge, I'm, I'm looking at some of, if we could start just reducing those costs and then collecting more and more data on how we could save these and how we can rotate, rotate these trucks around, I'm estimating we're going to, we can have some pretty good savings. And not, you know, even on that warranty reimbursement, one hour a week produces, over, over the lifetime of that produces a lot, is a lot of savings. Or one hour a day, and they, they anticipate they'll be able to do more warranty work than that.
That's great. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate you being here, sir.
Oh.
Sorry to keep you so late, I'm sure you had a flight out around 5:30. Yeah, okay, that's how we keep you one more night.
We're helping the economy.
Yeah, hot tax, baby. Okay, item nine G, request a motion.
I moved to award a contract in the amount of $13,553,090 to Safe Industries for purchase of fire apparatus.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second from place two, any discussion on this one, gentlemen? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item nine H, Mr. Nelson, you back up again, you got an incentive agreement.
Yes, sir. We have an amendment to a location incentive agreement for Plant AS DNPS 032 LLC. This project, as you will recall, is the hydroponic farming project that is going to go east of Folsom Road, out across from Centerport Business Park, across from the prison, east of the prison. They have requested, and our board approved, a six-month extension on January 15th of this month. And the six-month extension extends all the dates in the agreement, but primary, it does not extend all the dates in the agreement, excuse me, it only extends the date that they can commence construction. So from December 31st, 2024, to June 30th, 2025. This project is also, has a sister project in Lubbock, Texas. They are underway in Lubbock, in the sense that they are waiting for the plans to be approved by the city. They have not moved dirt yet, but have a groundbreaking scheduled for the first week in April. They've really moved forward with that project, and we expect ours to be three months behind-ish, two to three months. So by June 30th, 2025, they will be commencing construction in Amarillo. This document, this amendment allows for that to happen. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
We appreciate the update on it, knowing it's solid, and I think we want to continue to support that, so. Look for a motion on item nine H, gentlemen.
I move to approve amendment number, amendment number three to the LIA between the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and Plant AS DNPS 3-2 LLC.
Second?
Motion and a second on nine H, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a few board appointments, I believe, Ms. Stephanie, are you going to run these for us?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we'll start with beautification and arts.
Okay, these are some mid-year appointments for some vacancies that came from resignations. Beautification and public arts, we had someone resign for a term that serves through December of 2026, so we're looking for an appointment to replace, excuse me, hang on one sec. We're looking for an appointment to replace that individual vacancy, so they would serve the remaining term through December 31, 2026. And in your packet, you've got a list of the applicants that we have on file for that since we just did appointments in November. This is a, typically a three-year term, it's a nine-member board, a couple of the positions on the board are specific to Center City and CBB, and all others are appointed by council.
Kraft, are you currently on that one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions for Ms. City Secretary? Kraft, you got anybody you'd like to nominate, since you sit on that board?
I have no preference, no, sir, unless somebody else does.
Okay.
I moved to approve, or appoint Linda Allen to the Beautification and Public Arts Advisory Board with a term ending 12/31/26.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second, did you get the name, okay?
I did, Linda Allen.
All right, any further discussion on that appointment? Counsel, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, five oh. Item nine G.
Okay, this is your Parks and Recreation Board, we have a vacancy for a position that also ends December of 2026. On this board, there is a list in your packet of applicants that we've received. This board meets monthly, and it has a total of 11 members.
I mean, you keep saying his name and looking at him, but, you know.
You have any recommendations?
You may not like my recommendation. One of the things that we actually felt was extremely beneficial for the park board was having a council member serve on that board to be able to relay, communicate back with the full council, so that would be the only recommendation from, from a staff perspective.
Yep, probably didn't like that one.
I know we're spread thin, I don't know of anybody that, that could, honestly, and still keep the workload that they've got. But I appreciate you at least being upfront and telling us what you'd like to see.
Yep. Other than that, we don't have any other recommendations.
Counsel, I guess we'll hang out and wait till somebody comes up with two names, hopefully a first and a last, of someone who is a real person that lives in the city.
I moved to appoint Jeremy Picar to the Parks and Recreation Board with a term ending of 12/27/26.
Second. Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, last one, Vineyards Pid.
We'll make this one easy on you. This is the Vineyards Public Improvement District, and as with our Pids, these are typically selected by developers or owners in these properties. We did have someone retire from this board, and they have recommended Mike Mays to replace this vacancy. It is a homeowner vacancy, and it will actually go through December of 2027. So if counsel agrees with that, we would look to recommend Mike Mays to you.
Well, I hadn't got to make a motion all day, so I move to recommend Mike Mays.
I'll second.
You've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Make the motion to adjourn.
We got a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? You're adjourned. Thank you, guys, for hanging in there with us. Appreciate you.